Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting on this Monday, December the 2nd at 7:05 PM. Mr. Derry, would you call the robe, please?
Stacy Brown.
Here.
Ralph Mieker.
Here.
Rock Hough.
Here.
Daniel Daniel.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Liz Terry.
Here.
There's a full corps.
Thank you. If you would please stand for our pledge of allegiance on prayer tonight and leading us in our prayer this evening. I know his name, but I gotta find him. Reverend McLean Forrest from Community Bible Church and all of our pledge of allegiance from Chief Lord Olson.
Let's pray. God, we thank you for your goodness and your grace in our lives. We are grateful for a place that we live like Greenwood. That is just a reflection of your kindness and your favor on us. So, Father, tonight we pray for our city leaders. We pray for wisdom. As they leave, we pray for courage. As they deal with issues relating to our people, we're grateful for the resolve that you give them. And so, in all things that they discuss and they talk about, Father, we do pray that you give them great discernment in their minds and their hearts. We pray that you give them clarity as they follow you and as they make decisions on behalf of our people. We do pray for those that protect us and keep us safe. We pray for those, our firefighters. We pray for our fire department. We pray for our law enforcement. We pray for our school resource officers and all those that serve and love and protect us well. So, Father, we pray your blessings on this meeting. And we ask all these things in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can you make me see it? At this time, I would ask the council approval in minutes. It will be September 9th, council meeting.
Do you have a correction?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to give you, but on the Eagle Scout, up there in the recognitions and acknowledgements, that's Eagle Scout Joshua.
Good.
Joshua.
Thank you. We have no intention of changing anybody's name legally, so thank you for that. Is that adjustment? Any, any motion? Or any other issue? Motion?
Sir.
Second?
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Mieker?
Yes.
Rock Hough?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We are at our recognitions and acknowledgements this evening, and I hope that Stacey Smith is here with us. Yes, there she is. So, I'm gonna ask Ms. Smith to come forward so I can embarrass her a little bit. Who wants to come up when I actually say that, right? Ms. Smith, for a hundred or so years. No, because you're only at 29. No, right? Let me just read this and then kind of explain what we're doing here. This is a certificate of appreciation awarded to Stacey Smith for her commendable volunteer service to our city for the past eight years. Her dedication and commitment to managing the Team Green Volunteer Program at the City's Recycle Center on the second Saturday each month beginning in April of 2011. Overall, the Team Green Volunteer Program has logged 330 youth volunteers contributing over 1,200 hours. Ms. Smith has volunteered 96 Saturdays and contributed 384 hours directly at the center. The City of Greenwood sincerely thanks you for your generation, your generous volunteerism, and awarded the second day of December 2019, signed by myself and Ms. Charlotte Terry. So, yeah, absolutely. A couple of other things here. Chief doesn't like when I give you the bill to drive around town as fast as you want, so we'll just hold off on that since you're sitting on that bill. But certainly, again, we cannot tell you how much we appreciate what you've done, how you've set the standard for us over there at that recycling. Anybody here still recycling and bring your recycling now? Because if not, I'm just gonna sic her on. If you don't, I'm just gonna sic her on, because I think that's near and dear to your heart.
Absolutely.
So, absolutely. So, and we were trying to acknowledge that, and it's very small way tonight. I want to give you the pen.
All right.
It feels like home. Yeah, you are one of the reasons it feels like home. And this is a key to the city.
Oh, no.
You can't get in City Hall with it. You can't get in my office, but you can try.
Okay.
No, but seriously, and I say this to most of the people I give to, not everybody, this represents, if you will, and we likely believe we're a town of 10,000 people or so, maybe not quite, but after the census, we think it might be. But sincerely, this is the heat of all of our hearts, because you are dear to us and we appreciate what you've done for the City of Greenwood.
All right. I'm so excited, Tim. I just wanna say that I managed this program for eight years, and it began because I was a community member that came to the recycle center on a Saturday and it was closed. And I schlepped all my stuff back and I worked during the week and I couldn't get back out there. And then the next month, I came again and it was closed.
I wasn't in office at the time.
So, I showed up at the mayor's office Monday morning and sat down with him and said, "What's up?" And he said, "I'm having the hardest time getting volunteers." And I said, "You know what? I have a whole gaggle of kids. I'm affiliated with the schools. I am gonna take this on and run this for you. I will commit to doing this." And then, here I am, eight years into it, and now I'm retired.
Your gaggle is here with us tonight.
My gaggle is here. Stand up.
You gotta stand up, you guys.
Um, go on. I'm giving credit to the Scouts, the Figurals Scouts and the Boy Scouts managed many of those volunteer hours and the school, the school system did a great job.
And only a true leader gives thanks to somebody else for what she's accomplished and what she's done. And not everybody comes to City Hall with a concern or complaint and is willing to take the helm.
Well, yeah. I mean, you don't, it just clicked with me. You know what? He's having a problem. I'm gonna fix it.
It takes a special person to do that.
All right. Appreciate it. Appreciate everything.
We gotta get her. Thank you, Asher.
Great. Thank you. Much appreciated. Thanks, Jeff.
Oh, the key also opens cans. It's open. It's a bottle of cans.
Thank you.
Get your lock down a little bit. Hey, you have a can? Okay, that's enough of that. Okay, thank you. And thank you, family. And by the way, I do say this to you, you have to say it through the whole evening, three hours, obviously, you know. Okay, next on our, uh, is the community reports. It's especially coming for the girls' club. I know I saw Mr. Sunday. Probably something going on in the club tonight, right?
Yeah.
Never is, right?
It's the end of another successful year out at the club with y'all, self, members in the communities, United Way. It's made this a banner of yours for us. We are offering more programs than we ever offered. Next, take like February, we're gonna have basketball, cheerleading, soccer, flag football, as well as a mentoring program after school going on, all in that month. We're really excited about that. Basketball cheer is gonna start this month, games in December. This Friday night, we have our father and daughter dance, which we have an individual in the community that helped us out, donated $2,000 to help us bring in Cinderella carriage and horses out to Little Rock. For $30, bring your daughter or your niece, whoever needs to come, father, mother, sons. $30 carriage ride. We have snacks there. We have a DJ, Master B, one of the teachers at the local school here. We're doing three hours of requests from a lot of parents. We have, we literally have parents, fathers driving from Dallas, Memphis, over in Oklahoma to come and take their kids every year to this. So, it's one of the things that we really, really enjoy as a club. Our after-school is growing. We're well over averaging 110. We probably got 150 in the program right now. Our mentoring program has been recognized by some members of United Way. What we do is every one of my workers has at least five kids that they mentor weekly. And if you really wanna understand what we do there, you can come to read. We've dialed some of the names and read what some of these kids are going through. And it's really been a big thing. Our 10,000-strong fundraiser is going good. Again, we had an individual last week stop by, dropped off a $3,000 check. We're getting the message out on what we're doing. They're seeing the improvements out there, the roots, the payment, what we're doing on the field. So, we're really, really excited about that. So, I see with the, you know, the old business with our agreement and everything. And again, without y'all, we couldn't do this. I mean, it takes everything. So, we appreciate it. And me and my family and my sons, when we moved here, they didn't know about it, sixth grade and third grade. They started coming out there, participating, not just because I was there. We have sports and the after-school program that they had, and they made some good old friends. And they are out there volunteering. I have one son that's 24 years old. He has volunteered to coach 23 teams. My oldest is out there doing fifth and sixth grade boys, and he don't know it yet, but after tonight, he's also doing fifth and sixth grade girls' team. So, I think it's something like that. But please come, and if you're interested, I have four children that need an escort. Dads work out of town, but maybe not in the picture. So, I need four more people to step up and do this anyway. Please call me. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, sir. I'm a volunteer, Stacy Brown, Ralph Mieker, Rock France, and Tim Terry. Uh, thank you.
Already taken two girls.
Already, yeah. Thank you, sir. Mr. Sunday and I have kinship of giving blood, sweat, and tears out at that place, for sure. And our, my kids involved like yours, so I appreciate what you do. I know it's very important to our community. Thank you. SRCA, Ms. Lisa is here tonight. And I know, I think you gave a written report also, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there today, I had.
Okay, yeah, I'll leave you guys.
And I got it fixed, so.
Oh, that's right. You hear that?
Yeah, I had the wrong email. Well, our public bills are increasing a little bit. I think our home delivery bills has increased about 200 bills, but we've had some people to pass on. So, we've served 467 in-house and then the meals on wheels, we've served 1330. And our socialization has been 336. So, it picks up. One month, one month it goes down. So, but we're still doing good and we're finally getting out of the red. So, the city stepped up and started helping pay us our utility bills. So, we're getting out of the red now. So, we're doing good. We still need some work done down there. We've got refrigerators and freezers going out. We've been trying to get a walk-in freezer cooler. If anybody knows that can help us out, we sure do need help. We need a walk-in freezer bad. We use chest-type freezers and they're going out left and right. We don't have any worse to store our food.
You got several of them inside, though.
Yeah. Yeah, and you can't get through our back door because we've got freezer line that's been there for three minutes. So, we got a good place to put one. If we just come up with the funds to get it, it's hard. We applied to a grant, the Art of Spain. I haven't heard nothing back yet, but they said they might can get us a $5,000 grant. So, we're hoping that comes through. So, any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Carry on what you're doing.
Okay.
Near and dear to my dad's heart, for sure. So, thank you for what you do. Parks Commission, Mr. Bill Steen, your chairman.
Everybody had their reports. Was there any questions? Squares, all big, Greens, Christians, Santa House.
More to come.
Excuse me?
More to come.
More to come. Very good. First, Mr. Stevens, uh, high finish.
Anybody have question? Thank you. Order Waste Water Commission, Mr. Bailey.
Our two ongoing projects, both sewer, primarily sewer work, Highway 71, Denver Street Extension, all the work on the east side of Highway 71 is complete. The, bringing the water line under 71 add-on, so it wasn't really part of the project because it has an add-on. We gotta do a bid, and therefore, each year didn't get the permit for the state. So, we're waiting on a permit for the state. One's actually done. We finished fairly soon after. Left over waiting on a permit for the state to run the water line under 71 over towards the new fire station and Boy's Club. The other project, the Highway 10 Lift Station, force paint upgrade east of town, that's about 75% complete. Weather, we could weather it. Might be finished by the end of the year, but it probably won't, but it's possible. We finalized our budget and only after finalized, discovered that our bond maturity in 2022 does not allow early repayment. We looked at three options. We looked at rate increase. We looked at paying that bond off. We looked at refinancing that bond. And we looked at our numbers, checked them twice. The numbers were good and elected to pay that bond off. We did not check the words on the bond. Words on the bond does not allow you to repay it, repay it early. So, therefore, we've got two bond issues. One bond issue, the words on the bond says you must have water supply revenue 110% coverage. We can, by our rules, even your rules, use our cell tax money paid principal. But finally, because of that bond, thought bond B, we must have our water supply revenue 110% coverage rate. It's not there. The other bond we're gonna pay off, if it gets above that 110, it's probably over 200, does not allow repayment. That leaves us really, most likely, the one option, rate increase. Outside, we might be repaid bond B, but don't we have enough money to make? We got checked worse than that in real close to a week, and it's too much money, probably. So, that's probably looking at a rate increase coming up on the sewer side and just on those things.
Just wanted to get it up. You can't do any entertaining of paying off that bond until 2021.
Right. Okay. Oh, we're going to the large one? Okay. So, that leaves us only one, one option. So, we're gonna have a rate increase. Didn't wanna do it, but we're forced. Lessons learned is, I don't like loans. They have all the little words in the back. I didn't use. I did a lot of loans over at the bank. It's not important for any banker. But we just want our money in time. We never had a problem with that. We put a lot of restrictions and all restrictions that kind of ties this in on this. Any questions or comments?
Kind of increase where you think it's.
As soon as possible.
5%?
No.
Don't touch it.
I don't think I did. 10, maybe. Probably 15, but we're, we gotta look at, we're gonna play our pencils out and look at probably around 15%.
You mentioned the permit and the state highway to cross and waiting on it. What does it give you technically? I mean, a couple of months or?
This has been more than two months. And states a little, we were contacted by someone from the state that handled utility work for the state concerning our bypass. We're probably gonna have that state and ask who we talk to, that person is the manager, utility manager for state highway, and see if we can use them to just to let persons speed up.
And on the, you said you're running the water.
Right.
I mean, what about the sewer?
Sewer. We got it where we could, but in the future, we just never envisioned our prices to be that good. And so, we didn't look at putting sewer. We're looking at fire, fire protection. But we also want to be sewer there, too, but getting fire protection there is more credible. Probably the next year or two, we'll run sewer over there. And we may do some, maybe do some, knock on wood, some acquisition of some service areas. And when we do that, we'll have to run some more, do some thinking at that time. Probably in the next couple of years, we'll have sewer over there. Hope, no here, TV. Hope that's the intent.
Look, Bailey, how long have you been since we've had sewer increase?
Back under the Jim Duke administration. Now, back when he was, he did adjustments. It basically, some rates went down, some rates went up. It was supposed to be neutral. And what year was that, Greg?
2000, oh.
15 or earlier. Anyway, when Duke was here, we had an adjustment. Some people went up, some people went down. It was supposed to be relatively revenue neutral. But our last across-the-board sewer rate increase was, I think, 1996? 95, 96? Somewhere. Where they built new sewers and do sewer, that's the major one. We had a rate increase to pay that major sewer upgrade back then. It would've been a while.
Been a while.
So, utility rates typically, on average, the nation only go about half the rate of the flush, most, on average. It's very, it's going a lot more than that, you said, but that's on average. Any other questions?
This is mainly because it isn't sell a lot of water.
That is not the only reason, but that's a major contributor factor, that the wet year are our revenues. And, you know, the more water you sell, the more, for the most part, we have a few people with irrigation meters only that don't have sewer on it. But for the most part, the more water you sell, the more sewer you sell. And the coverage ratio is both water and sewer revenues. So, both revenues were down because it was a wet year. Very wet year. Good sound. Got lots of water in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you for those reports. Before we move on to the citizen forum, I want to welcome and acknowledge Phil Milligan, who's here as a candidate for Circuit Judge. Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Absolutely, your right.
One or two minutes.
Absolutely. If anybody's running for president, let me know.
We have a presidential candidate.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
I'm Phil Milligan. I'm running for Circuit Judge. Jamie Cox, one of our longtime judges, is retiring, as some of you may or may not know. He's been a judge, at the time of his retirement, about 14 years. The importance of that particular bench is it handles 50% of the civil jury docket, 20% of the criminal docket, the criminal felony docket. It is a Sebastian County Circuit Judge position, so it is a Sebastian County-wide race. A little bit about myself. I'm a former FBI. I'm from Fort Smith. I practiced 28 years in my private practice. I've tried over 30 jury trials, both criminal and civil. I'd like to say a couple of things that are more in line with why Circuit Judges are important. You know, we started announcing back in May, and there's lots of candidacies for both district courts, not district court here. Judge Wagner is a fine judge, does not have an opponent, but we have three opponents in all three of our district races and two contested circuit races. And why is that important? Well, I'm gonna refer you to the preamble to our United States Constitution. Our founders said to make a more perfect union, they laid out five objectives. Objective number one, establish justice. We cannot have a society, a civilized society, without justice, ladies and gentlemen. It's that important in what we do and who we are and the ability to function as we do. That's the importance of it. Why Circuit Judges are important? Well, in Arkansas, Circuit Judges, only judge that can hand down a decence, only judge that can grant a divorce, only judge that can grant an adoption. It's the first judge and the only judge that will initially determine constitutionality of laws, whether a law, as it's applied to you or a government, is unconstitutional or it is constitutional. So, that's why Circuit Judges are important. And that's why, you know, do your homework, try to find out who we are. I certainly appreciate y'all's support. Come March 2nd, again, I think I can hit the ground running with my 35-plus jury trial. It'll be hard to replace Judge Cox, and I won't try to replace Judge Cox, but I will try to hit the ground running and serve the county. And I appreciate y'all's vote and consideration. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you. While we're talking about voting, just to remind the folks in the room that we have a special election coming up, December the 10th, right here in City Hall. It's in regard to the Traffic Relief Project that we've been working on. It early voting begins tomorrow. So, if anybody's interested, you do have to live in the city limits to vote. So, I just wanna make a reminder of that. At this time, we are at our council, or I'm sorry, citizen forum, and we have two folks that have signed up tonight. Whit, yeah, is that correct? I'll do that, okay? If you would come forward, and you have five minutes to discuss whatever you need to talk about. And if you would, go ahead and repeat your name and address for the record, please.
Paula Whitia, 1445, Castle Circle, 31. I don't want to be up here again today, but as it happens, when I attended a private commission meeting on November 18, or it was the one before that one, actually, I found out that property that I own is being affected by the rezoning law. So, here I am. I'm gonna read my statement so I don't present anything else. I'm going off the subject here. During that public hearing that was held for the rezoning of the property at the corner of North Coker and Houston, they discussed two duplexes that the builder wants to build on that corner. And the concerns that were voiced by the community included safety for the children that have to go up and down the schools, up not to school, regarding the sidewalks, there are none. Stop signs are really actually going down the way because they don't affect all the traffic that goes east and west. And there were traffic-related issues regarding this because of narrow streets. Bass Little is only 11 feet wide. Coker's 17 foot wide. So, it's hard for all this added traffic that was going to be added with the duplexes to travel on those skinny roadways. In addition, there is proposing parking in front of those two duplexes, which means eight additional cars that would be parked right along on Coker. Drainage issues, that's my big issue because all that property, water comes down this way from that block, and then it comes down that way, and I'm right on the corner. The alleyway, water just comes flooding down there, and I tried to dig a ditch because I couldn't get the street department to help me. And I piled a bunch of rocks and bricks, and it looks really terrible. And I still can't keep the water from the neighbor's yard coming because there's just cherry pit. So, it still comes through. But I help a little bit with what mess I made. There's also, he's asking for barriers to put those two dwellings instead of seven and a half feet from the, from the property line, five feet from the property line. The commission heard all those concerns, and yet they voted to rezone that property and send it all on to you. I have a huge concern that there has been no master plan instituted for the rezoning of a huge portion of our city north of Center Street. The only reasons I have heard for rezoning are to redevelop and unify the older areas and the areas affected by the tornado that came through. I have seen no plans regarding how all this will affect Greenwood in the future, except that they want to grow Greenwood. What about future infrastructure, such as the drainage, the added traffic, the safety in the sidewalks? How many duplexes are going to be allowed? Is there gonna be a limit? Or are we going to be a city of multifamily dwellings? I have had references at the commission meetings to wanting to be like other big cities. We are not Austin, Los Angeles, or even Bentonville. Those cities have mixed housing so that people can walk to everything that they need. We don't have businesses in Greenwood for the setup for them at this time. It will work great at the college where they have the hub. And if the current action becomes a reality down on 71, it could work there. Putting a more concentrated population on smaller landmass without fixing infrastructure is not improving the quality of our lives and will only cause future problems. Look at, for instance, the problems created by pork farming at the lake elevation. I'd like to hand you some handout so that you can see what I've got in pocket complex, just so you can get a bit of help. I'm sorry that I forgot to get to the screen about the picture and the show. Sorry. Oh, is this my time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Be close.
I want that. And you can look at the pictures. If the commission wanted to redevelop and unify Greenwood, then in my opinion... If the commission wanted to redevelop and unify Greenwood, then in my opinion, any new building in the rezoned area should be required to include a garage to keep the vehicles off the street, thereby beautifying our neighborhoods. It will take time to change the aesthetics of our, our neighborhoods, but that is what planning is all about. The most recent duplexes that I've shown you in our area all have projects, as indicated on the photos that I just did, except the one on Steer Street. Duplexes are better suited for areas where they can all be on one street, such as Finish Street and Clinton Lane, where they're not fought among single-family homes, just willing to know. The city receives current fees of approximately three thousand, five thousand dollars per duplex unit, depending on the square footage and how many water taps and sewer taps are required. If the city insists on building these dwellings in our neighborhoods, I propose that this money be put in a special account to be used in aiding the effort to fix the infrastructure in the areas that are being forced to be part of the rezoned area. On a slightly different subject, the twenty-eighteen census states the median age of Greenwood is thirty-six point eight years. People want nice restaurants where they can get a glass of wine or beer with dinner. When the city asked citizens last year what they most wanted to see of Greenwood, their number one response was restaurants concerned alcohol. The more people you bring into Greenwood, the more demand there will be for Greenwood to change their views. This age group in number will be looking for this in the city. In addition, we are best known for our excellent school system. I had a chat with Mr. Haskell at the Greenwood High School that was told that after adding one hundred new students to our schools, plans will have to be looked at to see what could be done about accommodating all the students. That would be too far away if we start putting multifamily units up all over Greenwood. Just one other thing to be considered for the future.
I interrupt you, but you're about two minutes and a half over, so you, you guys are very short of that.
I perfectly hope that we will all choose to go to Greenwood responsibly, but we want to leave a better Greenwood for future generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll remind the council that this particular item, this rezoning, is going to be added in our, when we add it, have the agenda additions to number seven, specific, if you want to address that more specifically, for sure. Thank you, ma'am. Next on the list is Victor.
Zeiler.
Zeiler, yes, sir, thank you. If you would come up and state your name and address for me.
I can spell your last name.
Uh, Z E I L B R.
Yeah.
Um, it was either one nineteen West Houston Street, um, on the same thing with rezoning, especially with the moving property line, we're, we're, built our old building, I mean, there's not much already there between us and the park line already. There's three foots, mid-four foot maximum.
You live behind?
Uh, beside.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so, basically, once this structure goes up, it's going to be right there. And like I said, I have two young children, and we'll be trying to plant the backyard and put blueprints up the building, each one's going to have a window facing to the east. So that's my concern is, you know, saving children, people, you know, it's obviously supposed to be rotating.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, you live?
Uh, to the East Side.
Okay.
On, uh, just about on, yes.
On Houston, okay, gotcha.
And also, too, we also, as, as Paul explained, the drainage issues. We already only down here, the slope of the street, and I already have enough drainage going through our, you know, property as well. So when we do construction, with the level leveling and everything else, and running work, so, oh, we prepared this property, everything's going to come back to me and back to her property as well. So if they don't start getting through this commercial property, I'm asking, you know, install some kind of fresh drainage system, you know, to a sewer line as well, or also a privacy fence, you know, to basically keep them, you know, ordered in. Uh, besides that, I mean, there's not much I can say. Besides, I would be really nice for safety, and I would actually have me some, you know, good children can come to during school. Um, it's not much else I can say, but all, pretty well.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, I will address this real quick before I forget it, and it gets too mixed up in the rest of the playroom, we address them in item number seven. Four-way stop sign is coming your way, we've got a paper spot next to you, because?
Yes.
So that, that issue is taken care of, not just because of this, but that's, there's other spots in town, but we're glad for you, boys. Yes, ma'am.
Now, this is what I was talking about with planning, like a master plan, because you just fixed one little thing because someone squeaked that my property is actually on Gary.
Hmm.
The parking lot from the high school comes directly right out onto Gary, almost cars go speed on by. I need a stop sign, too.
When you look at every, every sitting out, and, and...
Then nobody's ever talked about.
To your point, sometimes it just takes somebody reminding me or the street department that there is an issue, uh, because not every corner is designed or should have a four-way. I've placed, this will be my second one, that I've been, uh, asked the street department to do in town, and, and both of these have been brought to my attention for other reasons, so, uh, sometimes it takes that, unfortunately, but, uh, you know, we're, we're trying to get rid of all of them, for sure. Okay? Well, again, we'll address this on item number seven, for sure. Those are the only two, uh, that I had signed up on the system forum site, so we will move on to...
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You want your shot right here, and I think she didn't want to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Are you going to talk about rezoning?
Yes, ma'am, we're going to, we're going to add it to our agenda, it'll be item number seven, which is not on your list yet.
Okay, I won't talk there.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Um, okay, so we will move on to, uh, the financial, financial report from Mr. Tom Marshall.
We have a copy of the report in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, thank you.
I want to give you a little bit of an update on some of the trends. The city sales of use tax from November of nineteen over November of eighteen increased seven point seven percent, which is huge. We, uh, anticipated about three months ago to start putting a budget together by the end of the year, somewhere in favor of about a two point five percent increase over our cumulative. We are right now through November cumulative at two point five. Um, that might fill up a little bit if the trend continues to be high, or higher than normal. Um, most of the time, you'll see a little bit of, uh, a decrease of flat December, which represents October, November's collections. In the county sales tax, you'll notice that we have a two point four percent November over November, year over year. And that two point four percent allows for us to have a one point two percent cumulative of two thousand nineteen increase of revenue. We are budgeting a one point five percent, so we're anticipating, hoping, that that fills up about two tenths percent more, uh, in our current budgets. But as you realize, we are looking flat, so whatever the revenues are for this year is what we roll in to next year's budget. Um, just wanted you to know that how the trends were, they're actually favorable last month of November. Moving on into the balance sheet, there's a couple of items that, uh, you'll hear about in the, when I go to the agenda item number three, which is the water wastewater audit report. Couple of things that are now in there, I've, uh, started slowly but surely looking at some of the balance sheet items and cleaning them up as we go. One of the things that we noticed, um, and has been speculated in the audit this year, was the meter deposits checking and the meter deposits payable. Uh, when people put a deposit out, there's a subsidiary ledger on the RBS system for the water sewer department. Right now, that subsidiary ledger lists every individual that has a deposit on hand with them. Our book should reflect that. We have a restricted checking account for the money that is put into deposits listed. It is on your balance sheet on page six, you'll see it halfway down on the asset side. It's a hundred and thirty-seven, five eighty-seven. The RBS subsidiary ledger of all the balances that we would owe, that is one on us right now, is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, so we have eight thousand dollars more in the bank account, in the restricted bank account that we actually would owe. But when you look at the meter deposit payable side, that's supposed to be equal to the checking account, we're showing a hundred and twenty-seven, five seventy-two, or about nineteen hundred dollars, slightly less than two thousand dollars, short of what the R, RBS subsidiary ledger system is saying. So if we fund that, we'll still have about six thousand redistributed cash to go back into the water sewer. And we're going to be looking at next, um, starting next month, we're going to true this up, and we're going to look to see what is causing, now that the RBS system's been, they've got their, uh, system upgraded, and we're doing a different system to, uh, format or bring in payments. We wanted all that to clear first before we started looking into exactly what's causing a little bit of discrepancy every month. Uh, this will be something that is reviewed and, and reconciled every month. Just to show you how it's supposed to work, right below that halfway down on the asset side, you'll see pavilion deposit checking. You take deposits on our, first, pavilion. The amount that's on our subsidiary ledger is six thousand dollars. The amount in our bank of checking, the capital stood halfway down to pavilion deposit checking, six thousand dollars. You'll also see pavilion deposit payable, six thousand dollars. They're all supposed to be there. And we're in the process with, um, working with the water sewer starting next month to true that up and make sure that what's causing that is going to be eliminated, that issue that's arising, and that this will be reconciled in the month of the day. We're also going to tackle the past receivable water sewer because every year they have to do a minor adjustment to that, and I'd rather that number be accurate rather than it be slightly off and having to be adjusted every year. So we should be tying to their receivable subsidiary as well. The reason is, Center Point is not on the same system as RBS. The two systems do not, right at this point, talk to each other. So we're having to manually bring in the numbers through reports that come to us from the water department.
Center Point is your software?
Yes.
RBS or water?
It's in our system.
Okay.
So it's not materially off, but I'm a defendant, I wanted to be exact.
How can they not operate on the same?
There, there is a process where we could actually have them, uh, interface with Center Point, we just haven't brought that module yet or brought it in. Um, so we'll investigate that, I don't know. We just, we just got this report last month, so we started looking into it. There's a, there's a gazillion other things going on right now, but just wanted you to know that we will true that. So that's still something, if you recall, two years ago, when I started, very first day, I told you I have no reliability in the numbers that were on the balance sheet. I have about ninety-five percent reliability in most of these numbers on here now. We can tell you exactly why they're there and what they do. Um, the ones that are left in the hands of the auditor is the water sewers. Um, he provides us the, uh, adjusting entries, we make those entries after every year's audit, and trues these up, so some of the things like depreciation, uh, that's something that's done by them, we don't do the depreciation on our Center Point system. We may consider that in the future, just bring all the assets on, let us do the depreciation rather than the officer having to do it for us, when it gets in comparation, so. Other than that, uh, balance sheet is healthy, and, uh, total assets liability is seventy-two million dollars. When you look at the city Greenwood's statement of revenues and expenses, you can see all the revenues, what's, what they're generating against the budget. And you'll go down to page, um, page ten, and you'll see your total revenues right now stand at the end of November of twelve million seven, a hundred and seventeen, which is a four, point four million dollar shortfall right now in the revenue side. A lot of explanation for that, but you can actually go through and see what's causing that. Um, we, uh, on the expense side, though, as you'll notice, some of these are grants that didn't come in. The grant revenue is offset by the grant expense. If the grant didn't come in, the expense wasn't spent at either, so if you go down and look at the expense, which is on page thirteen, you'll notice that we have spent eleven million five, which is a surplus of one point one million dollars right now for the year. So while the revenue's twelve million, the expense is only eleven five, a bit of responsible spending. Uh, nineteen million was our actual budget of a two point two million dollar, uh, variance there, which, uh, basically causes a, well, a two point two million dollar deficit, so it's budgeted, that's a three million dollar variance to favorable. I will tell you that if you look at the far right side of your report, you'll see the capital outlay, I listed that by each department, so that you can see what the capital actual spend was versus the capital budget. And you'll notice that we've spent one point two million, this is a better way of showing you rather than just giving you a valid number, you can go back up to every expense department and see who's spending the money that they designated or restricted. And it was on a budget of four point two million, so one point two million has been spent on a budget of four point two. We have a variance of three million. Most of the variance in the expense side is coming from the capital side, just wanted to get it out. In the budget for two thousand twenty right now, we've, uh, completed, uh, put all the departments that have major capital expenditures, there's about a two point six million dollar carryover, uh, expenses that didn't occur this year. So, um, it's still in the works, it's just plus, well, projects that are not completed or have got started for one reason or another. It's still restricted, basically, or marked cash. Uh, the increase, as you'll notice, a one point one million surplus for this month increased two hundred ninety-one thousand over last month, which was a surplus of nine hundred seven thousand, or nine hundred fifty last month, so notice it's not by that much. That's the surplus. Very next statement on page fourteen, the last one of, the last ones I really want to go over, is the cash flow by month. And the line that you really need to look at is the net increase in cash is six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Um, it shows our total cash ending balance in the bank, all funds consolidated with the city, eleven million, eight hundred thirty-two thousand. And then final two pages are a breakdown of every account with the city that shows that same number.
What was your first comment there about the, that six hundred thousand, where was that at?
That is at the bottom of your cash flow statement, far right column, all months. It's the third line from the bottom, net increase or decrease in cash, the total of six hundred and seventy-three thousand, and if you go across each month, you can see when the cash was up and when the cash was down. And this is a trend that, it helps me with budgeting purposes, and also helps me with, uh, how I want to start thinking and investing out of cash. So we don't believe that in checkbook. And if you have any other specific questions, you won't have to do that, an hour later and we'll go.
So, uh, again, you're saying as far as the, uh, what the city says is use tax, you know, you're saying, um, we're right at the, the trend that you projected, two and a half percent.
It's pretty good. Something was there. No, it was the trend.
If you think, Mr. Marsh turned, touched on there, was, barely touched, could have touched on, was doing something with idle cash, that's, I think, that's hugely important to the city, we might have addressed that, to my knowledge.
There have been one, just that one.
There is no idle cash in the cash management department, that's correct.
Would Matt have?
You walked in, so we had to pick on Chief. Uh, yeah, the committee, the House of Representatives Board has talked about this, and so looking real serious about what to do about that.
And the reason we haven't answered on it yet is because we're waiting for the two thousand budget, because that would give me better indication as to what the idle cash is, because I'm actually asking them to parse out their, um, their budgeted spend by year, be a little more accurate rather than just say, well, I'm going to do a project, it's going to cost two million dollars, but I'm not going to spend all two million next year. Well, I can know how much you are going to spend, so I can take the other and do short and midterm, long-term investments, whether in treasuries, instead of a checkbook, saving the interest and generate what we consider to be, um, contingency funds, pretty good of a thought.
Also, you have a time on saving. That's a novel idea.
No.
I agree. I mean, Tom brought a lot of strange ideas to the table, you know, and Tom.
What?
I'm being sarcastic. So savings in, in this arena, when we talk, you know, and so the public knows that we're not just about spending money here at City Hall, we're talking about saving money, using the funds that we have to do something other than just set an account, throw in solar power on that, that's something we're looking at to save money, so.
Well, the city used to have a lot of savings, but the last, we had to pad up and then lost it. So we paid that off, now we're building back up, so.
We're here at municipal league conferences, and we don't have it for that day, boom day.
We're doing it again. Tom's figuring out the best way for us to make money off all money.
I hired Tom to marsh, by the way. Sir, what's that? Dave, please. Anything else from Mr. Marsh? Thank you, sir. Let's not... Let's dive on the agenda, our agenda additions. I know, I know Mr. Carey was an agenda addition. Correct. Phil coming? That's Mr. Carey. So we do have two. Number seven will be planning department, and I've just tagged it as rezoning.
For this to rezon from our one R5.
Thank you.
Yes, it's in your bag.
You do have people in shift. And number eight will now be interlocal agreement of the county. Talk about that again because some new information came to light today, so I want to bring that to your attention again.
Yeah, that is proposed now, it will bring in the special county dispatch services.
What she said.
Is that paid?
Well, just for the reference.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Any other two additions of council?
There is one.
Oh, yes, that's correct. Number nine, thank you, I don't know, I could forget. There is number nine.
Resolution adopting temporary budget.
No, G, that is December. It's kind of a fail-safe case for that.
We've been known.
Do it back and we've got most of the time in.
It's one we got. Just plan ahead. Crazy, no one was crazy at it. Planning ahead. Okay, any other, the council might have. Department didn't, lost their chance there. Okay, so moving on to the old business, special county boys and girls club agreement and SRCA partner bank lease. We add it to that.
The next area, you don't have to contract.
Area, you send up eighteen contracts also. And we need to.
So you have the 2013 office, part of your lease, which is not 2015.
So I'll say we just go in order with different boys and girls club agreement. Again, Mr. Sunday is here. We talked a little briefly about this last month. Any, any, it's a yearly, it's your contract. I think we decided to do that last year, correct? On January 1st. So coming up January 1st, I believe, yes. And it's your $51,000 annually within the boys and girls club. Is that number on this agreement?
Yes.
Ah, wait. So discussion on this topic, this agreement.
Tom, if we were to approve this contract, I guess kind of going down out of mind, you know, the resolution adopting preliminary budgets, would that mean that it's going to be paid like every time of the month that it's normally paid, right?
No, not really. You're adopting, you're adopting to live within the 2019's budget. The thing is, I took that step to put that, push it into next year because I firmly believe that you will early in January have a special session to approve the settlement. Their payment doesn't come until the 15th of the month of January. So last year you approved it on the 7th of January, oh, not the 15th of January. So it probably, once that budget's approved, then those funds are available and leased away. Because you don't have a line item bucket, as long as the money is available, it's then could be spent for most things, except the funding for this $51,000 comes from county sales tax. It doesn't come out of, it comes through the general fund, but it's solely funded by county sales tax. You do a pre-distribution amount and give it over to general, general pulls it off to, to the boys club. So we, it's not my desire to move past the 15th to get the letter approved. I'd like that that budget approved in the first two weeks of January. We're pretty much ready with all departments to do budget study sessions, with the exception of finalizing general. There's a couple of cuts that came up that we're still working through right now, so we may touch on them a little bit later. But I don't see this as a great pay impediment. I know there is a consideration for them not missing the parent. So you can, I don't know if Charlie talked about it, is there a way they could resolve to pay them amounts outside of the budget, a special resolution to do that, with the budget where they go past the 15th approval?
I believe that if, the longer you have a contract signed, approved, we can deal. Typically, not practice payments.
I think they're looking to, to work the contract now.
And I don't have any intentions of, of, I don't think you got here temporarily going back to 15th of January.
Continuing these payments on. Yeah. But they're, they're allowable as far as I know if you have signed on contracts and it was just like the budget last year, the temporary budget.
Hasn't changed.
Just like it was.
Okay, it worked for me.
We just have to sign a contract.
And you have to decide on the amount.
So where we're going with the discussion is, I'm, I'm trying to remember, did we discuss the possibility of having this, because we keep talking about accountability of the money. It just says it'll pay out monthly. It doesn't decide the amount that's going out monthly. We talked about, so you got this money here and the invoice is being brought to you. I know we had that discussion about.
Contract.
We had a contract, but I'm talking about us paying, keeping up where that money's going. We were talking about.
Let me clarify that. Last year before, when we approved this contract the way it is now, you used to lease that property from, therefore you needed accountability because we were, we actually were lending that program. What we've done is we changed it around and we said, we're going to subsidize this through a contract to offer, for you to offer new services to use for the City of Greenwood for $51,000. So whatever dollar they've given them, they're, you're not asking them for accounting for that as much as a report to show us, you know, is it viable and if they need an increase, then they need to justify it. But we didn't want the lease that was in place to have them segregated because theoretically all the gates were supposed to go towards our program, all the concessions were supposed to go to our program, all the fees for the people to come in and actually participate in the sports were supposed to go along with their $51,000 and it was supposed to be isolated and segregated. Money was not supposed to go anywhere else. That's the way it was written in there. So we were forcing them or pushing them to, to say fully complete payment. Well, they have a captain that does a compilation rather than an actual prepares the financial every month. They prepare it based on the numbers that were given to them by Boys and Girls Club. So we had this conversation last year and we decided to go with just a contract for services. You're going to provide and run and deal with that, and we're going to pay the $51,000 for the year to do it, to help defray your expenses. And it's their operation. That's why you did what you did. So if you want to go back to a lease.
I just need, I just couldn't remember what we discussed. I have lots of stuff.
Well, we'll tell you that your county sales tax projection at a 1.5% increase is right a little bit over $20,000. So you're going to probably have $20,000 more dollars in, in gross, county sales tax to decide how to distribute. Continue with your 51, that's pre-distribution. You're not going to increase that, then the $20,000 will drop to a distributable amount.
I'll make a motion, we'll have a mayor to sign a contract for 2020.
Right.
As it stands.
The contract that we have presented is better than 2020.
Sign them out.
I will make one question or comment or something. On the last page number six, it says that the closing may will submit at a minimum annual reports to the city that actually reflects all performance of this contract, illustrating positive impact of special programs. Did we get that annual report? I mean, we kind of do this monthly thing. Can you come up and say something?
This will be the first year the annual report's going to be required, and it probably would be in the first quarter of next year.
This is the agreement for eighteen, so we wouldn't have got to.
This is the nineteen. 2019 assets.
Oh, yeah.
Your year's not over. I think your fiscal year is December 31st. So they're not through with their year.
So we didn't expect the annual report.
Not yet.
So we should get annual report today. Right here.
Yes, sir. If you make the survey again.
Well, when we talk about Kenny not coming every month, he's kind of off the hook. You can still come every month, though, huh?
Well, our procedural rules are less stable.
Carly, that's how it's taken.
So we changed that though, it's rather off.
I'm assuming your board is aware of that clause or that portion of it prepared or due, just that, can't mention it or not.
I think the annual report here is more of a fiscal type of report. Is that right? Whereas the monthly reports are just kind of saying, hey, thanks for the boys club.
I would think the annual report would be more to what Tom was referred to earlier, you know, give us the, kind of the beat of what really went on out there all year there. What did the gate receipts look like, you know, how many people were involved in all that kind of thing, kind of a financial.
I'm head of the fair captain that does the compilation. If they can produce it by sports, by, you know, home, after school care, all of that, they can show exactly what the costs were, what the residences were. That shouldn't be a problem for them.
So it doesn't specify how we proceed with this report, but it would be nice if Kenny come and presented the report and we were able to ask in details about it in February.
When you say February, you're talking about the February, our February meeting or the, at the, March 1st.
Because they may not have time to prepare it, but the time we have a first week meeting.
I expect March will be our, it's kind of like. Your audit, because this refers to the audit too, right? About sixty days ago.
Yeah. And a lot of the times it's been six years ago.
So can I reset your motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
I'll run there, so I'm grabbing the boys and girls club that's saying $51,000, they're sending $20,000. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion on the floor. More discussion. Or, sorry, can we do that second?
Daniel, do it.
Right.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Tim, do you know this?
Thank you. We'd like to thank you all.
Thank you. Next, I believe listed was the SRCA's, come in here again.
No.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Deadline or end of contract, date December 31st, some amount of $15,000.
So it's a two-part thing.
Yes. Get a lease agreement and then your contract. This is the one that we discussed a little bit, that's last month.
Kind of three-part now, because everything you see stuff we discussed last month as well.
Well, I brought that into the picture. It is kind of the third.
It's just that it's a nonprofit.
It is a nonprofit that is associated, whereas, as you said, area agency contributes to your city.
Right.
And we contribute, city contributes to the area agency on another, which does not go to them. So it is.
We hadn't been doing, then we brought it back on board last year.
That's correct.
With $9,000.
That's correct.
But we were talking about how they kind of still had that main role, we discussed last month about maybe.
Possibly even using it elsewhere.
Or just not redoing this last grant this year.
I have a suggestion.
I'll throw this on the table. I propose that we make the SRCA contract $20,000, that we don't have any common and lease agreements. We do not do areas.
Now you have a three-stage suggestion, a motion, Jim. Where is it?
It's my suggestion. What is eligible is that, that's where I was going. No, you did well.
So that's what's on the table. Tom, where did, again, you said you're following our expense system, you know, provide, you know, where does that?
Go ahead, you have to, I'm glad you let in that, because that's what you need to know. The lease agreement is where the utilities and repairs and maintenance and everything comes in, which is what she thanked you for.
You see that?
Because earlier.
We have been in the red because of.
I will tell you that we started a county court separately on our financials, have a line item now, that's SRCA nonprofit, utilities, that's SRCA nonprofit, repairs and maintenance. To date, we have a contract for $15,000 for their services to do for elderly. And then we already spent almost $15,000 in utilities and repairs and maintenance so far this year since they started doing it. So $20,000, when they're right now at $30,000, probably is going to put it back in the red.
So the utilities is not part of this lease agreement though. Is that a separate agreement?
No, it's.
It's actually a common lease agreement, isn't it?
It is.
Somewhere.
I don't see.
Well.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at the 2005 version of lease agreement, which that was not part of the original lease agreement. We added that, the utilities portion later.
It was later.
There's an addendum to this or there's an agreement somewhere.
I think it's intended to.
It's not to the lease agreement.
No, it would be the lease, it would be the contract.
The contract, annual contract.
Because this does not reflect it. There is one in my, in print.
Section three.
Section three. On the contract.
On this lease agreement right here?
Oh.
Hey, I'll have to go.
There you go. So this part of the lease agreement.
Okay, so hold it then. If that says no, are we not paying the utilities?
That's correct.
We had to start, we had to start.
Yeah, when it was brought to my attention.
Three months ago.
Yeah, when it was brought.
It showed it already been paid.
It should have been paid from the get-go when it was not.
Well, it's been brought up even in the administration.
Years and years.
He said, bring us bills and we just never worked off bills.
Well, I was told the bills were brought, the bills were not paid. I don't know the whole story. I'm, I'm still about what my boss tells me. The bills were brought, the bills were not paid, we would get shut-off notices, and so we had to pay our own bills.
And that's when you.
And that's when we, we got meetings with Doug and we took curate. And then Doug says, yes, it says we will pay utilities.
Because I thought all along we were.
Yeah.
We're all electric, gas, and water.
Yes. They do our electric, gas, water, and our trash.
Trash.
Yes. And we send a monthly statement to Charlotte every month, or.
I think it turned into mayor's office.
Of course.
And then it goes to finance.
Yes, I mean, the bills haven't been paid until what? Four months ago?
I think it's been, I think it was six.
So you're saying, Tom, that those utilities are closer to $15,000.
Well, seven, just since we've been getting the bills, which is about, a little under a half a year. Well, seven thousand, just, just since we've been getting the bills, which is about, about a little under a half a year. Seven thousand six hundred forty-seven in repairs. And, and just so you know, that's actually just the amount that we had to spend because a lot of the repairs are done with our labor.
Because we don't have no maintenance and that.
They don't have any.
But what's the utility?
The utility portion is seven thousand one forty-five.
For, for what period?
That right here is fifteen thousand.
Oh, another fifteen hundred a month, something for utilities?
I think we came up with something closer to that. I think when you.
Is that the average?
I think it's more like twelve fifty. You're saying if that seven thousand is, you know, is really about.
Well, we think a little bit more than that, I, I, we just wear to the, I think it's. I mean, it's not more than fifteen, but probably average less.
And, I mean, you know, we do have, I mean, the maintenance comes down and helps us a lot because we don't have a guy there to help us. We don't have no maintenance men. And, I mean, they did come and help us a lot.
Because also in one of these agreements, it refers to the city being responsible for you staying in business. That's not a quote, but that's, I did that, but it's not a quote.
They, we also pay their real property tax.
Right, which is.
We also pay their, um, their insurance.
Yes, their property insurance.
I, I don't, I'm not opposed to the, to the fifteen thousand for to operate whatever with all their services and then pay utilities, which is another, say fifteen hundred dollars a month. Which is what? A year. Thirty-three thousand?
Maybe average of twelve.
Well, I'll say about twelve fifty, but I mean, that's fifteen to fifteen, which is.
No, because longer in the end, it's clear of all that, and so. I know when she sends it to me, our, last month, our bills were seven hundred something dollars for this, that month, last month. She hasn't sent it to me for this month.
I mean, I, I would kind of like to see, which is a little bit like, I mean, like this discussion is going on, is we sent them, they didn't get them, nobody paid them, you know, all that going on. I, I would prefer an arrangement that says, we're going to give you X. And we don't, and then you pay your bills, right? You know, if the water bill is due, pay the water bill. So we avoid this, we sent the water bill and nobody paid it, discussion.
Well, now, and then, I'm sorry, now what happens is they do some B bill or a copy of the B bill. So we pay, we, we pay it off. I don't understand if you give X a dollar a year, this is what you got to live on.
We're reimbursed.
Because we're taking on another administrative function.
They pay and we reimburse.
You know, it's another administrative function, it's another line item in the budget. You know, it's all those things. It would be a cleaner arrangement, you know, and to just say, you know. X amount in the agreement. You know? And it, and it doesn't restrict their funding either. I mean, if you, if you're doing well on paying electricity, then you got money for something else.
Well, we just, I'm sorry, we just, Charlotte contacted Daniel, my assistant, and confirmed his twelve hundred dollars a month.
Just a yes rule.
So, I mean, if y'all leave that, so the maintenance and everything's going to go away too?
Well, that's what we're, that's what they're discussing, not miss. I mean, I don't think anybody's said that yet.
Because, I mean, you know, yeah, we're leasing the building from y'all. And I know, yeah, we'd love to have our own building, but we just don't have the funds to do a building and.
I think the issue, Lisa's going to, or Mr. Moore, I'm sorry, is, uh, and I'm speaking with the county council, they just speak honestly for themselves, is we've not sat down to talk to Farmers Bank about this yet. They technically own the building, we're leasing it from them as leased to you, kind of sort of like, I guess. And for the city to keep fixing a building that does not belong to the city, because it's an issue. I mean, it's been going on for a long time. And that's where, that, you know, one year you may have no issues, the city may put our guys over there to help do something for a couple hours, ten hours, twenty hours, and then this issue, we've got air conditioning, which has happened, needs to be replaced. So I think that's their issue of putting money into a facility that we do not own.
And we don't get our help from.
Right, right. And we, and again, I, we should have, I should have already, I tried to, attempted a couple times to visit with the bank personally about this, to see what their thoughts were to it, so.
My, my thought is to, because we're not doing the nine thousand to area agency, my thought is to do the fifteen and deal with the nine, that, that was what intrigued me. But why couldn't the, the maintenance be one of those deals that they do have a problem that maybe they can come back and have to be a discretionary deal on your part to other, you know, we've got what we could help if we wanted to, we could. I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not tying ourselves down to, to that, you know what I'm saying? But if it's something that we're able to help out, I mean, I know it's not our hundred percent responsibility to fix everything, because that's not our building, but we also, as a, to our constituents, I mean, that's a, that's kind of.
I stated earlier, it was near Jeremiah, that's part, there is some more citizens who just have that.
But we can't, we can't keep throwing money, something, but I would say if it was something that, that the air conditioner does go out and it's going to take, you know, four hundred dollars to fix it, I mean, why couldn't that be something that you can bring back to us, and that, you know?
Here's the problem.
Well, one of the things that you guys talked about last time, brought this up, was that you wanted to take us out as a less or a sublet, so we don't want to, we don't want to lease the building to lease it back to them. When farmers owns the building, why can't farmers enter into a lease with them to provide that to them and provide the maintenance and the they own the building, right? So theoretically, they own the taxes as well, they own the insurance on that building. They, they pawned it off on us for a dollar a year and said, you guys pay for it, when what we were really contracting for is to provide them with funds to provide the services to, you know, sort of like what we're doing with the boys and girls law. So what we have to establish is, what's the dollar amount that would help fund them for the services? So if we say we're no longer going to pay the insurance, we're no longer going to pay the, um, the property taxes, we're no longer going to pay repairs and maintenance or utilities, that's an operating cost to them. So they do their numbers and they come back and they say fifteen thousand ain't going to cover it. In order for us to stay viable and stay able to perform the, the service to the citizens that you as the city are asking for us to do, it's going to be fifty thousand. That's, that's how it's going to play out. Unless Farmers Bank steps up and says, we're going to cover the cost of that building because that's our building.
Shouldn't we know that, I mean, we should divide that out.
Yeah, that's, I, I.
In order to make a.
This, this contract.
A sound statement or judgment, should we figure out what Farmers Bank will do?
Yeah.
I, I visited with Farmers Bank, sat in there, was contacted by Owen Wilkinson, and he says their position that they they would gladly take the building back if we don't want to continue with the lease. Um, but the option was that we just continue operating under this on a year-to-year basis. Otherwise, they'll take the building back.
See, we must talk.
When they say take the building back.
We want to have one more meeting before this thing is done on January thirty first, and that would be nice to get to.
But, but I think, though.
I, I called to see if they would send a representative over, uh, whatever, see if they would come back, is that what? That's what I was told, is that, uh, terminate the lease or continue on a year-to-year basis.
I think, though, that we have to try to, I mean, this is like near and dear to everybody. Everybody wants to be supportive of, of the senior citizens and all of that. And I think anytime they need help, anybody in the city would go help. But I think you got to try to separate that from the business at hand. And if it were another business that wasn't senior citizens and we were sending city employees in there to work on something. Some of the biggest arguments I've seen in this, in this chamber had to do with cleaning ditches out on private land. And why are you sending city people in here to do work on these private properties? You know, if, if I owned the building where area agency used to be and you were, the city was paying for all of that to improve my building, somebody's got a real good argument to say, you're improving Daniel's building with my tax dollars. I mean, somebody could say that about this building. And so I'm all for the senior citizens, I think it's a wonderful thing and we should fund it as best we can. But I, I want to separate the emotions of that from the business of that. And I think that's where we get on shaky ground.
Well, I guess on the other side of that, I'm looking at, theoretically, when, you know, you're renting out a facility, you're, you know, your rent payment is, you know, of the size that it, you know, covers the, you know, repairs and stuff that's going to occur. You know, but if, you know, we're getting it for a dollar a year, uh, you know, they're not recouping, you know, any cost either, you know, for the repairs, but I think, you know, you know, we really should, you know, approach farmers and see if there's, if something that we can do a more of a a shared, yeah, a shared, uh, expense with that, you know, I, I, I think for the first time, we've been really, you know, this year, we've been tracking the expenses, but we don't have a really good, you know, handle on it. Uh, still, yeah, I was only like saying maybe like a half a year, uh, we can kind of figure out the utilities on that, uh, maybe, but.
Daniel's a hundred percent right on the, the city doing stuff service-wise about complaints we've gotten over the past. And, I mean, and what his, his statement is a hundred percent.
Well, and I agree to a degree. Because that's what politicians do. Uh, but a nonprofit status, Mr. Henry, does that differentiate between the auto body store down the road that has the same situation?
Well, what, what makes this difference is you've got a, you've got an interest under a lease contract. And so, you know, you lease property, and the part of your lease agreement is that you're going to keep it and paying taxes, kind of tax the wrong, you've got a part of contract to make, but doesn't matter whether you improve it or not. You're getting the benefit of the way you're there.
So if we were leasing said auto body store, or auto, automotive store, same difference. Same difference as in we're leasing it, we're responsible, the lease is agreement is that we pay utilities, we pay the.
Well, in terms of this lease, and that's where the argument grew up is kind of over the years, is that who has the right, of course, the city didn't do anything. Farmers Bank, that's who I leases with. Farmers Bank, we're not paying the utility, we're not paying taxes. And, um, I think that that's over the years that kind of fallen up in here sometimes from the, the folks who came in with the new complaints, was that I have to be that guy and say, contract was pointed back, you're not here complaining, you really don't, you're an obligation here. But I, I think you guys are working in the right direction. I do encourage, uh, probably the mayor to go to somebody, farmers, and I think that could be a better resolution than what we're looking at right now. When I talked to Norman, he indicated that Prisa kind of handles all that, so that's why I've started with Prisa.
I was not having the wrong.
I think Prisa and Stanhope probably are the two that kind of handles the, the stuff.
And this one is, I'm looking at, we got February, you know?
Not till January. I, I don't think you can plug a number in until you figure out what you're doing here with this, and this, you know?
I agree with, with what Lance says on the, you know, the fifteen and the nine to consolidate those numbers. And, and I think you're right, we can't make any final decision until we know what they're going to do technically, I mean, technically. I agree with the end of January thirty first, we have no obligation to continue the lease, but, you know.
I have a certain thought for making this sense on that to us, because I'm sure they know that name, but.
Well, we talked about it.
We, I called.
But it's been a really bad deal.
They seem to, at least their attorney, they seem to be aware.
I mean, because if, if everything stays as it runs out on Redway first, and we'll cut them a check of forty-four grand, and being, and have your problems, you can call Stent or whoever and say, hey, let me fix this. And they're going to call the mayor and say, why aren't you fixing this? And the mayor will say, well, that contract expired yesterday. I'm sure they don't hear that.
Well, we will do that, so.
The only thing that I would see in the meantime is January thirty first, they'll probably be due a payment before then, you won't have a contract in place. So you're going to have to.
You, you have the contract, and then you have the lease, so what do you want to fund them for their services, as I would call it? But if you're, and you're contemplating bowling your hand and trying to cover the best you can, everything under a service contract, you're going to have to amend that later in the year, after you. I have a question for you. Do you have financials? Do you do monthly financials for your operations? Anybody do financials?
They do, towards me.
Towards me? Do they have it that breaks out your revenues and expenditures? Could I get a copy of that?
Yeah, I'll have Deanna to come to the next meeting with everything, and she's the.
Get sooner than that, so I can start.
Okay, well, I'll have her to get you one. I do have one in my office for a nice amount, and so I can bring it to you.
That would be great, because it'll help me prepare and, and, and marry others to.
So you need the financials.
Yeah, because one of the things this service contract points out is it says both parties agree, that the city agreed with, could not and, and would not be willing, if they were not willing to purchase these services, the SRCA would be financially unable to provide such services to the citizens. Both parties acknowledge this unique service to the city, and it would have greatly, it would have a great difficulty providing it on its own. Which is why we're looking at their financial viability to provide this service to the citizens and helping out that nonprofit. So what I want to know is what's the true cost to them outside of what other revenues they generate that is causing them not to be break-even or reliable? So if I see your financials, I'll be able to know that.
I'll be, I think it's prudent for us to know that before, you know, we'll, we'll make sure we, I will make sure that we have a sit-down, and I may have Mr. Henry join us on this. Dealable for you to sit down with Stanhope and Prisa.
I, I want some. Oh, you're here, thank you.
You're not, you can.
Thank you.
It's about money.
Oh, it's about money.
So what, that we table this till next month? Are we tabling that issue and then are you going to move forward with the other recommendation? Or are you waiting on all of it?
I'd say wait on all of it. I bet we don't know it all.
Correct.
Table that until?
Hold your breath.
January meeting?
They would not take that on the street?
No.
No, you're not taking that.
Your check would be the fifteen, and their meeting is going to be before that.
And I think hopefully you understand what the feeling is, that we want to do the best we can, and, and I'll stand in front of the three second by six degrees of means, that I don't think is going to be a big enough. But the biggest issue is that we got to work some details out with the bank. And that would all, obviously, be part of what you guys want to go about, maintenance and this management. As it stands, if I'm, if I'm correct, we move during the short period of time before we need, things continue on as, as they are. You have a separate check. So let me know when we send folks.
Does Deanna need to go with you to the bank?
Yeah, I think, yeah, absolutely.
So when we get to meeting, will you follow?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You need to be armed with, I mean, is the temperature of the council of not getting back into lease agreement, or would we even know or care of that?
I, it would be awful, probably.
I mean, as, as you move into.
I mean, I think I know what it is, but, yeah.
Look, I mean, before our January meeting, there are going to be any kind of preliminary meetings.
Negotiation.
We'll know, January meeting. I, I need to know what the atmosphere is over there, whether they're adversarial or. I need to know what the atmosphere is over there, whether they're adversarial or better.
Well, I mean, as you talk, we're saying, well, our guys are probably won't look, they're not looking to.
Well, I can, I can relay that if that's.
That's what I'm saying, you know, where we're at.
But I think I know, but if you want to tell me, please do.
You know where we're at.
That's, or is that the general feeling of council?
I'm all for that, because I think you have lease art, art of you.
Right.
Well, you said your past, I mean, we're spending, not even though we don't know.
Right.
So that's.
There's no way we're bad.
Well, then you're, you're showing wonderful faith if you go over and you call us, I suggest we'll take the $9,000 front. I know that's not, over the long term, considering taking $9,000, that they have not had before, or there could be some changes, building-wise. And by the way, just, and I know you're not too terribly concerned, we talked about last month, what's our, what's in Area Agency, that nine, large bulk of that is still there, they will have $8,000, probably $7,000 to draw on for another year, until, if you want to reconsider this next year, for the citizens to come forward and act with it, to make sense. There's still money in the bank at Area Agency that you, that would add to them for them to use for a citizen.
And quickly, just to point out, a comment, if we were to go to them and say, "We don't want to be in the lease," Farmers Bank could very easily say, "Sure, we'll listen to them, and here's your rent."
Sure.
And then it's back to rent, and the expense back to us.
Then we become.
Well, we would also pay the lease into them for the same dollar that they've leased into us.
And guys, you got to remember too, if you look, if you look at the back page of this lease agreement, the, the last signature on the bottom, has a lot to do with that, so, that's my part of the.
In this case, it'll.
I'm going to say that out loud, there probably wasn't a lot of thought into that, so.
There's.
There was some negotiation with it, like, oh, wait.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, Mayor, for what we're, what we're further proposing is that $1 lease agreement, which would just be direct with the senior citizens, for a dollar.
I agree with it. I'd negotiate the part of the money.
I doubt it'd be the dollar, you know, because, you know.
Ours was a dollar, why can't it be $5?
It was a dollar. Covering balls back home, repairs, and ours was a dollar plus everything.
You maintain your own building.
Exactly. You throw that maintaining your own building back, you have to charge the rent.
We'll be out on the street, because we don't have a fancy pay round.
We'll move you in fire department, cheeseburger.
You got a kitchen, look at it.
Thank you.
State of the art.
New utensils? It's always with fire department. So, hang with us.
Our city, we build a new building, we just have a new senior senior.
Very well.
Actually, that happened when you talked about.
Yeah, that, that's a long discussion. Yeah, we have state representative that I, we have.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
When you get to your meeting.
Yes, you'll be the first one, you'll be the first one, thank you, Ms. Moore. All right.
Dennis, no more dinners.
I think that's got them all at one time. So, moving to new business, item number two, street conversations, buying, selling, Sebastian County Road Department. Do we have a handout or a piece on that?
No, what this is, is a, we're looking at buying a truck-mounted brush hog for the drainage issue that we're having around the city. And it, it's not, it's gotten dry, moved on through Charlotte, and Charlotte's, the judge is, and we understand that it is, it's okay to shake hands and many deal on certain equipment. That's why it's, what this is all about.
And, and because it were us making sure, because it was first initiate, or first glimpse of this was, it wasn't okay, we kind of got that to the county, and when reality, it wasn't necessarily through the county, it was just somewhere out there, so we wanted to make sure that we could, because then when the business ends up a bid, and it's an auction, all this, and the piece of equipment that he refers to, is, as he said, it is part of what I'm calling war on drainage, which is getting rid of the stuff that's in there growing and restricting our drainage position, so this is part of the army, if you will, to go help start that program.
The authorization goes beyond that, it's buy and sell anything. This one for?
Is it just anything, or this, there's something in particular y'all might.
This piece, what we're wanting is, we could come back, I'm not looking for a carton authorization to buy all their dump trucks over there.
We just need a council vote in the minutes of the meeting, we don't need a resolution.
I don't think we do.
So, but there's going to be another, one of them, them, and then, that's definitely one, and then we need to sell to them. I mean, that's okay, law says, high state of June, Ms. Blue said, it's okay to do it, you know, but it needs council approval for a resolution.
This one?
This does, yes. So the authorization was for him to get going, because all this is going to take place in 2020, and you'll have it in the budget, but can he get going with that? Well, I, that's, I think what.
To market?
Yeah.
Because I thought there would be a resolution, maybe, but it turned out, it'd be $11,000, it wasn't, the facts weren't really known yet on the prices and.
And the other piece of equipment is the one I kind of put the next day.
For now. It really wasn't from the county.
That's, that's, that's true. Yeah, we were looking at the one the county has.
I'll make a motion that we allow, that we extend authorization to the street department to buy and sell equipment to Sebastian County Road Department.
A second. Make a motion, a second.
Now, clarifying, it will be known in the budget or a resolution, when this comes back, so. You just need, you're giving him authorization for it.
That's what I get there from your company.
That's just to clarify.
That there'd be a resolution for a particular piece.
Well, we're in the budget, everybody talks about it. You don't need a resolution.
Or he would be spend, spending his fun in whatever, in the 2020 budget.
But you're going to give him the.
There's a one pile up there, he's opening it and feeding it out there.
I think we're going to be opening it, if we, if we have a piece thing available.
But you.
That we might need, given that.
It'll be, again, presenting it with a resolution, if another piece comes up, he's going to have to, just not in a budget item, he's going to have to come up with a, uh, need this budget.
So the main thing is, when we sell a piece of equipment, bought with public funds, you know, y'all need to know that not, it's going away by another rip, and then public for an auction. So, and this is where it's going, it's going to the county, there are another public, and you're very aware that it's not going to sell, so, and it's then going to sell it by profit, you know, something like that, so that's why we're careful on something.
That mean surplus? Is it similar?
Can we just say?
No, it's really.
No. Every transaction has to be represented with a resolution.
I don't see, I don't have a problem with that.
We're, you know what I'm saying, individual transaction has to be represented with a resolution. Just.
I have the email, I mean, it's off there, and I shared it, right at my, words from David Jones. And, and his main thing was, council should have.
I'd be very comfortable with resolution.
Don't just say that chip could be cut out of resolution, that's my thought.
When we go ahead and, for the record, say, "Yeah, go forward with this vote," but then he's going to come back, so, do we understand? Okay.
Did you have a, what was your issue?
Instead of, instead of the budget, you technically approved the resolution to the budget, so he doesn't, you don't need a specific resolution for something that is aligned on the budget that he's already asked.
So he was going to pack 30 grand in there for a future, maybe, mortgage?
No, if he says, "I'm buying a brush hog, mountain on a truck, for $24,000," and you approve the budget, he doesn't need to come back to you with a resolution.
And I'm talking about right here in the year, if something else comes up.
Something else would come up, basically what he's saying is, you're authorizing him to negotiate.
Yeah.
That's what you're doing, not to actually buy or to actually sell. You're, you're authorizing him to negotiate for the intention of buying or selling equipment with the Sebastian County Road Department.
And that's what.
Give him the ability to go out and do the deal, come back to you with the deal, and you approve.
Right.
Your motion should be negotiated.
Because you can't get rid of our equipment, letting other way, there's no cost.
But, but, but all of our department is, should have that power of negotiation.
She brought it up, because what you're doing is, you're going from a, you're going to, from the road department, it's almost like a municipality to municipality deals.
Right.
She brought it up to say, "We're not doing a side deal, we're, we're going off the, buying from a bid board, we're not buying from the Arkansas State approved vendor list, we're not buying from an auction, we're doing this in the best interest of the cities and the taxpayer dollar, but it's allowable, but you guys have to approve it."
And because we don't get rid of anything out of the public auction, because that's what the state wants it, but what, what does make allowance for municipal to municipal law.
County, municipal.
Yeah.
Basically, to, to, to be aware of that, now we know that, that we can do that, and authorize him to negotiate, and he can come back.
What was all the last 15 minutes arguing for?
I wanted to clarify that.
Otis, do you know?
They're getting our presentation.
You know why? Why we were arguing.
I mean, if I, Curtis, if you just want to negotiate, yeah, people negotiate.
We just, but we just found this out, and we realized that it's a thing you can do, so we wanted to make sure.
Okay. All I heard was, we're getting tired of buying stuff all year.
No, no, no. So, can you redo your motion?
I'd like to amend my motion to authorize the street department to negotiate to buy and sell equipment with the Sebastian County Road Department.
Yeah, you. Second.
Hi, we got Miss Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
With Daniel.
Yes.
And you.
Thank you very much.
Unfortunately, he's pegging the sentence of pretty of the street.
He is, and will be for a while, just as Mr. Riley is.
And you?
And I said, thank you very much. Want to we give a big thumbs?
Right.
Number two, three, sorry, finance department, 2018 water, wastewater audit report.
Required to give you kind of a synopsis or brief overview of the audit that was conducted, so I gave you the entire audit, along with the letters that were sent both to the mayor regarding the audit and some of the significant findings, so that's, first thing I want to drop, bring to your attention is the independent auditor's report, which is page out right after the table of contents. The independent audit report has an opinion, the opinion they rendered was a clean, unqualified opinion, which is passing in yet, so there's no issues, no significant material discrepancies found in the audit, the audit was very clean. I will draw your attention to some of the highlights from it, page three, this being the water sewer audit. Page three of the audit report is the asset page. Midway through there, you're going to see the equipment totals for 2018 of buildings, water systems, sewer system and equipment, less the accumulated depreciation, as I mentioned to the Water Super Commission, they have 27 million in capital assets, 9 million in depreciation. In 2017, we were at 31.8% depreciated assets. Right now, in 2018, we're at 33.5, the magic number is about 35, before you start having to do some consideration for replacing certain assets that are completely depreciated state, state or status. Mostly that would come into your building and equipment side, and you have to start looking at maybe some repair replacements of some of your water and sewer systems. They want that to start being in the discussion phase, I've already put in their mind, I want a one, three, and five-year capital plan. This is one of the indicators that tells we're reaching some items that might be in your one to three-year plan. Once you get 50% depreciated assets, you're going to be looking at potentially immediately spending money in order to replace them. So that's a number that I keep looking at. The other one would be on page four, down at the bottom of the liabilities and debt position, the total liabilities, net position has a change between 2017 and 2018 of over $2 million. Your net position increased by $3 million plus, and that's because the legislative audit, we were taking the restricted water sewer monies, as you know, and you gave us authorization to move that into its own fund, that was being sent to us through to the general fund that we were just maintaining restricted for water sewer, because that's the 1% city sales and use tax. Let's say the audit made a finding that we had to move that into its own fund, you approved that, and when we did, became part of the water sewers fund now. So that's where that net change in the net position came from, it came from the transfer of the asset out of general fund into the water sewers. Most of it is picked up in cash, and you will, you have the asset side cash in the bank. That was one of the biggest changes. I will show you on page five how that played out, when you looked at what your net position was between 2017 and 18. Page five down at the bottom, where it says beginning net position, ending net position. When you look at the increase in net position, that's that $3 million I was talking about. However, if you just look at your 18 million to 18.5, the net position change without the influx of the cash from the restricted side of the city's old use tax was pretty flat. And if you look up at the top on the operating revenues, the change in services went from 2.9 in 2017 to 2.926, you're only increasing about $16,000 in your revenues, and that's because it was a figure year. I'm hesitant to say it was an anomaly year, but it definitely was one of the out of the flow years, but we're hoping that that's not continuing from the fact that water is in the business of selling water, and you don't sell sewer, you sell the service for sewer. I don't know anybody that would want to buy sewer. At any rate, you're buying the service, and as water goes, so does the sewer. Most of the other parts of the report are pretty cut and dry, it's pretty much a flat year. I will get to the profitability of each of the departments in a second. I do want to draw your attention to page nine, where it talks about depository accounts, which is the third line down under note one, it says depository account. We are fully collateralized with our deposits, as you know, the money that's in the bank has to be collateralized because it exceeds the FDIC insurability, so we have to make sure that if something were to happen to the bank, that we got money in, in our deposits are collateral, that they invest that in, is sufficient enough to be able to fund us if the bank should go under. So we are fully collateralized, that is a point I want to make. On page 11, there's a error, I want you to get that corrected, or we issue these to the actual bondholders. The interest rate that's listed under the Arkansas Development Finance Authority for the April 15, 2022 bond that's retiring, that we found out that we cannot pay off early, it says it's a 1.5% interest, it's actually a half percent interest, not a 1.5% interest. Our current principal paid, principal current balance as of right now, even though that says 750,000 as of 18, as of the end of 19, it's 540, uh, five, yeah, 540,183, or a little over half a million dollars. One of the things that is on page 12, talks about the long-term debt, and it says, "We have substantial compliance," on the very top, note three, "Substantial compliance with bond covenant requirements for the above bond issues." It said, "The fund failed to meet the 110% coverage requirement for both 2018 and 17. Pursuant to the requirements of the official statement of the 2016 bonds, the fund has begun a hundred-day study." And it says substantial compliance on the very top note three. Substantial compliance with bond covenant requirements for the above bond issues. It said the fund failed to meet the 110% coverage requirement for both 2018 and 17. Pursuant to the requirements of the official statement of the 2016 bonds, the fund has begun to undertake a study. A break revision is required to bring the fund back into compliance. We do not have a choice. That could affect your bond ratings if we don't do something in order to get back into the 110% coverage. In 2017, we were 102%. We are 80% right now. And I have that actual calculation in your actual audit package there to show where it came from. Under supplemental information, that's page 15. You'll see midway through loss before operating transfers or operating loss. You will see that water had an $84,000 loss. Sewer had a $235,000 loss, mostly coming from the fact that bond comes out of water sewer revenues off the top before the allocation of the remaining revenue. Your December 31, 2018 was 319,000 consolidated loss for the department. Before you add back in depreciation and operating transfers from city sales and use tax. When you do that, the, the loss after the operated net increase after the transition of the, of the influx from the city sales and use tax, put them all in a profitable status, all of them were profitable after the transfers. Net position, 17 million water funds, net position, sewers 4 million for a consolidated total of 21 million, which is a very favorable net position. The letters to the mayor, I think it was me, I think I wrote it in there, page 16. Down at the bottom, it says difficulties and encountered in performing the audit. There was no difficulties or significant difficulties. I want to thank Tim and Greg for their part in helping with that audit. The search was completed in just a few months' time and that's pretty good. We still don't have the legislative audit final asked yet. That's on them, not on us. There's still some questions that are being asked regarding the events that happened at the beginning of the year in March, I think, with the parks department. There's, it says other audit findings and issues on the very next page. I have issued a separate communication of significant efficiencies, so that would be the next letter. I'll have these noted, but last two pages. Segregation duties is always going to be a finding to us because we run the mean and mean through segregated as best we can with who we have and how much we have to operate with. We are not at significant risk of material deficiencies of the result, so it will be a finding, but it's not a material finding. The two things that I did talk about, the accounts receivable balances, where we need to reconcile those on a monthly basis, please Daniel. Bringing them back to the considered letters we're going to be doing and maybe your deposit payable, same effect. The biggest one was the required debt service coverage. As you know, it's kind of odd, it's upset, continued failure, new discovered. Could impact the bond ratings on future issues. So we'll let you know that the bond has specific wording in here. This is not prepaid at the option of the city. And that's because when this was renegotiated, the original bond was a little more favorable to the bondholder. Bringing it down to a half percent interest, we need to get them, they needed it to go to maturity in order to get them a decent rate of return. If you paid it off early, it would be cutting into that. And bondholders put that caveat on there. You actually also approved a resolution which stipulates that as well, or ordinance, excuse me, which stipulates that as well. So our hands are pretty much high. This will play out until 2022. The other bond I do have here, which is where the covenants come from. The other bond, optional redemptions, the subject of the option of the city, these funds from any source can be redeemed on or after July 1, 2021. So that's when your first opportunity to refinance or do anything with the, the other bond, the water bond. And that is your audit.
So not being able to pay that off early, we're wondering while we're looking at the rating.
But you know, we're going to do a study session. John's here. We're going to do a study session. We're going to enact that to show that we are doing what the bond covenant requires, which is do a study and find out what we need to do. But as everybody in this room knows, you just have to make sure that you meet that covenant of net revenues, 110% of your bond debt coverage. So what you can do is you can either increase revenue, you can decrease expense, or you can do a combination of both. So it's not just increasing revenue. You can mitigate the effect by looking more at controlling some of your expenses. It's difficult to do when, you know, some of your expenses are somewhat fixed or they're more labor related. Remember, this is the O and M side, not the city sales and use tax side. The bond does say that the collateralization for this bond is the water system revenue, not the city sales and use tax. You can bring money in to cover them cash flow wise all day long from the city sales and use tax. But when it comes to the bondholders, that's not a guaranteed source of revenue to them. It's a fluctuating source of revenue and they exclude it from the documentation. So John Q. Public may not understand that, but that's the way the bond works and bond ratings affect the continued future operations of the water sewer department, so.
I was just, I was just, ever since Mr. Brady talked earlier about 10, 15% hike, I think I'll leave that somewhere. I was just wondering, I mean, we've, we've hit a panic button because we've had a wet year. We can't pay the bond off early. We've got a bunch of panic button issues that may not be around for sure after 2022. Let me just cut to, because I don't know how to say it. Is there a gradual 2% a year for something? Not even a chance or a possibility or does it no good as opposed to move here to 15%?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we're going to do the study session, to be talking about all these options. In 2022, the sewer department will immediately become $240,000 or 200,000 dollars more revenue. And, and that bond issue goes away. That covenant issue drops to half. We'll be 200% coverage if not greater. So what we're really doing is looking for about a three-year stopgap. So, and we're only looking at the sewer side, not the water side.
So could we, you know, rate cut after two or three years?
I don't.
When we hear that.
Boy, that would be an awful idea.
Well, I'm just saying.
Another city state, that'd be, that would be great.
I mean, I'm just saying, there's no reporting.
Because when, when I show them quick ratios, which shows the, the current assets versus the current liabilities, one of the things that they have is labor costs and the expenses pretty much increase over time with inflation. But your revenue stream stays steady and it, what's happening is your lines are coming closer together and you're not getting to the point where your revenues are keeping up with your expenses. It's difficult in an O and M side, which is your operation side, when a lot of your expenses is outwards, to not, since 1996, do anything to your rate in order to look at future down the road. What I'm saying you can do is not do something dramatic that keeps us like way above the curve for years to come when we know there's going to be remedy or relief in 2022. We can do something that would get us there and then have that to go forward on for another 10 years.
Now, we rate some kind of rate about 08 and then.
It was 11.
08, it was a big water rate, 08.
Water.
Yeah, it was water, pretty good size water rate.
To the point you just made, I said this to Tim later, I, you know, I was on the water for a number of years and we always talk about these things. I've, I've always been an advocate of this annual, have a formula that there's this annual water sewer rate increase. Half of GDP or something, something incremental. These small little incremental pieces. You know, I think John maybe said it earlier, 1996 or something, was the last time we had this sewer increase. What, what we find ourselves doing over the years is we need this large, the, the, the distribution lines in water have gotten deteriorated and they're bad because there wasn't any money and we didn't have money every year to fix them. And so every year, the problem gets a little worse and a little worse. And so we have this huge problem. We saw that with the water plant and we had to go in and get a bond, rebuild the water plant, all those kind of things. Where if you have these incremental growth each year in your revenues, hopefully you, not only would you not have these debt issues, you would be building up a kitty that says, you know, someday we're going to want to extend sewer out to Daniel's house down.
That's the city sales and use tax, so that's your 1%.
Yeah.
That's not your goal yet. No, don't, don't put, or the capital.
Yeah, you're right, yeah. But, but the more, the more infrastructure you build, the more O and M required to maintain this infrastructure in part to a degree.
It's not in the same degree. One of the things that you have to think about though is as more people come to the city, tap onto the sewer and water, more customers you get, more revenue you generate regardless of whether it's a wet year or not wet year. But you're not necessarily immediately adding that new personnel to be pumped with that expense. That may be a year or two down the road as this, you know, starts growing.
That is another factor. Our number of new taps, this year was up a little bit. I think there was like 29 new taps, so 29 new cuts. Of course, you lose a few every year, house burned down, whatever, not too many. But last year, it was very low number of new taps in 18. And that's another factor that's hurting us. And next year, if all these duplexes out, East Town be put in and people start moving in, that will help. That will help. And it's dry year, that will help too. But we don't know how, you know, how many people live out there or other places or how wet it's going to be next year.
Look at page 20 of your audit report. That's the one that shows what, what we're going to be discussing. Because everything's on the table. That's a good point that we can make, you know, for future, something we need to think about it. So these are mental increases. Page 20 shows you that our charges for service, these are the audited numbers now. The charges for service was 2,909. That's consolidated water sewer. Interest income was 6,900. I'm going to try to bring that more up to around 50,000 to 60,000. The total revenue is 2,909. Those are all in what we're going to calculate towards the income or loss for operations. Your operating expense was 3,200,000. You have a book's loss of 313,000 dollars. Your depreciation though is part of that operating expense, which is a non-cash item. So it's not cash available for paying the debt. So we have to add that depreciation back. When we do, you have an income available for debt of 292,000. Well, your debt service right now with both bonds is 362,000, so you're 80% covered. You are required to be at 398,000 net grade. We're at 292,000, so you have to come up with, how do we fund, how do we come up with 105,000 in our operations? That's, that's where we're short right now in meeting that requirement. It's 105. So whatever the percentage is of our current customers, how would we spread that 109,000 up to them in order to be to cover? And projected for our 2020 budget, what are we projecting our audited, our covenant shortage or surplus to be? And add that shortage into the same calculation for next two years.
How many sewer customers are there?
A little over 3,000. I think like 30, it's more waters because there's some people like me are water only, but I think sewers, it's a little over 3,000.
Water taps are about 3,300?
Um, maybe a little more than that, but yeah, 34, 35, I think, somewhere in there. Yeah, water.
So there's four or 500.
Right.
You and me.
Right.
For two of them.
Yeah, about that.
Without sewers.
About that, yes.
Talk about the, the number, the number of residents, the number of structures. He was saying that there was.
Less sewer, about 32, isn't it?
Less sewer.
A little, I think it's more like 3,100, I think. Might be off a little bit, it's about that then.
But also, I mean, if we kind of start looking at a one and three and five year plan, I mean, because, you know, in the five year plan, it might be something that we're seeing that, oh, we got to, it's something else that, that possibly means we need bonded or something. In some ways, while at 2022, also we're going to be maybe 200% of our existing, of the remaining bond that's left. Another bond issue could bring it right back down to, you know, 110 again or less.
We're going to try and obtain any new, any new bonds for a while. And if we are, we're going to read those covenants real close before we enter. And if it's not too much money, we may look at going the bank route because they don't, they're not speaking on the rules. They just want to get paid and we have no problem paying.
On one side, I mean, you can't beat a half percent interest.
That's true. That's true.
Okay, so just the average sewer bill, does anybody know that?
$13?
Depends on how much water you use, but probably average, about 20 probably. I mean, some people use more than others, but probably medium is probably around 20.
Take them on showers, because I got kids.
So I think I need to take a motion to accept this audit.
I'll make a motion, we accept the audit.
What was I going to say?
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Here, yes.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Center?
Yes.
Dan?
Thank you. Number four, Parks Department, through Parks Commission membership appointment.
Counselors, there, I can't be. Two months ago, Parks Commission had a major issue. And they asked for 5, 12 years. And we had eliminated two because these are the city limits. We're down to three in last month. We did, we had this agreement agreed on individual Brandon King. Brandon King is a counselor at East Kings School. He's an integral member. He enjoyed trails as a hype rider. He came highly recommended to the commission. It was an unanimous decision by the Parks Commission to put this name up. And I feel we'd be a big plus to the Parks Commission. At this time, I would respectfully request the council to approve Brandon King as a member of the Parks Commission.
I'll make a motion, we confirm Brandon King.
Very. That motion is second to confirm Mr. Tate.
Brown?
Yes.
Major?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Center?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody know his brother dog?
Who what?
Does anybody know his brother dog? I was going to say, do not hold that against his brother.
No, I'm not, I'm working.
I'm joking. He's a old classic man and I do need help. I think Mr. Tate would do. Excellent.
Sure.
Excellent. Uh, number five, human resources, resolution to amend vacation benefits, pushing out policy handle for non-uniformed employees. This evening was, our HR director was going to present this and she had to stay home with a sick child, so I asked her to carry it to such on this issue.
It was disputed, I guess, by, I think, employee. I don't know backstory on it.
Certainly a question.
Most of the awarding, the way we award vacation and it was realizing that personal policy, but he did not clearly state when, when we do award it. We've been awarding it at the first of the year for a long time, a number of years. And I think it used to say it, but then the personal policy, it was a whole, I think it was changed and it just didn't include it. So the highlighted portion is what we need to add so that it's very clear as a plan, vacation time is awarded. It's in January or whatever's coming up in the year.
I know on the actual handout in the, it's not highlighted online, but, but the one that you sent out in the email is highlighted, so it's very obvious to say.
What can we highlight? Determined on an anniversary year basis in the first part?
Is it highlighted on the roll?
No.
Okay, well, it didn't come through that way, I guess.
It's about middle page.
So the highlight told you in the very first paragraph of the document, determined on an anniversary year basis. And that's adding that language. And then the third paragraph down, that whole paragraph is being added.
And it just on the employee's anniversary?
Well, it'd be lovely. We had a program that couldn't do it. We asked some employees, but it wasn't, you couldn't depend on, you know, human error to do that every time.
Manual.
But now, I think we have our program, will do it automatically. So that. But now, I think we have our program, will do it automatically, so that.
By the employee's anniversary?
Anniversary date, and if you wish for it to be that way, we can certainly change it to that way, I guess, um.
Everything I've ever seen was based on your employment.
See, I personally like that, because if someone quits, you know, if somebody gets their three weeks in January 1st, and then they really weren't earning it until November, and then later in the year, then they, they leave the board, and they got all that.
If somebody was in, was hired December 2nd, they could take a week's vacation in March, until Charles Point quit in July.
If they're allowed to do it by the record.
It seems like the cleanest way to do it is, is your anniversary day.
You're only able to carry 80 hours over, I think the carryover was some of the issue too, because if my anniversary date's December, and I get that extra on my anniversary date, I have to take it, because I can't carry it over, I will lose it in a week. So that's why they're saying, look, in the year of your anniversary, if, like mine's August, January 1 of my third year, I get 80 hours, I can take it anytime in the year, because I can only roll over 80. I think that was one of the things.
Probably would have to change the anniversary date.
And there was some discussion with Chan, Tom Sisson, about the labor intensive, I don't, I wasn't aware of.
Who's an annual.
Way to do that, but.
I'm not so sure it's on the menu. I didn't think of what else to do. It's anniversary day, we have to be annual, so.
Which one?
Labor intensive.
We, this is all administrative, right? Vacation stuff?
Yes.
Yes.
I think I'll come. I had another comment, I'm kidding.
You can tell it. I, listen, anything that's administrative, in my opinion, I, I value your opinion, I'm not gonna do it, I'm kidding.
Well, you probably lynch by your employees.
Well, there, there are, there are those things, and.
I'm not a fan of it, of the carryover.
Of the carryover at all?
Right. Use or lose it, or buy it back, or whatever.
Oh, you mean use it all, don't carry anything back, or just don't worry about 80 hours, just whatever.
I wouldn't have any carryovers.
I mean, if you get four weeks of vacation per year. If you get four weeks of vacation per year, what, I don't know how y'all break it down here.
They break them.
Right. Or, I'll just give you an example, Robert, if a guy's there 20 years, he qualifies for four weeks, on his anniversary 20 years, he gets four weeks for the next year, but it starts on January 1st, like you said. So in two weeks, he's gotta take whatever, the other two weeks, he can either take, or lose, or sell back to the company that will pay it for him. Yeah, you can cash it out, but so, you gotta use them after, our business year just changed in January 1st, December 31st, so, I mean, I, I guess the rollover's cool, I'm sure that's probably enticing to the employees.
But if you terminate, you only get 80 hours.
Right.
You could have 120, if you think that's what you would be owed, but that, the 80 hours is because it only carries over 80. Whatever you accrue after that 80's carried over, if you were to terminate, let's say in August, you don't get the 80 that you didn't take, plus your accrual, you'll only get 80 hours, that's the last paragraph there.
The school system, I think, they, they earn one day per month, I believe.
Parents, parents on the number of years that you have, that's what I just said.
But they don't, well, I guess they carry over though, something, though.
We can carry over 240 hours. A year.
Our six hours, probably, we earn four hours, we earn days, or four.
Yeah. Well, it seems to work well, and I'm not disregarding that, too, but certainly, like I said, we value your guys' opinions, for sure, it seems to work okay, it's just there was a glitch in the system, or this glitch.
Why does that happen? I wouldn't find my point in that, because it's off your door.
Right, right.
Just eight years.
Well, the, the main change was to clarify that everybody's awarded it on January 1st.
Do we need to vote on?
Uh, I would like to vote, yes, I'll vote this.
Hey, I mean, well. But the work, I mean.
But, I mean, the, the last couple of years, we've been doing it this way, it just hasn't been.
Correct.
It'd be done it this way since June 11th. She's probably the first. January 1st. It's a resolution, because it's admitting the first half also.
Yeah, you need to vote for it. Did I make the motion?
Second.
A motion second.
Motion for what?
Resolution as written.
Okay, thank you.
Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Center?
Yes.
You did it.
Thank you. Number six, Council, adoption, 2020 Council meeting calendar. Have that on your packet.
Yep.
And we, obviously, I think we've done this, we do this every year, but if there are on occasion, there's something that comes up, possibly that we have to change, or we can do that, come back and change.
Make the motion, we adopt? Second.
Motion second to adopt the calendar.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Center?
Yes.
Center?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Number seven, is Planning Department. I don't have access to you, I can't leave that one, I mean, he's here, but we're.
What, the?
The technical, no, just the, as it's listed on the.
Res zoning?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It is ordinance to rezonate from R1 to R5 property of North Coker and Houston Street.
So you have an extra small?
There is extra, I mean, that's for good.
All right, given you is a, a map of the location of parcel that we're being talking about, and also, uh, a printout of the, uh, elevation of the duplex that is being proposed for the area, but I'm here tonight to ask for the approval for an ordinance zoning property located on the southeast corner at the intersection of, uh, West Houston and Coker Street. This is property, parcel, parcel number, there's no address on it, since there's kind of a resident on it, and you have the parcel number on the, uh, ordinance itself. This came in front of the planning commission at the last monthly meeting, and after a lot of discussion, the planning commission approved this, and that will sleep, they talked to you for your approval. This area there is a, is a large empty lot, uh, Mr. Brown wants to do, uh, put duplexes there possibly, uh, right now, all we're asking for is the R1 to R5 zoning.
Sunny?
Yes.
In the, this is in that area that we rezoned the possibility, right?
Yes.
It's, when the planning commission goes in, or Planning Department, I don't know if y'all take, you take it to them, or what, uh, how involved is the water and sewer commission? Do we have capacity in all these areas?
Yes.
Y'all, y'all look at it a case by case, and this one, water and sewer commission said it'd be fine, even though it's.
What I do is, when this, uh, when somebody proposes this, I get with Greg, and I get with, uh, Tim, and I, I show them what we're, uh, what we're looking at, and ask if there's any issues there, and if it will handle the capacity, and I get their approval, you know, uh, so.
Before we move forward.
Sure.
Okay, make sure we all understand this.
All right.
We have, we got the, we've done the master zoning map, that we all approved.
Yes.
And this, the comprehensive plan, and we all said, we agree to that, so here's, this is meeting, this falls in the comprehensive plan, all we're asking for is the rezon.
Yes.
No problem. What happens next? Because you just said.
What happens next, it would be like?
He might build a duplex, but right now, all you're asking for is the rezon.
Yes, what happens next is, uh, Mr. Daniel, Mr. Brown will come to me with a, uh, flat of what he wants to put there, I will look at it, Don and I will look at it, we'll make sure that it fits on the lot properly, if there's any variances, then that will be determined at the time. We, we heard earlier that we're asking for a variance, we're doing all this, we're not yet, we don't know, because, uh, we know that this lot, we know that it divines the lot, and Mr. Brown and I are gonna get together, and we're gonna look at it and see how these, if it's possible to put two duplexes on there. If it is, and it meets all of our zoning regulations, then we will proceed forward.
Okay.
All right, uh, one thing, on your map here.
Yeah.
I believe that you're including the, um, storage building on the.
Yeah, the, the storage building is on that property, it will be cornered.
It will be cornered, okay.
So, I'm sure you guys have gotten the same phone calls I've gotten, um, and, and this, I mean, this for years, that we all know, because, I don't know what the answer to it is, and what's right and what's wrong, but it's, there's this reputation, I guess, or whatever, around duplexes and multifamily.
That's why I told you, the.
This is gonna be terrible if we do that, um, and, you know, and I suppose sometimes they are, there's a lot of single-family properties that get built. I mean, you could go up there and build a single-family house on that property, fully intended for it to be a rental property, that's rented by people that never mowed the grass, and never put the trash up, and all those kind of things. I mean, the house across the street from this looks terrible. Sorry if you're hearing this, your house, but, I mean, that's the truth.
It's why that I mean, I'm.
I get it, I get it, the, the sting associated with it, but, but there's a picture in, in here that, that, that you gave to us tonight, the one, the, on, uh, 623 East Lincoln, and when that, when, I don't even remember who built that.
I couldn't say that before, like that.
Um, yeah, no, it was last year, 2018, right up here.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
That's a guy lost.
Guy lost.
Everybody in the neighborhood showed up and said, this is gonna be oil, if you allow them to build a duplex, this is gonna be terrible. And they built it, and it's nice, and here's a picture of a nice duplex, and, and.
That's the same, we, we heard the same thing over a lot.
And I'm not saying I'm all for duplexes.
I know, and cedar in that area too, I mean, it's, it's, it's everything.
I mean, I didn't, I don't particularly like the look of this parking and everything on this right here.
But to give you an example, on.
These are some nice duplexes.
And on this particular parcel here, you know, I, by the state law, I have to inform the people around there that, uh, that is gonna affect, I, I sent out seventeen letters for the property owners around that area, and ten of them are rental properties. Included in that ten is a, uh, two duplexes and a apartment. That's within that, that circle that I have to, that I sent out letters to. So they're already rental property there, and, uh, this will be a lot better than some of the rental property that's there. You mentioned the house across the street, it's a rental property.
I get, you know, and, and, I, I don't know, I don't know how I feel about this, maybe I got more questions to answer first. Well, I, I think what I think is, I don't mind rental property, but I, I want nice property, nice size, I don't like this idea of narrowing the, the current regulation, the variances from existing regulations.
You know, like, again, if, if there is a variance of one or two feet, that's a possibility. If there's a variance of 10 foot, not gonna happen. Uh, there is, for example, and, and totally agree with you, out on Hall Street, there has been, uh, one piece of property that's been presented duplexes to us at least three times, and we turned them down all three times, because they are the lower-income type duplexes, that, uh, they're wanting to piece mill in one at a time, and things like that. We're holding the duplexes up in these areas to a higher standard, and it's, like I said, if you go around and look at the ones that Mr. Brown's already constructed over on Dogwood in that area there, you will see that. There, that's why I wanted you to see that elevation of what he intends to build, an all-brick duplex. He has also agreed, one of the complaints was, that there's no sidewalks in the area, but the ground has, uh, agreed to build sidewalks on his property now. You know, should we require him to do that? I don't know, it's right in the middle of, of a, a, a large area that has no other sidewalk, so there would be one little area with sidewalk, you know, that's his, his choice.
That might be a challenge for us to complete on towards the school.
Well, and that's true, and a lot of communities now, they're, they're requiring, when somebody comes in and, and does the makeover of houses for rental, or whatever, when they do a, over a certain dollar value, they're required to put sidewalks in them. So these houses that are there that are rental right now, that if somebody comes in and they want a building permit to go in and remodel this house, then they're required to have sidewalks.
We don't have that in our existing ordinances now?
No, but we need to.
We have it in new construction.
Or new construction.
Or, or new developments, yes. Not, not in the.
In the, in existing, in the existing subdivisions, we have, uh, we still charge them for sidewalks, they have to, you know, get a little, and that way we can, we put in our sidewalk.
You have to do it completely. Wrap that ordinance up, that dollar value should be there.
Yeah, you know, it, it, uh, it would be, you know, up for discussion on that, you know, because we have an ordinance that says that if you have a, a house that's not within, uh, you know, today's code, and it has a fire, or a tornado, or whatever, and it does over 50% of the damage, then it's torn down, and you can't rebuild it. And so there needs to be a dollar value on this, if, if somebody goes in and gets a build, uh, remodel permit, and it's over, you know, a certain percent of the value of the house, then they need to put in sidewalks.
Sunny, that's not the point of this, can I talk, can you stick around Council Forum, and let's talk a little bit more about it?
You can.
Okay, Council Forum, I want to discuss that a little further, because Vanessa doesn't have to do anything with what we.
Yeah, I, I know, uh, on, uh, the handout that, uh, she provided us, uh, which I appreciate, it showed that, uh, both duplexes, you know, they're facing Coker Street, and it looked like in your proposal, like, you know, one's gonna face Coker, and one's gonna face Houston.
Well, again, we don't know at that point yet, that was just the initial drawing of the, the flat, and, you know, would, if those were put in there at that position, what would the setback be, you know, so, we've got to determine which way that the duplexes are gonna be, which is gonna be the front door, which is gonna be the, you know, the side door, you got, you got a door on this one, you got a opening on this, and either one of them could be your front door, because it depends on how the, the duplexes, uh, positioned on the lot.
And once you figure all that out, Sunny, that comes back to us for.
No, uh, but that would go back to the planning department, or the planning commission, that if it needed a variance, now, if, uh, if Mr. Brown comes to me, and he says, here's how I would like to put them, and it's got X number of feet, uh, front yard setback, X number of foot, rear yard setback, X number of side yard, and it fits in there.
As long as it needs all the subdivision regulations, it's built.
There you go.
If it wanted a variance, it goes. If it wanted a variance, it goes back to the planning.
Variance, it goes back to the planning.
Which they got here?
No, they, they approve the variance, the board adjustment approves variances. And again, if it's a one or two foot variance, you know, it would be easier to get a variance. If it's a ten foot variance on a, you know, fifteen foot setback, and he's asking to, you know, take ten foot out and only five foot, then they wouldn't approve that.
And, and, and the reason I'm asking all this is the sole why of that rambling I did a minute ago is, I mean, I understand people have this stigma that they have reservations about it, I would have the same if it were next door to me. But I feel like our job is to represent the people that live there. I mean, they, the people that called me are the people that live in that neighborhood, you know, I guess, I think that's not even my role.
You just represent.
Uh, but, you know what I mean, I, our job is not to, to please you, it's not to please the builder, our job is to serve the people that put us here. And so I'm trying to figure that all out, you know.
Most of the complaints that we've got on this are from people that own rentals.
Really?
Like I said, out of seventeen letters, ten of them are rentals.
Well, I didn't get one of those letters, but my property is right there.
Well, we claimed it to you at the planning commission, because the, the letters go out to the property itself, not, you know, it's addressed to, to the property owner, but it goes to that address, now, if your renter there does not.
Ma'am, ma'am, I have, you can speak and just, you'll have to come to the podium and speak this year.
If your renter doesn't give you that envelope, you know, that happens all the time with my co-adviser, I'll send somebody a certified letter to that property. Well, the property owner could live in a home, and that, but the person there at that address will not give them that letter. So they don't know that, you know, that they have got a certified letter. And, and so they won't pick it up. After a week or so, I get the letter back and it says, undeliverable, because they, they, they won't pick it. So that's the reason why, when the state requires us to make a, a good faith effort into notifying people, which means you send out letters, you put posting of a big sign on the property, and you publish it in the paper. So there's three ways that we try to locate people and notify people in an area like that. Now, you know, there's just so much that you can do to notify people.
Ms. Whitaker, I, I, so, seriously, may I speak, I just want to call her on this. And anytime council wants to hear from anybody in the audience, let them know, we'll bring them to the podium. What, well, there's.
How is it, Sonny, can I, just a minute? Look at the, uh, I guess, on the property records, you know, it shows the owner of the property, you know, the address and, and the, where it says the property owner, does that, or does the property owner give that, they just give the, uh?
Most of the time it'll tell me that, you know, Mr. McCrann's on the property at, at, you know, at, uh, Holman, at such and such, uh, Houston, for example. Well, here, well, I'm here that, uh, uh, I'm trying to take you here, uh, Ms. Linda Seaton, uh, she has two addresses on Houston, one oh three and one hundred. Will let her go out there, but those are for rental people. Well, I don't know what happens to there, so that, therefore, the, that's the reason for the posting and the publishing.
Which is rental around.
Like I said, I sent out seven, I, I draw a circle, and I sent out seventeen letters, uh, out of those seventeen, I have ten rental, uh, which includes, uh, uh, one, uh, one apartment and two duplexes. The rest of ours, you know, are single homes that are rental.
This guy is also here. Are you okay? We'll let the man, please, speak, yes, ma'am, go come to the podium.
Oh, well, I was just gonna show you all.
If you would, just state your name for me, I'll just.
Oh, great.
I'll be back with that.
Oh, wait, yeah, well, I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Fourteen forty-five, this is a couple of minutes. I just want to tell you, it says right here, on one oh four West Gary, it gives a mailing address and it gives my address. I did not get a letter at either the one oh four Gary or my home address. If you're gonna draw a radius map, as I understand it, the correct way to draw a radius map is from the property line, the property edge. My property is well within three hundred feet from that property line. He did it twice and I never got an address, never.
So, did you live there up on that Gary Street? That's a rental property?
Gary Street is a, is a home that's in a family trust that I've been working on to renovate for the past two years. If you have looked at that property before, you would see that's a huge change. I'm into renovating and making that area nice, all that, neighbors have thanked me because of the job that I have done in creating a better neighborhood for them.
So how were you notified, how did you know to come to the first planning commission?
I was blindsided when I just happened to go to a planning commission meeting because of the main street property that's involved in this. I just decided I was gonna show up at all the planning commission meetings and all the council meetings. I just happened to show up just to listen, and lo and behold, they're talking about a property being, uh, what, forty-five duplex on that particular property, I was not noticed, no signs were posted, none of the neighbors were noticed because the next, very next day, I went and I talked to all the neighbors. Nobody had been noticed, nobody had seen a sign yet.
I'm sorry, there had been a variance, at least.
There were both, Dominique and Barry, you know, those signs are placed on their property.
That was after the first commission meeting, but when I first found out that I was going to have an issue with this property, that was after, the very next day after that planning commission meeting, I went and talked to all the neighbors, nobody knew a darn thing about it, yet he got up and said, planning commission meeting, that there was no problem, there was no comment from the community. Well, there shouldn't be because nobody knew about it. Then after that meeting, then he decided he'd sort of put the two signs up and notice people, and he still didn't notify all the people who are three hundred feet from the radius of that property. He says he did, but it was not done. I'm just saying, let's follow the rules, what ordinance are there for a reason, I would appreciate it if they were done following.
Let me just say, let me ask you a question, if you did, and, and I don't follow Mr. Bell around, I'll go to his office to check to see where he mailed any letters, but if there was a letter that was sent to this rental property, is it possible somebody helped themselves to mail it, you know, if there's no renter there?
It should have gone to, or home addresses.
I understand, but, but there's an option of two addresses, I understand you have, I, I understand. I'm just saying, there's certainly flaws in mailing anything, absolutely, anything can happen, I'm not saying it did, but that's a possibility.
Anything's possible.
I just, just wanted to make, but the point is now, obviously, that you are aware and you're here to discuss it and bring forward your issues, and that's, that's the most important thing, that you know it now, so. And we, we can work, you know, we can work on our, uh, process of note time, for sure. And I, there was another lady, well, aware too, across the street, that lives there, on Corning, I don't think.
She was not known to me.
She said she didn't get any letters.
I only got one letter back.
Okay.
And that was from a man who lives down in the other area, his grandfather lives in that house. But he knew about it, cause I tracked it down and talked.
I did, I did, I got married down to seventy, like.
Okay, yes, ma'am, sucker.
At least I'm not here, back and back to sewer. My boy, there's six hundred houses in Greenwood that didn't have sewer.
Yes, ma'am, would you state your name and address?
Oh, Linda Safford, I figured you were by the.
We do, but it has to be on record. Thank you.
And your address?
Your address.
Uh, twenty-seven oh four Indian Water Drive, out of Shadow Lake, but I have ten houses in Greenwood.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Uh, I have, at one oh three, West, uh, West Houston is right behind where they're wearing three of those duplexes. And I have, I have real good renters, I have one other, one hundred West Houston, one oh three West Houston, and a house right behind me is being renovated because it's really a rental property, but the people there. Some of them are old, like me, and they look like they have a real neighborhood, not a, uh, I'm sorry, I've had stroke, so.
You're fine, thank you, ma'am.
I don't want, I don't want, eight, eight families, two, four, four families live right there on that one lot. And that, the setbacks cannot be five and a half feet as we do with the, the, uh, uh, fire department. It's my understanding that it's supposed to be seven and a half feet setbacks. So the fire department, if they have a fire, they can come in and they can put the fire out. But, now, the other thing, there are so many kids walk up and down that street, going up there, over the hill, and all the neighbors, I mean, the traffic that's gonna be ended up and just to be there, it's, it's gonna be very dangerous for the kids. He said that he would put in a sidewalk on his property, going about all the way down. We were, they suggested at the planning commission that we talk to the city and get the city to run sidewalks all the way down to, down to the school, but that would be sometime later, a kid could be run over because there's fast traffic down through Gary anyway, and they should be putting in the stop sign, that will help, that will start slowing down a little bit. I, another thing, I think that when you put those duplexes in there, they'll be nice while they're right there, you know, new. But that, uh, my value of my property will be devalued because, and, because it'd be like putting one out for your house, or your house. So what it, what it'd do to your property if that happened. So why, why is it that we're gonna have to have variance or let them build whatever they want to? I, I, I'm just struggling, I guess, what else? Oh, my brother-in-law owned that house, that brown log house, owned the lot there. And when, when he was still there, he came to the, to the planning commission, or somebody who lived there, they, and he said, I'd like to build a duplex over there. He owns all the property there. No, they wouldn't let him out, said, no, you don't have the variance, you don't have enough property there to put the variance in there like seven and a half feet. So they turned him down, all the stuff, we're gonna change things.
Is that what you're referring to there, was the gentleman here earlier, is, is he your renter?
No.
No?
He owns the house, that, that log house, he owns the house right there, so my, my rental property, at one oh three West Houston.
Okay, okay.
And I have not been able to.
I didn't know, I thought you were talking about the same place.
Mrs. Safford, where's your, when, when did your brother request that, how long ago was that?
Probably fifteen years ago.
I see.
And if they want to rent, if they want to make things better, why don't we buy some of these houses that need to be renovated? I've renovated, I don't know how many houses, I've upgraded my house, the house right behind, the, the house there, the log house. You know, come over and look at that house, being happy to show it to you, it's a nice house. And if anybody in the, in the, in the street department knows we cut, that's sad, if we clean off lot lots, and the street department's been nice enough to pick up the crap that we put, cut out, well, that's why it was. But we've renovated, I have no, a, a number of houses in Greenwood. So, you know, if you stop, watch your junk like that one oh one's on, I don't know who lives there, they don't have any idea. But if they wanna hit the roof on it, they'll, 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 you know, they'll. But I screw up all the people living there, and even one of my, one of my neighbors has been there six years. He's an older gentleman. But anyway, that's my stuff.
Thank you.
I have, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The both of you are supposed, you know, we've got, we have these regulations, subdivision regulations, building regulations, all the stuff that Sonny's talking about. If, if somebody walked in here with a proposal to build a duplex on that property that met all of the subdivision, all of our regulations, setback lines, all of them, are you okay with that?
No.
Why not?
Because it's a neighborhood, it's a family neighborhood, it should be single family.
Individuals.
Dwelds, thank you.
I don't believe that we should be flopping duplexes in the middle of single family dwellings. As some of the pictures show, the ones on Clinic Street and Clinic Lane over by Almer, those are fairly new. They're, they're nice, and I believe that's the proper place and proper way to put up duplexes. They're, 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 there's twenty-five foot streets, and they're, they're not like ten or eleven feet, they're, they're, they've got, they're all nice, they're, they're, um, got lots of room in between them, they all have garages, so you don't have to look at a bunch of cars that mull over the place. When they pull out, they've got their own street, and they're real close to Center Street, so they're not driving around and all that out of traffic in the single family neighborhoods that are already set up, as they would be in our neighborhood here. Um, and the ones that are out, the ones that are out over there off of Ware are gonna be nice because there's one long road, they already got it laid out on those side, all those are gonna be duplexes, as I understand, and none of that traffic is going through the single family homes that are right there, and they come right out onto, hey, whatever.
Ma'am, but I make the point that you've got two duplexes a half block from your house on Gary Street.
Yes, I know that.
Already there, already there, there's a parking complex within that area, and so, you know, you're saying that you shouldn't have duplexes, and there, there aren't any there.
Yes, I know.
Houston Street.
The garage issue too, and I may, I may just chime in, the garage issue, you know, we can't force a garage, and, and many homes in that area are car-pored, which, which my house is car-pored.
Correct.
So, when you say you don't want something without a garage.
This is what I'm talking about, what is planning for, this is what planning for the future is.
Did you hear what I said?
I heard what you said.
So, a garage is not a good reason.
It would be eventual, this is what I'm talking about with a plan.
Well, that would be, the city would go in and start restricting, requiring everybody that they were gonna close in their car.
That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying a plan, well, when someone comes in and puts new property, new, don't, new build, that they have to put a garage there, you will eventually get there, but it won't be overnight, but there's a plan for the neighborhood. It, that, I, I would like to see a plan for sidewalks, a plan for widening of, the, the house, that's what, whatever it is.
Widening, widening of those streets, like, there are many streets in town that need widened desperately, your, your side street, not Gary, certainly, not, and Houston's narrow, but this is, is about like one of our city trails, and we go up there, but widening those, you're talking about taking people's front yard, and that would create quite an issue, so.
Well, that street, you know, maybe an anomaly, but I'm saying, the reason, I'm saying the reason why I don't feel that duplexes have their place in the city, I just don't feel that they have their place in the middle of our neighborhood. Yes, I am well aware, and I have, it's been brought to my attention, that there are two on the next block from me, which I didn't even know were there, and I don't drive down that street, I only, and it's, you know, I concentrate my efforts on fixing my house, on the corner, so I don't drive down there. But, and had I known that they were gonna be down there, and they're, they were gonna do this rezoning, I would have been here. Cause I don't feel that where the duplex would be.
But you are here, that's, that's important, Martha, you're here.
That's important for me, and I think it's important for a lot of the other neighbors, and as she says, they are older, they don't wanna get involved in this.
I can, I can explain, you know, what, what I can't get my mind around though is, to your point, the two duplexes right down the road from you, on Gary Street. Two people living in those duplexes, I mean, we've not had any problem with that, there's, I, I think that you could build a duplex that's nice in any neighborhood, I mean, there's duplexes that you can't tell are duplexes sometimes, when you look at them, you know, and, I don't. And I can't make one that, you know what I mean? But I, I don't like to jump to the conclusion that because it's a duplex, there's going to be a lot of cars and there's going to be a lot of trash and there's, nobody's going to mow the yard and this is going to be terrible. That's, that could be the case with any house. I mean, the house in one corner, right across from this lot, I mean, that's, it's not a nice place. You know, I mean, that, that could be the case, that's single-family up to an apartment building, that the people that live there might not take care of it. We can't control who lives in any of these properties anywhere in town, single-family or otherwise.
No, we don't take care of them, but, but nobody makes the landlords be responsible for the trashy houses that are around when they should be by ordinance made to take care of their property. So we don't have this problem and people are trying to say, "Well, we want to get rid of this because it's a trashy house." The landlords are the ones responsible for that, and if the renters aren't going to take care of it, they may need to be responsible and take care of it from the top.
And we do have authorities in place and we constantly bring his office, send letters and, and deals with it and the chief of police knows with it. We, he visits those homes on occasion to say, "You have to point that, well, this goes to court." We have that in place.
Can you say that?
It's a hard thing to do every day.
I'm going to buy this lot and build a three-story apartment complex on it. I can, I can fully understand that everybody go, "Boy, nah, let's don't put that right there." Please let's don't build that in this neighborhood. We can fix here. I, I mean, that's understandable to me, but, you know, I, I don't know. I, I guess I see two sides.
You don't have to say anyone's sitting there.
I must say one other thing. I did not get a letter. I looked into both my neighbors' shop and I, I knew that, that's my neighbor. And I went and got to both my neighbors. I said, "Did I get a letter over there?" "No, you didn't. You, you know why I gave it to you." Went to both of them and neither one of them got a letter. And then because they hadn't got it, if they'd done it in the mailbox, it went back to the post office. Post office would send it right back to me last week.
That's correct. And, and I think some has been kind of like going up and returning. And I will add, I'll, I will definitely say that we need to update or maybe somehow get a better response, whether it's a certified mail. I don't know what the answer is, but certainly there's some...
When you guys think about this, just think about if you won't want a neighborhood. Is there any, I mean, if you're watching the neighborhood, maybe we can go over there and put, put in some duplexes. I don't think you'd like it.
Well, the problem is, is that some of these people don't live in that kind of neighborhood we're stepping on. And if you go by that area, which we're talking about, there are little roads where they're adding eight-floor cars on one little property with all these kids and there's, it's just a whole...
It's a duplex. Are there eight cars or eight cars?
No, the diagram that was given the very first night.
Like any, any driveway, driveways have the ability to hold four cars.
I understand. Your drawing shows four each.
Talking about four bedrooms. Now granted, they could all have new parts of these.
Or more.
But we can't control that either.
Four apartments, a box per bedroom.
Yeah, right. It's basically, that doesn't mean you're requiring that...
Every new house in, in Greenwood has a driveway with four cars.
Counsel. Thoughts?
I don't, I don't know. I'm pulling somebody in directions. I don't even know which way to go.
First of all, I don't, what is this?
That is a renovation of the duplex that he wants to build on that property.
Twenty-sixth Street, Fort Smith.
Mr. Brown is here. He's wanting to set up a microphone, Mr. Brown.
And also, clarification on that lot too. There, it's actually two lots. It's Lot Nine and Ten. So there are two lots here. It's one, you can see by the map, that's a elongated parcel. That is actually two lots here.
That's because the old, old cities had fifty-foot lots. So some of us bought, some of us bought two.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, Mr. Bill or Mr. Brown?
I was just thinking that.
Damon.
Damon Brown, Damon Brown, nine forty-four West Center. Basically, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the duplex. Uh, I don't know if any of you have seen them. I think some of you may have what I've built so far. Um, but on Dogwood Street and Cedar Street, I had this exact same, this has been about a year and a half ago, but we had this exact same discussion. Had several people come up and say, "And we don't want crackheads." I mean, literally the one lady said, "We don't want crackheads to be in our neighborhood." Um, those people, two of them, not every one of them, two of them have thanked me for building there. And one of them, I was actually a little surprised because he's, he's pretty hard-nosed. Um, but everything we build is very nice. If you haven't seen them, you need to go buy them again. There's...
What you're proposing to put on this is if the same is what's on top of them?
It's the same as the ones that we're building currently on Dogwood. They'll be finished this week, literally this week.
Across the street from your lot?
Across the street from the, the three beds. These are two beds, two baths. Those, the, the original ones that I built were three bed, two bath. Uh, it's granite, everything. It's nice, L V P floors. It's all bronze fixtures. It's, it's a super nice house.
Can I ask you a question? What's the rent? I don't know your problem.
The rent on the three beds are nine fifty a month, which I've had one hundred percent occupancy until last month, which was kind of a fluke. All four of them moved out at once. I've already rented three of them back. I've got one left, which I've got to get in the net tomorrow. Um, and then I expect the two-bed two-bath will be eight fifty a month. So we readied out the, for lack of a better term, crackheads with the, the rents immediately. Um, these will cost, and I know exactly what they cost, and I'm just now finishing two of them. Uh, they cost about a hundred fifty grand piece to build. I have to ask for the high rents because they cost a lot of money to build. Uh, I get the high rents because everyone wants to move to Greenwood. Um, I'm not making any money off these in fifteen years. I hope I will. It's kind of a retirement plan, but, um, they are nice. They will be nice. And every house over there will benefit from these being there, especially the one across the street. And hopefully, my plan is, I've got a couple of those over there that I'm in process and talked with, not exactly there, but of getting a few of those renovated. I don't, I don't disagree with some of our comments. We'll, we'll either fix what's there, but I've got some empty lots that I can try and acquire at the same time. But these will be very nice. These will be very nice. And I, and I encourage you, if you want my card after the, after the meeting, I'll, I'll show you what we've got. They're, they're beautiful. I think so, anyway.
Mr. Brown, do you maintain your purpose?
I have a contract with, uh, Tommy Buckton. You guys know Buckton? He does, uh, all my modeling. I, I take, I don't, I don't, they're not going to mold. It's not going to happen. So I mold everything. I have everything molded. I have everything leaded. I have everything gathered myself.
And Sonny, is there a drainage plan that's associated with this?
No, but, uh, when, when they start moving earth, then it would be kind of creating ordinance of ours and so it would be head-taking to make sure that the, the water didn't create a problem down stream.
I want to talk more about that in council forum as well. That doesn't have anything to do with this. I also want to talk about this picture in council forum, right there on Cedar. I want to be built that one on Cedar.
That is a good point.
Okay. In council forum, I want to talk about that. I mean, the issue here is rezoning and I don't want to muddy it with, I've actually got three things that have been brought up. And I want to talk about them in council forum on my fourth point. I've got three things I want to talk about.
Well, I guess, I mean, you can pin conjunction with the rezoning, what? And I guess I probably ought to know this, as far as what the city gains from renters versus putting in, just building a house here with a single-family dwelling, as far as taxes go, property and otherwise.
I, I think one point, and, uh, it's, I don't know if you guys know this guy. His name's Michael Scott. He lives in Greenwood. He graduated from law. They're moving to Fort Smith. His, his kid, they were moving to Fort Smith. His kids both go to school in Fort Smith, both of them working in Fort Smith. He's lying maybe tomorrow to rent this one, uh, this fourth one. Um, they were moving to Fort Smith. He had to convince his wife to stay in Greenwood. So to that point, people want to live in Greenwood and still travel back and forth to Fort Smith.
Well, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying as far as, well, you get property taxes, whatever the city gets from a tax cut versus burden on the sewer, water versus tax, I mean...
Sales tax, franchise fees are big for us.
You get water sear tax, you get building permit, you get, uh, sales tax spent in, in town, you know.
But I'm saying if there's a, if there's a multi-family dwelling here or duplex, is are we going to reap the same benefit per se as a whole?
At the municipal, they were talking about the way the tax structure is in Arkansas, Montana. They said ideally, the way Arkansas is structured, it would almost be better for cities to build a skyscraper two hundred feet up and be surrounded by retail.
Correct.
And sprawl, people just don't really make a lot of money off the sprawl. You know, going out and everybody having five-acre lots is really kind of the worst scenario for Arkansas cities, the way our tax structure is set up.
Well, I'm just saying, do you disagree with that?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be great off when that, and a, a single-family resident would go, you know, the taxes are the same. I think, you know, Brown had paid taxes on it every year, uh, like I said.
Well, I guess the, the...
The...
If that's true...
School is the opposite.
Yeah, but...
The schools actually...
So I think the answer is, if, if what you said is, it is true, what the municipal says, that you're putting people, more people in a very concentration area, then I think the answer would be, would be you're getting more things with the, with having more families possibly living on where if somebody built one house or two, I think, I'm, I'm not...
I'm just wondering.
I'm not betting that.
Does every, they bought the town, is if you want to go there.
And I know that we're, I, I know why you're asking, but I'm not, I mean, I don't think you're even suggesting that we're going to just decide on how much money we can get to make happen. But I know what you, why you're asking.
And part of the problem with that is do people want to live in that?
Yeah.
I mean, ideally, we make more money by higher concentration, lower density. The school actually makes more money just property being built and improved and being more valuable.
Well, then...
But do people want to live in that high concentration, which is why we have people here complaining?
And there are those that do. You take Chappy Crossing. What is that called up there? That's the, I call it Little Greenwood because it's a little dirt. Uh, in those areas that they're living above, literally above the retail, commercial retail. And that's a big deal. Some people would be able to do that, not just go downstairs.
And actually...
Get a address.
Where is it?
Chappy Crossing. Crossing the Ostwood Path, they're called.
The millennials are changing. They kind of like that kind of stuff.
Right. And that's the difference. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just going to say to the point you were just talking about. Yeah, some people like to live where they're close to shopping and all that, and all they have to do is walk. And I understand that, and as I said before, we are not built and built. We're not a big city. We're not even Chappy. That's great that they have that out in Chappy. They may not look at it all, walk through all the little cottages. They're great. But for that area, there's a place for everything. And I just don't feel that the way we're structuring all these duplexes is the proper way to do it for the future.
Well, I guess I was just wondering too, on, you're saying the duplexes, that, the duplex that would be built would be one of, like, around a hundred fifty thousand. And a, a single-family home, if it were to be built there, would be, would run probably...
About the same.
About the same.
Uh, I mean, you've got square footage.
I don't know. I have, I'm going to round my bracket on that because it's, it's, you've got square footage, but you've got two kitchens, two, two of everything in there. So the cost of square footage would be...
It'd be similar. It'd be very similar.
There would be two duplexes on this area? Don't know yet. Is that the proposal?
The possibility of putting duplexes on there is, it is a possibility. If it'll fit, that's the key. And Mr. Brown and I are going to sit down tomorrow. We're going to look at this. We're going to lay it out on the, on the parcel and see, you know, if it'll fit. One of them might be turned towards Houston. The other might be turned towards Coeur d'Alene. We don't know at this point. We're just asking for a reason.
Well, personally, that's going to determine whether I'm for or against a reason, what's going on there.
Well, I can tell you that. I mean, like...
Well, I can't tell you a reason for it, but...
Okay. I mean, I'm just asking for a reason.
Well, I guess on, on this elevation here that you're, you know, you're looking at, to me, it just shows that it's one duplex. But you're, you're saying there, there'll be two of these on that lot.
What we're looking at is either two duplexes or two cottage homes, which would both fit, either or would fit in the R five zoning requirements.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's why we're just asking for a zoning at this point.
I, I'm, I'm a little bit like Tim in this, that I don't have a problem with the R five rezon. What scares me is that, you know, we're going to fit these in, we're going to get this variance. It's going to go to the planning commission. They're going to approve some variance and then we're, we're going to be the ones in a room full of people the following month.
Damon, you approved that R five zoning with those, with the setbacks set in there, with the yard, the lawn, with the frontage, with the setbacks, with front, rear setbacks. You approved them. That's already been approved. That zoning has been approved. We're asking to change this lot to that zoning. And then that gives us the ability with Mr. Brown to say, "Look, we can do this or we can make a duplex on the cottage home."
But I thought if we, okay, they're going to clear. If we said, "Okay, we're R five." There was a discussion of going back to this variance setback. If this is R five, you still have that problem, right?
Not necessarily. We don't know yet. Yes.
Are the setbacks different on R five, I guess?
Yes, yes, they, they are. Uh, R five can even go into a zero-lot lot, just like the cottage homes that we approved over off of, uh, Old Hackett Road. Those are, have got less of a, uh, side yard setback than, than other homes because it fits in that R five zoning.
Which is okay if you're the guy with the R five, but not if you're the guy with the R one next to it.
Well, if you look at the, the map there of the homes in that area, there's a whole lot of those homes there that don't have five-foot setbacks in them right now. I mean, it, it's not like it's going to be something different than, than everything else. Now, if, if it's a five-foot setback next to another five-foot setback, they wouldn't approve that. If it's a five-foot setback and the other house is over on this side of the lot, that would probably pass. That's what we're looking at.
Didn't you tell me last meeting that the setback from that log house is only ten feet from the property line last meeting?
Mr. Reynolds, he's asking you a question.
Pardon?
I said, "Didn't you tell me at the last planning commission meeting that the, the property, the log cabin was three feet from the property line?"
No, there's a driveway. There's a driveway, between this property and the, the log house, there is a, a setback and a driveway and then the house. Have a little storage room there. That's, that's not an issue because it's going to be gone.
Yeah, on, on, uh, on the videos that my brother drew, actually, part of that really going up to the, back down is actually on that property.
That's a high possibility that that might all have been in old Greenwood.
Yeah, that's on Main Street.
Just as a clarification on the Harland R five stuff, the, number one, I don't need the variance. I can completely withdraw the variance. I only asked for the variance so that I could extend the driveway into the, the lot and then get deeper. It's plenty deep without the variance. I was just going to add two and a half foot more concrete so that we would have the driveways a little bit deeper and cars would be that much further off of the road. I don't, I don't have to have it. It's just going to be a nice city.
That was one of the lengths that they were concerned about with the planning commission, that the car could be parked too close to Coopers Creek. Well, the Brown's and Lambo, they...
I can give it in. The second thing was, is if we split this into two, just as an example, R five, the minimum lot requirement's five thousand square feet, which is pretty small. These, if we split them up, will be seventy-five hundred feet apiece. I think the R one minimum is nine thousand. So these are, these are well above the five thousand minimum for the R five splitting. To, to talk to your hesitancy of splitting it into two, it's well above the five thousand minimum. It's at seventy-five hundred. It's almost to, to the R one. I think it's at the R two, but it's well above the R five, of course, with square footers, the lot required square footers. So, yeah, it still has to fit on there, but...
Son, Sonny, let me ask you this. As a matter of, of practice, it, it seems to me, and I don't know, that, that signifies how it used to work. I mean, it is, you know, even tonight, and then, and then when this came up a few months ago, it, it felt to me like everybody walked in and, and knew a bunch of stuff and we didn't go hear anything about, you know, like tonight. But when we, when we... But when we when we do these rezones, it seems like it would be a whole lot better discussion if you could walk in here and say, here's the lot. We want to rezone it to this because of this. This is what we're going to do. Whether that's commercial, whatever. And I get it that sometimes people say, well, I don't know if I want to buy the lot or I can't go get the financing or whatever. But you don't understand what I'm saying. If you could walk in here and say, we want to rezone this lot and put this on it. Well, then we could decide whether we like this or not.
But that's like me coming in and saying, I I would like to have this piece of property rezoned to commercial because it's on Ten Spur. And you say, where are you gonna put it? Well, I don't know, but it is is designed for commercial. People are interested in it as a commercial piece of property.
But I don't think we should go through the practice of rezoning it until we know what they're gonna do with it.
So you say you'll leave the property as R one on Ten Spur until somebody says, I'm gonna buy it.
Why not?
Because it's hard for me to try to sell somebody to do that. It's like me trying to sell tractor supply of that piece of property as an R one.
But if I I mean, I don't think that you would even just say tractor supply. And I remember that all the way down, but if you were gonna go out there like the Waffle House, for example, they're gonna go build this Waffle House. Well, they should have had, I mean, obviously, they came to you and said, Sonny, we're gonna take this lot around here and we're gonna build a Waffle House on it, you know, blah, 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 blah. Here's all the dimensions. You look at all this and say, that's great. Everything will fit. You can do exactly what you want to do. One technicality, it's zoned R one. We need to go get it rezoned to commercial. That's not a big deal, right? We come in here and say, Waffle House wants to buy this lot and here's what they're gonna build. Jamie Brown wants to buy this lot. Here's what he's going to build. We've looked at it. Planning commission's looked at it. We all agree that it fits on the lot.
But here's how it works. Waffle House and both Casey's both said, what we want to come to Greenwood. What commercial properties do you have available? And in Casey's uh example, I said, they told me what they needed. I said, there are two lots there owned by two different people. That if you want to go there, you have to deal with these two people. It is on commercial. It's ready to go. Water sewer, everything's there. So they dealt with the two people bought the property. Waffle House did the same thing. Where where's your commercial property?
Well, and that makes sense, but you know what I'm saying? Wouldn't that ease everybody's concerns to a large degree?
But that's like saying somebody, you know, I wanna I wanna you to rezone this property to R one. You say, well, what kind of house are you gonna build it? Well, you know, if it if it fits the the zoning and if it fits our building standards, then it they somebody should be able to build that house without me coming in here and saying, here's the house I'm gonna put on this property. I mean, that.
If if it's something that way in your building.
The apartment's for. That's what the building department's for. That's what the planning commission's for.
But if it's already zoned that way and that's what you're building, I completely agree. We've got all these regulations. It's R one. You're gonna build a single family dwelling. If you need all these requirements, we got no say so in it. We've already said.
But that's what the planning commission is is was designed for is to do this and then come up with a with their approval and then forward it to you. And and they did all the labor, which they did. And in this case, and all they're act all they're asking for is a zoning approval. They're not asking for any variances. They're not asking anything else. It 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 will have to tip the puzzle before it's built.
I'm not a big fan of cottage houses personally. I just do see a duplex and some little big house. That'd be at my home.
Yeah, and and that's, you know, that's.
And they can be built with this R five.
That's part of the thing.
Yeah, that's.
There is a lot of, I mean, there is a lot to what you're asking about and what you're pointing out of it, Mr. Daniel, is that we've got you've got a parks commission in place that 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 you say to them, here's your funds and and then they decide what the parks commission's in charge of that. And then and on occasion, and actually he's not here, they typically come back and make you aware of what you give them the responsibility to do. And this planning commission, and believe me, I can do it, but it's most of it. I don't think the planning commission works extremely hard on it here just to to one, but that is in place for them to take care of that that micro managing part of it and then bring it back to you. I I might not kind of get what you're saying on.
But I feel like in this case, there's we're not there yet. I mean, because this started out with, we may build two, we might build one and we.
They gotta come back.
We need a variance.
They gotta come back. That commit that that commission has not approved his because they don't they haven't seen it yet.
If there are any variances required, they won't have to come back.
Mr. McKinney is very good.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know. I'm not bragging on purpose too much, but and he is. He's good at being on that position and he's very clear to anybody that comes before them that everything that they decide, whether it's the planning commission or the what's the board of adjustment, that will go back to you guys.
We used to get these things years ago where they came in here and they said, this is what they want to build. The planning commission has looked at it. The board of adjustments has looked at it.
No, but they.
This is the this is the variance they're asking for.
But that was.
Or there are no variances or whatever.
But that was for subdivisions or minor subdivisions, Daniel. They didn't do it on an individual basis like that. They they can come in here and and tell you that Mrs. Jones is gonna build a house up here on this piece of property. She wants to rezone to R one and and here's what it's gonna look like. I mean, that that.
Anytime we rezoned, they did.
What? They did. They not necessarily what they were going to build on there. I mean, we've rezoned this property out here on on Ten Spur uh there by the uh past the apartments for for an R five. And there there wasn't any plans on that. There was a there was a concept. The guy said, I want to build several duplexes on here. And here's a concept of what it's what it might look like. It didn't come in there with any any plaque or anything else. It was rezoned and they were they were ready to go. Now, it's it's still sitting out there. They hadn't started anything on it yet. We rezoned the the property behind uh uh Keith Glass up there uh for for a church. We didn't sit. We haven't seen any.
But you see the, I mean, you see where I'm talking about. I mean, the point I'm trying to make is the whole the whole point of the what's spurred all of this conversation in question is the unknown of what are what are we going to do?
Well, what started the conversation is that that the people that came up here tonight don't want a duplex in that area, period.
That's right.
Period. Say, whether whether it's all brick, whether it's, you know, two story, whether the the other night uh Robert McKinney says, you know, would you go go for a single family home with so many square feet? Yeah, well, this is the same square footage that you're looking at on a single family home. So, you know, so that's the difference in that lot. What I'm is a single family home are as opposed to a duplex surrounded by rental homes.
Oh, I get that. I just. Yeah. Going surface now.
I mean, look look at the success we had over on Dogwood and Cedar. Same thing happened. We rezoned it. We built the duplexes. They are an asset to Greenwood.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown, it's your Jamie Brown, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Are you related to Bobby Brown?
I'm not. And I usually preface my last name by saying I'm not related to any of the Browns. My dad is Gary Brown. Of course, uh he lives in Greenwood.
No family guy?
Nope, Richard.
Richard, yeah.
Richard Brown. My dad's Gary Brown.
Richard. Bobby Brown is a different builder.
Not me.
Okay. He goes he goes as a brownstone construction.
Nope, brownstone is me.
Brownstone is you?
Yeah, that is me. Allen Allen Center, across from McDonald's.
Across from McDonald's?
It used to be a house.
And you see what he did with the house there too.
Used to be a.
Yeah, it was a counter.
But you don't have a guy works for you named Bobby Brown?
Bobby Walder.
Bobby Walder?
Bobby Walder works for me. He's the only he's my only employee.
Is he claiming to be his son? Bobby claiming to be his son?
I don't know. I'm just I'm just trying to to I'm just making sure I didn't have a conflict as or accuse myself. You just build and take Cole's house.
Yeah, that would make sense. Beautiful house, actually.
I need to recuse myself on this. All of a sudden, I'm a. Bobby Walder?
Bobby Walder.
He's got that. He does have an accent.
Anything further from council or questions or comments or or public input?
How is this property built by? Gosh, uh hey, see, I went back as far as the county records show and it didn't show a structure being on there, but I'm not sure. I'm really not sure. It's been a while, but like the secretary said, it twenty years ago, her brother-in-law or somebody was wanting so duplexes on there. So I think it was it might have been in for them, but I don't know.
I don't think anything's ever been on there.
That was all of my dogwood houses. It it sat there for the I I literally got a plaque from Rexy from eighteen ninety four. It never stood.
And then one of them was torn out again.
One of them's going.
Let me let me kind of sum up a little bit by just saying, and I'm not here to make out of promises. One, the four-way stock is is gonna happen regardless of Mr. Brown builds anything on this. This has been pointed out to me that that's an issue, not because of what he's thinking about doing, because it's already an issue. So when those issues come to my attention, I get to choose whether we put a four-way stock or not. They don't they're not always popular. I had one placed on uh Mount uh Old Hackett Road that first went up and was not really popular, but we've not heard of it since. And my office tends to believe that when you don't hear from anybody, everybody's pretty much okay because you're gonna hear it if they're not if they're not happy. So that four-way stock is gonna happen irregardless. The sidewalk, if he was to if he were to build, whatever he would build, and Mr. Powell touched on it, that it would initiate. This is not a flat out promise, but it's it kind of is. He if if he built a section of sidewalk in front of his either side, either on Houston or um Coker, I think, that goes nowhere because he's not gonna pour all the way to Main Street or all the way to Gary Street. I mean, why should he? The city within, that's an initiation or something that's for me to look at. You know, it only makes sense now to try to get easements and or right of ways from the people that live. And I think you have some property on down Houston or up and east in main, and I would be all about coming back to the council and saying, I've got a spot now to spend a portion of that seventy thousand dollars that's in the sidewalk fund to extend that. So some good things could happen due to a section of sidewalk. And that's all over town. I mean, if somebody if somebody builds it, it just makes sense for the city to come along and add to it if we can with the money that we have. Or or if they pay in lieu of, it goes into the kitty and then later on we can look back and see if we can do that anyway. So there's a couple of things that not gonna change your mind by any means. I don't expect they do, but at least it's something that would could happen that would be possible. There's been a lot of good discussion. I appreciate you both ladies coming for sure. And you're always you can come back and talk about syrup anytime you want. Which you will eventually, but.
Oh, I will.
And and the other thing that I was gonna say, I think is probably more important than any of this, is the fact that if this is agreed to do, to be allowed to do, whether it's a variance or not a variance, I appreciate the fact that a variance is only requested because of moving moving these things back. I mean, he doesn't have to do that, as he stated. That's that's to me pretty good pretty good practice of a builder that doesn't necessarily have to spend that much more concrete to make it safer on that street, Coker Street. Uh the drainage issue, what I want to touch on, because I know that's an issue for you, because it should be. You're you're kind of downhill. You're angled that that way. You've got this huge ditch that I was not aware that you came to the city. I hope that wasn't when I was in office because I don't know about anybody telling you no. I've never said anybody, no, we're not helping you with drainage. And I'll just stick to that absolutely. Because if there's a drainage issue, we can fix it. What do we do?
We fix it.
We fix it. Yeah, I so there would be a drainage, and I think it was asked already by Mr. Micker or somebody, that if this was to proceed, single dwelling, double duplex, whatever it is, we, the city, are going to take it very serious that we do that he doesn't get to build anything that damages or or for every action, every action, right? So we're gonna make sure that this the study's done on it, the drainage issue is studied. And to me, I've been over there myself. I wanted to see exactly. I I didn't get out of my car, but I pulled in where a driveway could be. And I'm looking at the same not kept house across the street of Coker. Uh but I'm looking, I'm thinking, well, a lot of this, I'm not an engineer by any means, but a lot of this water is gonna should be going down Coker just right down the ditch that's already there, which by the way is not deep enough. He builds this. I'm I'm now initiating for him to go over there and and clean the rest of that ditch out to get that water going down toward Gary Street. Where is it supposed to go?
In front of my house.
Well, yeah, yes, ma'am. You have to have water somewhere either behind or in front of you. That's called drainage.
Do you ever talk about putting tubes in, drainage drain tubes?
Sure, that's what I'm talking about. But no, we can't. No, no, we cannot fill every ditch in the city of Greenwood with what you're calling a tube. It's it's financially un.
Not every ditch has flooding issues either.
I just said that would be a study done. We would make sure the water is directed in the right direction. If it ends up going to Gary and and hanging a left, if that's out of design, it would certainly go in front of your rental house. But it would not. And if ever it became an issue that would flood your house, you call City Hall and we can get out there and try to take care of it. Have you had drainage issues? I mean, does that house does that house that you're repaying? You're doing a wonderful job. I drove by there and there was some people doing painting and all kinds. It's gonna look awesome when you get through with it. I appreciate the fact that you're. I live in a hundred year old house myself on Bass. So but have you been, has that house been underwater?
It hasn't been underwater, but I've got water coming from the back to uh.
But you have a you have a good four to five foot deep ditch back there behind you. At the back of your property is a very deep ditch, deep ditch. I don't.
This deep because I couldn't go any deeper because the city's got a pipe under there.
Well.
I dug it myself just to help keep water. And then I put a bunch of bricks and blocks.
I'm talking about it the very back of the property line. Is that right? That's kind of me.
Yeah, on the side maybe.
Side possibly, but.
Yeah, like by.
Okay, there's there's an abandoned home. What's the street besides you?
It's at that that's Bash.
It is Bash. There's an abandoned home that I didn't even know was there.
Yeah, I know.
Who?
Rush.
Yes, so I went up there and I went in on get in it to get out. Went around that house and thinking, well, Sonny immediately answered, this needs to be taken care of. I don't do loans, but this needs to be taken care of. Things are already on it. Uh related, but so that water is, you know, everything has to go somewhere. But I can I will promise you this. If he was to be allowed to build or anybody else in your area, we're not gonna let him build knowing that the water's gonna make a dead beeline to flood your house. Now, it may come down and hit your ditch. That's what you have to have. That's what they did.
The ditch, that's fine.
Yeah, but I mean, that's but just to say immediately that it was gonna cause you damp, that kind of was a drainage issue, uh I think that's.
I have water coming there now. Like I said, even the neighbors, there's just.
You live downhill, yes, ma'am.
The type of sensitivity, the water comes through his yard.
Say you live.
To my, even though I tried putting up barriers.
Correct. So what he did, I I can almost promise you that if he was to do anything or anybody was to do anything, the end result would be better than you have it now. That's my that's my take.
I'm there.
Yes, sir.
I want to talk about that in council forum, but if you say we wouldn't do this knowing water would flow down.
I'm not. I don't I don't.
And how do we know?
Because you know that they're gonna do a drainage study.
We're doing in-house drainage study.
In-house drainage study.
Now, as you know, if if we're gonna hire engineers for a green house and the duplexes. Now, as you know, if, if we're gonna hire engineers for a green house and two plus that's built this, we don't have an in-house engineer. I'd love to have an in-house engineer.
I wanna talk more about that in council forum.
What I'm saying is, we don't do it with the intention of allowing that to happen. I mean, is it candid? But we're not gonna intend.
I wanna talk more about it in council forum.
Sure.
It's not what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we need to wrap this up, or whatever, to whatever point we can, in the council. Either, either fails, or most lack of motion, or lose emotion. And it's for the purpose of reselling certain property in the city, and you know all the details that go along with that. And, and believe me, there, there's nobody that would rather be home than me. I have company out of town from Seattle here, and I'd love to be home with them, but these, these are important issues, important topics for you, and, and both you ladies that, that live in here or have rental properties in the area, so that's what we're here to do. Mr. Marsh is asleep, and we can wake him up at any time.
Say, honey, I'll wake him up.
I'm gonna wait until they don't...
Sure. Yeah, we got two missing out, that's Lance.
Oh, either.
Trying to keep it till that power.
Okay.
Someone's gonna pull the power.
Oh, oh, yes, I can leave you on there.
We're totally cool.
I guess we can start changing.
Well, just, I've heard y'all tell a story, and I've been up in this area, but obviously, I've lived here for forty-five years, just for what's surrounding properties. You're not gonna get somebody go to our building, sixteen hundred square foot house. It's three-bedroom, two-bath, like, for instance, where I live. So, I mean, you're gonna get anything, it's gonna be some sort of multi-family dwelling. He's had good success, obviously, in town, what he's done. Ultimately, the rent's high enough where you do kind of, you wiggle away, have some rich rap. So, I mean, 'cause that's my big drawback, obviously, when you're duplex, you think whoever's gonna pull in there, how many cars on the locks, and the music loud, and all that stuff. I don't, I'm not really for, I'm on duplex stuff, and my, like I was trying to earlier, I couldn't ever get it out, I'm all about tax dollars. And is it better to have much duplexes on every corner, every block they have, and better to have people live there and be there for thirty years? I don't know. Because when it's empty, I mean, he's still paying, I guess, Mr. Brown's still paying property taxes, well, nobody's ripping it out. And are the reader paying the kind of property tax to us, or?
It's empty lots, so don't give any tax on his pension.
City, let pay service tax. Right. Yeah, I'll make a motion, we, uh, we approve this ordinance?
Everyone's pressuring.
But yeah, first reading was... Second.
We have a motion and a second to put on for three...
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Stane?
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ted Derry?
Yes.
Lance Derry?
Yes.
That's unanimous. An ordinance amending ordinance number eighteen dash, dash, zero nine for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Greenwood, amending the official zoning map of the city of Greenwood declaring an emergency and such.
I will say, I did not notice, and you know I don't like this, when he declared an emergency.
The reason I put that in there, Daniel, is winter's coming up, and I felt like Mr. Brown would be wanting to get started on this before hard weather did, give us a chance to, to get started on it. That's to your discretion, though.
I'm not, I don't like the emergency laws, personally. I think it's for the preservation of public peace, health, and welfare. The same vast.
Do you want to get the same motion to, and, and remove the emergency laws? Or you got, leave it, you got three read? Okay.
It'll be on next month for a reading.
So leave alone, okay. We'll do the three readings. I just wanna make sure that those that are here understand.
We didn't vote, we didn't vote suspend rules and all that.
That's right.
It's our training, and next month will be second.
And the one reason I agree with Mr. McDaniel, not so much whether, whatever the eloquent words you could use, but this way, Mr. Brown knows that we're, looks like we voted for the rezoning, so hopefully they can come with decent little plans. Maybe he can get a better idea what he's, what he's gonna do, since he knows he's gonna get a rezoning, for the most part, to guard, so maybe he can vote.
Oh, I understand that. Sorry for, Mrs. Seibert, her, her brother, I think it was, that owned this lot, you know, fifteen years ago, trying to put a, uh, a, uh, you know, duplex there himself, you know, and he was, uh, you know, uh, wasn't allowed to. Uh, you know, we hired a consultant as far as, you know, looking at Greenwood and trying to help it grow and stuff, and that's really what he recommended, uh, and, and what helped other areas, is to go to this R five, because it will help, it helps vacant lots that have been vacant for years and years, you know, all of a sudden become, uh, you know, a milk farm, you know, and, uh, and so that's, I think, I apologize that, you know, your brother...
I think that's what you're saying, but none of us mind if you build a house. The neighbors, I've talked to a bunch of the neighbors there, and they don't mind a house, but the two duplexes?
Well, I, I think that the, uh, from what I've seen with the duplexes that we've had, you know, they, they look like a house, you know, nowadays. You know, I mean, they don't, they're not, you know, where you realize, oh, that's a, uh, you know, that is a duplex, or, you know, a little...
Prime example of that, that this duplex up here, Gulf Road and different, most people don't realize they're duplexes.
Right, yes, you know.
But they pass by them every day, and they don't realize they're duplexes. Mr. McDaniel, I understand what you're talking about, and I feel the same way about emergency laws. I'd rather have it in there and take it out than try and have it in.
Yeah. Plus, this is gonna be the time to see a drainage engineering study, too, 'cause that's my big deal, too, the drainage deal. We see that too many times, with major reasons, like the apocalypse coming there and flooding everybody out. Dig a pond, still, this is long, John.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you, ladies, for the three readings. Understand that that, this implies, that's what I'm asking. You're welcome to come back to any of these meetings and continue the conversation.
Mr. Sacher, do you have a meeting at my social security hearing tomorrow?
Uh, probably so. No, I'm...
We'll get the law, and we need to be short with it.
Which church do you have?
I have this judge.
Yeah, I'm with you.
All right.
I'll be with you tomorrow. I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number, uh, eight, and is the interlocal agreement. Please do not shoot the messenger I received. I know we discussed this last meeting, yes? Sheriff Runyon was here, but it was last month, right? Sheriff Runyon was here. What you have is, if I can find my copy.
An old lady.
Is...
You drink the last line of the, the, the hearing that says, who knows not willing to help us?
Yes.
Please make another arrangement for non-emergency dispatch, city phone lines, and the local support.
Yes, that's correct.
So...
I've checked through their, said on pitch four times last month, and they've changed from the first time to the fourth time, but what I just did, out of the four times that I've heard it, was that they're not even gonna have concrete numbers as to who's gonna figure it out as far as a proposed proposal until February, so...
Council has, has had, what I've got from that, the meetings I've attended, council has had the numbers that was presented to me to pass on, and our share is around twenty-eight thousand dollars, and I agree that they're not concrete. I will point out, on, if it's good news or the matters, that one of the things that was suggested by this council, and probably other councils, they mentioned in one of those letters or from the government, from the judge, that after speaking to ten cities and ten mayors, what, and I know someone here asked this specifically, where you were not, you did not feel comfortable for sure entering into agreement that allowed a year, uh, increase in salaries, all that, you know, that goes along with it, whether it be salary or vacation. So that was, that is removed, you can plainly see that, all that language is removed throughout there. That's the only difference. That is, that's the only change.
It's not rocket science, if you look at this little deal here, where they've got it broke down in groups.
Yep.
You see the big ones where it says Greenwood?
Right.
You take that out, it ain't half.
Well, no, I, I agree, uh, but now, there are, there is a statement in here that says, and I asked very specifically, Chief, both chiefs, whether, because I took the chiefs with me, uh, 'cause it affects, well, it affects Chief Dawson more than anybody. I don't know that it literally affects you to fire her, took a degree, but not much, she's heading up.
Just took me to Agri.
Exactly, I took, I took him, because I know they don't, you know, get away, so I thought it'd be fun. Uh, but, to your point, there's a statement in here that says, even if anybody doesn't cooperate, everybody else will be... And I, I, I looked at the judge myself, and, and, you know, we, we try to work well with the judge, and we, we've asked favors of him, and he's obliged, and I don't know if it's been about, well, we have, you entered into an interlocal agreement with him on the, what's it called?
CSU.
CSU, so, things can be worked out. This one seems not too cool to me, and certainly other cities. I don't, I don't know anybody that has actually signed off on it yet, and you?
Um, the land's a central city, if, uh, I'm not proven with the law.
Hartford has no plans to, they may change, I don't know. But you're right, we are obviously...
It's not right that, to me at all, that it's based on census. It should be based on usage, if this is...
Well, you got usage on there, too. That's the number, that is the number of calls. Now, Chief Dawson has, I may say so, has questioned that, eighty-nine fifty-two, and is it, is it, is that counting every click of the, every click of the radio for any reason?
It's ten thousand, eighty-nine fifty-two. Does that answer our problem in there, too?
I know, except one thing, he omitted, and his mandate of the proposal, is the, uh, the number of calls. That was on the last page, you know, he immediately...
Questions.
Yeah.
No, there's questions. So, I thought, I would look, ask you to look at this list here on the letter from Sheriff Runyon, that is kind of a ultimatum, if you will.
Bottom line.
But you're, and I asked the same thing, when, when we go back to the meeting that we had in here, that I, that I took the both chiefs, and I, after the list was read off by Sheriff Runyon, of the things that we would be missing out on, that would not be available to us, and I don't know what some of the, I don't know what this NCIC, ACIC, I don't know, you pretended after.
You got this, you have this?
I think I probably didn't, period. So, I, after those, that was listed, it was made, I literally leaned over to Chief Dawson and said, sounds to me like there's several of those things we can live without, now, and he, we agreed on that. And he, he referred for me that we, we, he does a couple of those things himself.
So which of these lists do we need?
Well, that's where I'm headed, that, that's what I want Chief Dawson to tell you, in his own words, and as you know, as you can plainly read, that this does not include emergency calls. They cannot not handle emergency calls. They're obligated by law to do that. So that's not what we're talking about. It's non-emergency calls that's ahead of the list, I think. And to my, and as even said by, by Sheriff Runyon in that meeting, that for instance, if Billy, Billy's mommy calls and says that his bike has been stolen, whoever, and I guess dispatch does this anyway, determines if that's emergency or not emergency. If it's non-emergency, we're not gonna hear about it until the next day, when they can call the police, depending on the time of day. So, and I'm asking him in front of you, and I didn't ask, and I think we alluded to it a little bit in a meeting earlier with Chief, is that even that, I'm wondering, if, if a patrol officer on duty can somehow, those, that call can be transferred to whoever's on duty, even if, as, you know, even non-emergency, is that even a possibility? In other words, if...
I don't think so. I mean, we can transfer calls to them.
Well, the thing is, I mean, if, I don't...
So we wouldn't even lose that part.
I don't care if it's a, I lost my dog call, I mean, somebody will be able to get on, indeed, they need to get on, indeed.
Well, and that's not the case now, but we, I would like to implement something that we can.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, if, if we go this route, 'cause, I mean, basically, he's gonna, he's gonna cut one of our lifeline tiers as far as the rolling phones over, basically, is what you're talking about.
Chief, what you got?
Even forward, I mean, we would get, uh, I guess, along duty following down like those departments do. Where they pick up their radio, they pick up their camera, and they pick up their phone.
Right. Go out to patrol, they've got their word?
Call at midnight, and get forwarded to that phone.
The public is in touch with Greenwood Beach.
Yes, of course, if they still call nine-one, it's still...
So what do you lose when driver's license and license plate queries?
We run those on...
You already run those, what about the rest of your queries?
If we had a hit, we would have to call that, uh, whatever agency that is that has that entry, and we'll find out if the warrant's active.
What does it mean validating property in NCIC slash ACIC?
When the property's stolen, you have to put it into NCIC, so if someone said, pulled somebody over, and they run that serial number, to say, yes, that's stolen property, and they confirm that with the agency, so it's like...
Would be a problem after six o'clock, or?
Well, I...
Is that, uh, your programming, you guys can't do that?
Uh, they... If it was in there, well, then, they can do it, confirm it. Anyway, we wouldn't do that if it wasn't taken. I mean, everything should be taken out, and we would have to get someone that's a higher level NCIC, ACIC user to be able to do that. We don't have one right now, but it's just a, a taken place.
So the, if, if all the mercy phone calls got forwarded to somebody that's on, it was his night to have the phone, that's a lot of calls.
No, non-emergency, no, non-emergency, we're trying to go the big lights, we're supposed to, we're not...
They may not even answer the phone at all.
No.
It's non-emergency.
Well, the other thing is, we say is, uh, last month, when he showed it, you know, he said, our portion of all the calls represented just fifteen point seven percent. You know, but over here, we're, we're responsible for forty-four percent.
What do you have in your head?
That's why he, he put this on the last page.
Those are the calls, though.
Yeah, it's, uh, it says the South Sebastian, the Sheriff's Office on this call.
The news today.
For my...
News today, or is that last?
That's last month. He, he added it to the back, you know, this month, he, he recommended it.
And I'm not trying to help him out, anybody, but that doesn't sound familiar to me. I, what I've been looking at all along is for these numbers over here.
No, I did, I, I...
Oh, I didn't, I didn't...
I think Marling, I think, had...
Oh, yeah, Marling.
That call, except for...
I would like to go process of telling us that they're not gonna do something, that we're already paying, we're paying taxes.
Well, that question can come up, and I don't even know that I can answer it the way...
Well, the other thing that he mentioned, too, is that, uh, they said that they implemented, uh, wouldn't get, uh, putting nine, nine-one-one, uh, calls on cell phones, that they haven't done that before, until this year. This past, but they, I don't see why they're asking this before they start seeing how much they're gonna get from that.
Right.
Kind of hurt the public. It is, and... I feel you need to see those first before you go... I think so, exactly.
So, your, your grade, or your, as Chief, please, can you look at that, what detrimental to the city of Greenwood by losing, telling us we're gonna lose?
Non-emergency phone calls, it's not, it's not, it's not...
That we can actually maybe work out ourselves.
I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna receive those phone calls anyway, and those numbers, I mean, you give them numbers every month, and you see our, our, our calls, and they may average three hundred calls a month. Well, that doesn't equal the ten thousand something that they're saying we're doing, so I'm not sure how to come up with them numbers unless they're counting every key up the, the radio.
And I think you asked that when he was here.
I think I'm answering.
It's like an ambulance dispatched to Greenwood, that council has as a call.
Well, that's why I would think that you're taking phone calls. Now, if we get a little radio, say, we're checking out on traffic somewhere, I think that's what we're doing. So I'll say, I'm out on traffic here, and then I'll, I'll, uh...
They're W-J-K-ing.
I'll say, I'm leaving the traffic stop, we're gonna have that, too. But the calls, our calls, uh, I've basically, they've risen a little bit, but not to the numbers that they're saying, and our radio traffic has went down tremendously over the last couple of years because of our computers. We don't need to ask them to run this driver's license, you know. I mean, everything's written in the car, so... I mean, everything's written in the car. So our traffic has went down. To say that the call's more of an issue now, there's, there's no way because of the computers in the car.
So back to Mr. Powell, Councilman Powell's, the NCIC, always want to say NCIS, that stuff, is that, is that...
That's what we run in far. We can...
So you're okay with all of that?
Right. So, you...
So we can tell him, uh, we've considered this nice letter you wrote, wrote with your client.
Well, I, I mean, I'm a little raw with that thing at the meeting, and I truly think that we're citizens paying a county tax and a, and a city tax, and you're wanting to grab both of them, and I'm paying a double tax. I mean, they have to do it anyway. And, uh, you know, we help them just as much as they help us, and it's about each other. And I don't see the increase in traffic. We can turn on the radio right now, and I guarantee you're not turning anything.
Chief, what?
Every once in a while.
Let me ask you this. So if you're out in seventy-one's, and you're, just say you're seventy-one, seventy-one is dead, but you're on a traffic stop, and you have it checked out, and you do all your stuff, you do all your stuff through, if you take, your, your, um, and we're not checking out with them because they're not going to, basically, there won't be charges for that. If you check out on the traffic stop, I'm seventy-one, and then you're having to go to the L, through your, through your mobile computer. What happens if, cause I know when y'all check out there, and they check in fifty-one, you, you'll have to... That's what I'm saying. So, so what happens if something does go wrong?
You're still on the radio, they're gonna count, I mean...
But I think that they're, but they're not gonna, they're not gonna have your, your, your spot log like they normally do when you check out on the traffic.
Well, yeah, they're on, so I'll do, well, I mean, that, that part of it, the, the exact issue.
I'm just curious, I mean, I...
We, I mean, there's very seldom that many, uh, personnel.
But you know what I'm saying, though? You get out there, midnight, you're on traffic stop, you ain't checked out, but you do your stuff, well, you're in the dirtbag, get out, and he starts shooting, and you ain't checked out there. And then, I know, I know the other officers, I mean, you can let them know, but you're amongst each other, but I just didn't know.
Well, there's absolutely...
Well, that part, we, I, what I'm trying to do, is see if this compatible with a CAD system. You can always put a computer that you're checking out here, we all have it.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars is a chunk of change.
That's the bare minimum.
Right, but, yeah, exactly. Yeah, it could change. Well, you won't change due to salaries, so that's been scratched, but you're right, we don't know.
Well, to me, I think, you know, they haven't brought two things. I think last, brought this last week, uh, or last month, that we really had two dispatching services. We have the Sheriff's Office, and then we have the, uh, it's the...
West Orange.
West Orange. And to me, they really haven't looked at, well, one, you know, what kind of revenue they're gonna get from this new, uh, nine-one-one, you know, uh,
Cell phone.
Uh, two, they haven't really, to me, I don't think they really explored, you know, trying to merge the two. Uh, they keep talking, and that's all that's happened so far. They, or so we understand as mayors, as a group of mayors, we're told that we're talking, but they can't.
It's a big ego issue.
Yeah. What, what I wanted to say was, just, and, and it's not just to cover myself, but all of us that are considering this very serious proposal or non-proposal, is that we don't want to, twenty-eight thousand dollars if, if we thought, and I know you're on this with me, I'm assuming, I know you are, that if we thought for any reason this, uh, makes our citizens, or you, and the department, less safe, then we pay twenty-eight thousand dollars. I don't, but so, I think getting to the bottom of if it does or doesn't is, is the biggest issue. You guys twenty, thirty grand, I would round it up. If, if that, if you're not, if you're less effective...
We're not gonna give that much to the citizens. I mean, I, I mean, I, I know where you're going with that. And that's why I asked him, because, I mean, I understand their thought process, because I've done it, and I don't want these guys to get out there and be caught with their
Yeah, that is.
black belt work pants down because, because we skipped over twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Exactly.
Because I've never seen pro, pro emergency services have been, y'all know that. So, I know, that's the concern I have, Chief. I mean, because it can happen this late time. I mean, I just, you never gonna walk that door in like fifteen minutes.
It's the same problem we had with the other interlocal agreement is, we don't know what we're buying, and we don't know who's involved, and now we've been giving this.
I promise it's the ultimatum. I just, you know, the way it was presented, it wasn't, it wasn't little Finescom in there, or coming out and sitting down with Chief saying, hey, look, this is what we got going on, you know, y'all get it, it's, right under, to those not willing to help. That is...
And no oversight to it either. We have none, so to say so.
Right.
I mean, if they're wanting to pay for a service, then I think that should give us a...
That's what Rob tried to... Well, and that's what Mr. Powell said last month.
You wanna give a little piece of that.
Yeah.
And also, the sheriff mentioned that they would take one, and I think if he would take one and split that money in half, and see how they do with the one, instead of just put two of them.
And, well, I, I still like the idea that, uh, again, I think every miss valley is looking at, you know, sources of revenue and stuff. And then they come here and say, well, okay, we want to increase, you know, personnel on the county level, but we're gonna increase it over here on the EMS side, because we know, oh, that's gonna be a, a rung that nobody's, oh, I want to put our citizens at jeopardy, you know, and stuff, so that we can also, you know, uh, help in other areas of our budget, you know, because we know that, oh, nobody's gonna turn that down. And I, and I think that's unfair to put that, you know, on there saying, oh, we're gonna just go ahead and call for it, because I don't want to put our citizens at risk.
So you know, um, we are looking at another possibility.
Where is that going?
This one. So you know, I don't really want to talk about it a whole lot, it's not private, but it's something we're gonna be looking at. Another quote for dispatch.
Was he looking, was that letter saying, we're looking at it as a date?
Uh, March.
Okay, you have plenty of time.
Sure.
I mean, he heard about this today. Why don't you take that information and come back to you with a plan of what would happen if...
Yeah, I didn't bring it for a vote. I wanted everybody to know.
I just, I just expressed my opinion, and I want it on the record, that I don't like, that I'm gonna play in front of you, saying you're, you're, this is what you're gonna do.
In the ju, in the time, he hasn't had the ability to dissect it, let him do that, get back over to the mayor. You've got plenty of time to respond to that.
Yeah, plus, exactly, I totally agree. Chief, Chief has gotten back word, I think, on your end of dispatch. No? On another possibility with dispatch?
Oh, I just have my question.
Okay, have you heard anything, or have you, Chief, have you reached out to, or has anybody reached out to you from your dispatch?
No.
Okay.
Well, I haven't. I mean, I could also, for sure.
If you'll follow up, I'm, I'm still, of course, instead of waiting on them, then when you're prepared, or complete, and I'd like you to, like Tom said, digest all of this. But yeah, I didn't want to vote, I just...
Mayor, who, who again is the intergovernmental cooperation council mayors from those ten cities?
So you guys will meet next week then?
Whatever it is, I guess we got that. It'll be fun.
As it was the last one. Uh, the first meeting, all ten, probably nine, eight or nine. The second meeting? Six. Um, I don't, I don't know that. Do you know, remember when you guys were there? As you came to the second meeting, at your central?
My name is, uh, I don't know.
Uh, I think Central, Chief, Police Chief is there.
Okay. And it's not only, the mayors are, are the council for their call, but sometimes they send their chief of police or, or our chief. I know who, what, I know definitely Barling's been there both meetings, Hartford's been there, Mansfield's been there, and Mansfield, I think, you climbed.
Uh, Chief, do, with the other accounts, have the, I guess the computer built in the cars like we do to do all that?
No, they're, they're at more at risk. That's a list of important things for them to lose, I think.
Right, so the, the smaller, that's what I'm saying, so smaller facilities are, are really more vulnerable than, than we are.
Right. I don't know that.
We're paid for all the small guys.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're usually, they're open. Barling, Barling is in there. So, both of them.
All right, so we, we're, we're taking the action, we're just...
No, it's FYI.
FYI.
Thank you, Chief. And we'll, we'll be getting back to you. Uh, number nine is budgets. Well, not right, but resolutions and adopt temporary budgets. That's what ten means.
Like a motion, maybe, uh?
A second. Oh, I see you're in.
It's Brown.
I know, yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Is there?
Yes.
Is there?
Yes. We're talking about the budget for four of the new years. This is good, this is good.
Just in case.
Yeah, you get the date between now and December thirty-first, if you want to meet for a period, I'm, I'm there.
December twenty-fifth. How about the twenty-fourth? We all, we all went on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, where you guys been to? The Chief's in the February meeting, we lie about it, same January, the break state call, all the way.
That is what you know, December twenty-fourth. Who knows that joke? You and I, okay. Mr. Edwards, did you have a comment a while ago? I was gonna allow you to speak from there, because you're older than I am.
Yeah, I'm fine enough.
You're good?
About half an hour, I'm not ready to go sleep in there.
Okay.
Otis goes half.
We have no other, what we do have. We're, the department reports and questions for council.
I got one to treat for him.
You wanna roll that? Okay.
Hello, Rowan Nine Dogwood.
Why not?
That's, got a little concrete area across the road.
Falling in?
Well, off the side of the road falling in. The person who learns that mail there is going down on the big signal.
Look at that, make sure that's the one I'm thinking about.
Yeah. I would get a large amount from the mailman out there. Mailman.
Mailman's one.
Mailperch.
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 Yeah, that don't sound right. Get that, that don't sound right.
That's not right. M-A-I, that was why I said, geez. That's the, that's the, same area. Well, he didn't, I'm just thinking there. I don't see how you would even call one. I know. Well, this is, maybe, maybe it'd be a... Is that, I have a question for Sheriff, why this is going?
This is kind of a sign of ours, a little, like, allowance.
Hey, Sheriff, on your report, can you break out what these responses are, like five, you know, whatever, these seventy-two responses? Who's to do that?
I used to, and then people start complaining that they didn't care about this stuff, so I was, it's all...
Yeah, I'm gonna... Don't count.
I'm breaking that for you.
Anybody else from any department that's over here? Don't forget Tammy's search. Uh, yes, uh, Chief Dawson, uh, you did mention the, the CSU, and, and how many, I guess, I like this kind of an update on the, you know, on calls that you've been sending to the CSU.
I can get you that. My number was, uh, I'm, yes, maybe three.
For Greenwood?
Yes.
All, for the whole year, or just?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, the original, the original.
That, that may be high. I, I mean, they, they'll tell me about it, and the people have them to agree, though there's not so many people that agree with it.
We probably need to look back at the original, that, that, like, all sorts of agreements, you know, that we need to see what the report, reporting system is supposed to be back to us, and I don't remember if you consider that we agreed to that with some sort of recording mechanism in place. I don't, I don't know. Anything else for the council, I mean, from the, sorry, to the department?
What's a Wilkinson addition?
Mr. Bell, where are you?
There I am.
Wilkinson addition?
It's on the fire department. I complained with you, I didn't know what was Wilkinson addition.
Uh, I can tell you that it's the area on the north side of Ashbury Point, if you turn off the Deerwood Road there, right inside of the San Jose, uh, uh, Findings House. Out there, they put up, like, twelve lots there.
And he's very quick to say that that's not his, that's Debbie's.
That was not part of Ashbury's, or...
Just me. You would access it from Ashbury.
Yeah, you would be, yeah, but come on, that's...
I have a question for the plane. When, the subdivision out here on Highway Ten? Yeah, it's all crazy. Is it done? Not yet. Okay. So it, the flat's not been approved and filed yet. We have got the file on the, uh, on, on that, and, uh, I think Buddy, Buddy, you're working with him on that, aren't you?
Yes.
Buddy's working on that. I mean, I would expect it to send that. So on the final flat, there's four signatures. Usually I have a stamp from the surveyor saying everything is perfect, and he puts his professional stamp on there. And we got a stamp from the, from a PE, a professional engineer, stamping it saying, water's gonna drain, and water and sewer pipes are in good shape, right? And then there's a stamp from the commission saying it meets all codes and regulations. And then the last one, there's a, or there's just a, a line to sign. The last one's a line for the mayor to sign, saying on behalf of Greenwood, this meets all codes, regulations, everything, right? And when will that happen?
Since we get our punch list, uh, all, uh, approved, and then it goes back to the engineer for the final flat.
And currently, it meets every, every point of our subdivision.
And then we've got, then we've got bonding to consider too, because, uh, uh, there's some, uh, for the street, lights, sidewalks, and things like that will be bonded.
Okay. That's all I, I do have in council form, four points. You got four and out. That was your fifth, wasn't it?
But that's not council form. Okay, if we can wrap that one up, we'll go to council form. Everybody good with that? Council form, Mr. Powell?
Where are we at on the side, the sidewalk grant, the, the grant from ADHT for the Highway Tens and the U2 parks? When is it due? Where, where are we at with the engineering? How much have we spent? How much have we received?
The engineering assures me, because I ask him frequently, that we do not miss any deadlines, and he has assured me, this is Jeremy Shore, Hawkins aware, that we are, we have actually turned in, as a city, or as an engineer, he has turned in more of the plan than what is required. Our, our doc wants, wants you to turn in on this specific project, it's like you turn in twenty percent, you turn in forty, you turn in sixty, and they, they give you approvals back. According to Mr. Mr. Shores, we have turned in, he has turned in, uh, eighty percent. And I, I requested him often to make sure that we don't somehow go to sleep and miss a deadline, is to throw away a couple hundred thousand.
Two hundred fifty thousand dollars, right?
And he assures me, uh, I think so. It's eighty-twenty, obviously, so up to that, and so...
A lot of free money.
Absolutely. And, and he assured me, why not? And if we do, due to that, I think we'd be looking for another firm. I think that is a threat to Mr. Shores.
Mayor's not asking me my hand, and I'm not either.
Yeah. And Tammy too. Well, it's not harsh, but...
Maybe we'd do more to looking for a firm than we ought to.
Yeah, well, I don't think it's gonna happen. He, he's right, he's on, and Wapahdidi is in this mix of this too. So, to tell you when they're gonna start, uh, we probably not even, was it a year and a half? A year? If, if you went by exactly what, the only thing they're required, it's a good year.
Yeah.
From, from approval, and that's not...
And we, we jumped them by three quarters, that was, that's the...
The survey flags were there, they did survey, they did an initial, according to Jeremy's, uh, design, and they did that. I do know that, that, I do not, I know that they have not, and it is on them to do this, our doc to go out and gain easements from these businesses. We kind of jumped the gun, as you just spoke of, I think, by going out and visiting. I thought, I'm ready, before we got our approval of our grant, I'd get ready to come back to you guys and say, let's build this thing if they give us approval. And, and so, that's what I know about it.
But what I, what I've also understood is, most of this is gonna be in their easement. And they can, if any, possibly, they're gonna be in their easement, but they're gonna come in
They're gonna sign off.
when they can't, you know, we're, we have the big ditches and, and drop-offs and things like that, they might have to come in and go on the property owner's easement. But, uh, according to Jeremy and everything, they're talking about using most of their easement, because, well, we look at it like a, like Dr. Singer. We were trying to stay out of the highway department easement, which was gonna take us pretty close to this front door. And then down by the dentist office, it was gonna basically have to go around the right hand side of the sign. For now, the highway department in there, it's not an issue.
I can't help believing that this is, no, I'm... I can't, I can't help believing, I, this is, no one's told me this, but I can't help believe due to what you just said or, or due to the opportunity, possibility, high possibility of that becoming ours to read in the near future. They were willing to look at that and go, we don't, we'll probably not gonna care in a couple of years.
I think we'll see something like in front of Casey's where they did a little, little zigzag like that, which I, I like anyway. I think we'll see more of that.
I can tell you that officially, we have been, I think, I may have already done this in council meeting, I don't know, but we have officially been turned down for phase two. Of that and another or something else that we're, and it's, it's just a simple description of due to lack of funding at this time.
But that, that's higher on the list the next time it comes up. So maybe that turned.
We're approved on phase one.
Oh, phase one is done.
We are, we are. As long as we don't miss a deadline.
That's correct. Phase two would be from, for phase one ends, obviously, which is.
What deadline?
Over the years.
What? Whatever, whatever, and I don't have in front of me to say, we, we are ahead of the headlines, we're turning in percentages of design. We have turned in eighty percent. We are probably at more like the sixty, forty to sixty percent that we should have now. We, we're ahead of them.
I just don't want to end up like we're both in the Greenwood sign, but we're down there in the eleventh hour, fifty ninth minute asking for an extension.
Do you want that? On the Greenwood sign?
I'll move on.
We got that.
We had this, we found this rapper a little bit, that, that, that.
I'll go to two.
Getting it built.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, yes, okay, good. We have the easement, we're getting it built, to not lose the rents, okay, got you. I'm good.
I'll go to two. Winter conference, uh, is Daniel registered to be asked?
Yes, you better let her know.
Me?
Whoever's calling this.
Tammy was much more on top of it, she called me probably in my office.
Wow, I, I, can we take that off the table, please? Wow.
All right.
Wow.
I need to be registered.
You might want to.
When is the winter conference?
Before, winter. Before I tell her that, in my home, in your, check your emails to make absolutely sure.
Hey.
I have not gotten anything.
I spent all day on Thanksgiving delivering four thousand emails and organizing, it was not there.
Okay.
I haven't seen them either.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just, I'm just, I got it.
When you're all, the morning you see her, I need to be registered for winter.
Okay, so who, who here is wanting, is doing that? Lance, for sure, Rod, A C, same guilty parties?
I have some issues.
Pardon?
I actually probably can't talk for work.
Okay.
I got to make a good effort this year.
Yeah, you wanna register?
Okay, I have Lance, Rod, A C and Daniel.
Yes, we have Mr. Baker, the. Oh, really? I will, I will.
Look at that, that's, this is not even her job.
She's helping. Well, if you don't notice, she's not here tonight. I am not gonna say anything that you're saying.
Woo!
That is not gonna get to Daniel.
Tammy will get to Daniel.
Tammy gets to Daniel and Daniel will get to Ben tomorrow.
Don't try that too.
Now, let me tell you, where you gonna end up? You're gonna end up in the sorriest hotel in the world.
Yeah, you will.
This conversation.
You will, but no, but.
Tammy did that to me and A C one time.
I did.
We walked up there and asked us how many hours we've been waiting.
Had to put a coin in the bed, I know.
I looked at A C and I said, you gotta be kidding me.
But y'all, for the eleventh hour, always telling me, I would always ask you and then you wouldn't remain until the last.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna be dead, baby. We'll move on to three.
All right.
Good delivery.
Please do, thank you.
This, this involves Sonny. So Sonny, I, I, there was a lot of points that came up on the duplexes.
Yeah.
And on, uh.
Sure.
And, and, I, I believe in infill and, you know, some of these areas that are somewhat depressed, if we infill them correctly, it, it's gonna raise our town. This, what was your name, ma'am? Whitney, Ms. Whitney, provide us some really nice pictures. And, you know, you're looking at duplexes and she's saying with garage doors, makes the duplex and, you know, I don't, hey, I'm in the door business and I don't think everything needs a garage door. But you can even look, like there's one Tony and Becky Norris built in nineteen ninety-five, it looks really clean and well-kept. But then you get to the one that was built last year, and you know, it kinda looks like Sanford and Son over on Cedar Street. And it has to. This guy doesn't have a point. So he's got his barbecue grill, two trash cans.
Is that, is that, is that today? No.
No, I don't care.
It's, it's.
Yeah, but that's not my point, I'm not, he doesn't have anything to do with it. So I think, what do we need to do? Do we need to write an ordinance to where?
Provide a place for them?
Yeah, there's, there's a little storage area around the side, you know, where concrete is pulled over. You know, if it was as simple as even putting some concrete and maybe just a little fence to screen it, they would use it. But this guy doesn't have any choice, so they're putting it in his living room. So I think, what Ms. Whitney Act was saying, you know, it looks bad when they don't have a garage, cause she's thinking everybody's gonna put all their stuff in the garage. I don't agree, agree with that, it's just, we're not providing this guy places to put stuff that's gotta be stored outside.
Yeah.
And I'm surprised that he's allowed that, the, uh, the owner of the duplexes is, uh. It's there, he can see where the papers are off on the side, he doesn't have a place to put it. So what do we need to do to make sure things like that happen?
He's not.
Just, I think the old more.
Has a divorce.
Like I said, with, with this builder here and also.
That is. That's it. Sonny, that is it.
That's me.
That's it, that's it.
Over on Lake.
No, that's, that's all.
That's it. Secret.
Oh, it's safe, okay.
That happened for about one week, Richard called me, I took care of it. The man divorced his wife, left all his stuff on her front porch. So that's one week out of eighteen.
And that could happen at Ashbury Falls, true.
And we have concrete on the back and we have concrete on the side at Richard's request for trash cans and for other things like that. And Tate's car, that you know, is right next, in that same picture, and he lived right next door. That's Lisa's car right next door. That was one week when she divorced him, or when he divorced her and walked out.
Okay.
Tate?
No, not that. Not, no.
I got that on. Well, I saw them in church together Sunday, so I gotta tell you about that.
No, you don't have to.
Yeah, so, uh, with infill, and we brought it up, you brought it up, about sidewalks. The sidewalk ordinances right now are pointed towards new developments. In old developments, developments, we don't have anything. So should, should I write an ordinance that said that anything over any improvement in a subdivision, any subdivision, over fifty thousand dollars would require that you build sidewalks?
Why don't you let me look, see if I can come up with an ordinance that somebody else is using for that?
Okay, well, I think, being that I do agree with infill and that you ought to come around and, we, we need to solve this sidewalk problem. And when people are coming in and proving things, I mean, you know, several hundred dollars more of sidewalk is gonna help.
You know, the, over by the M T building, you know, the county built the sidewalk along Coker and then they turned right and then they stopped. The gentleman that built the duplexes across the street, paid the sidewalk fee to continue on past his duplexes. And once that's, that money is spent, then the, then the city is, has agreed to go on down behind Robert McKinnon's house on downhill Hackin Road. So that'll give the people that live in the hall of homes and all that, uh, a way to come down on sidewalk, turn, go up and find the police station and the C V's if they want to.
And this would be a benefit and a selling point for when you are coming in trying to infill, and even if it happens to be multifamily, it's a, you know, they can look a block over and say, well, look what happened over there. And now they got sidewalks and the place is gonna look bad. And it really helps when, and it's not required, when you come in for rezoning, just having that elevation helps a lot. Maybe more detail might have helped Daniel, but, uh, anyway, I see. Pre-development runoff. Pre-development runoff factor. So if we go in with a multifamily on small lots, we're putting a, a large impermeable surface over this whole entire block. We don't really have a way of having assurances on how we're gonna affect this lady's property, the lady, you know, the person to the, each side. I think we need to do something more in the city to. I don't, to, yeah, to assure, cause that was saying, he's assuring her that, well, heck, somebody may build it, concrete the whole thing, and there's gonna be water runoff. More water runoff than when you had a permeable surface that soaked in some of the rain. So you can't assure them that. Now, there are things that can be done, you know, there can be things that slow down the water and drains off slower. But I don't really wanna get to the point where we require everybody to have a P E stamp on their property before they do it, but like we would a commercial. But I don't know what we do short of that. But I do think it's a problem, we can't be pushing water off on.
Now, normally, for example, Four Hills, and somebody was building a home up there, they had to have a drainage study because of the severe drop off. Uh, in areas where the, it's fairly flat, we haven't been requiring it except for the, you know, soap fences and, and hay bales and whatever we need to do, you know, to keep any runoff from the, from the, correct, the, uh, the started soil. But, uh, you know, uh.
Isn't that, though, a fundamental basis of, of development? Is that you can't do something that, adverse to your neighbors?
Yes, and that, and that's what we, we strive to, to do, I mean, you know, I, I can't, I'm learning how to take credit for back where you.
I will.
That was a fiasco and, and, and that was one that had a drainage study on.
And that's one that we actually stopped all building permits and certificates of occupancy until the builders got in there and fixed it.
Relax, son, I think it was.
It was actually a development, but it was what the builders were doing.
But what, what I have started doing in case of a, a subdivision, for example, is requiring a, a drainage study. And they bring it to me and then I take it to our engineer and I say, you, you tell me if that's, if that's correct.
So what are the requirements on you guys? So what are the requirements on a drainage study? I mean, they may have had their temperators do the drainage study.
Well, it's stamped by engineer, I mean, there's no guarantee.
So we're required to stamp, has it been stamped on?
And so then we get our engineer, mainly, uh, uh.
Jerry Shore?
It was, Jamie, Jamie Shore. Uh, Jerry Shore, he, you know, he, he takes that, the one that I get from their engineer. And then I send it to him and he says, yeah, that's good. So, you know, I, that, that finally weighed double.
When we do that, we do have some assurances. If you notice City of Fort Smith's, who, Mickelwagen Coleman over drainage.
All right.
Because it didn't work out. And they got those assurances and they got somebody to go back after. Which Fort Smith has a lot of problems. I'm off to four now, my last.
I counted six already.
You counted six, that was six. So if related topics or different, they're not related.
But I will look at some ordinances and see if I can come up with somebody that, you know, has a percentage or, or whatever as far as remodeling and sidewalks.
So why do you happen to be here? Fourth is kinda related to you. So Don Oliver, is he retiring?
Hmm, yeah, next year.
Like at the end of next year?
No, probably middle of next year.
Middle of next year? And I can wait on that, no, I'll just talk about it now, cause we can kinda.
That's only necessary. I'm just kidding, we're going for a record and we might as well break it.
Or follow it.
Yep.
All right, I'll, I'll.
See, I got, I've got ads in, uh, in several papers and I also had one come out in the municipal league, uh, looking for somebody to replace him.
All right, I've got a, I've got an idea. It's not a hard set idea, but when I was working on my fire science degree, eight, nine, ten years ago through S A U. I had a class called Fire and Emergency Services Organizational Management. And part of that class is how fire departments are organized. And they're organized in all kinds of myriad of ways, cause they kinda developed out of, I mean, you know, Hartford has a fire department and one day Hartford may be a big, large metropolis and it kinda goes back to how they were formed. There's points where you can start turning, making decisions to kinda go different directions. Well, in, you know, in the, in, in the course and in any course, it kinda shows you the proper way to set something up. And in the fire, in the fire science degree program, it shows, if you draw the flow chart, it comes down to two different areas. You've got fire prevention and fire suppression. Fire suppression is what normally you think about with the guys with the traditional firefighters, rescue operations, the big trucks. On the fire prevention side, that's your fire marshal duties. And under fire marshal duties in a large fire department, you'd have a preventative, you know, preventative firefight, you know, firefighting activities, you know, like what Stewart does at schools and stuff. And then you have code enforcement inspections, you know, where people hate seeing the fire marshal come around saying, you gotta have that fire extinguisher. In large volunteer fire departments, and there are some very, very large fire, volunteer fire departments, a three and four hundred bin over in East Coast, West Coast. They, they have built that in a way by using, under the fire prevention side, under the fire marshal, they put all of the code inspection and building inspections underneath the fire marshal. They require all these firefighters, they require all these people that are in there to become a firefighter. They, these guys are full-time, they require them to, uh, become firefighter one and two, sometimes they require them to become E M Ts. But what this does is they're using that to lower their I S O and keep their fire prevention side totally volunteered. And as y'all know, I'm, I'm for keeping the fire department volunteers as long as we possibly can. And at this point, we are the largest volunteer fire department in Arkansas. And at the way, if we continue to go, the way we're, the direction we're going, like all other Arkansas fire departments, we're gonna wind up rolling into a full-time fire department. We can put this off by maybe possibly moving building inspection over to the fire department, underneath fire marshal, require that guy to, to be a certified firefighter. And then any, but any subsequent people that are hired to do the same thing.
Yeah, but, but Don is more than a building inspector. He is permit rider, he's a floodplain inspector, you know, he does other things than, than just building inspection. And to, to come up, I'm having a hard time coming up with somebody with qualification for electrical inspector right now. You either have to have a, a master's, uh, as electrical, or you have to work with one for five years before you are a qualified electrical inspector. You know, those are the things that, that I'm dealing with now, trying to find out somebody just to replace them.
It's just a thought. You know, it's just something on black.
Like the floodplain, like I said, the floodplain is totally a different animal too. And, uh.
And all that, in this, right now, these areas I'm talking about.
Stewart is involved with every, you know, any commercial sure project that we have, you know, he's in that and, and also with anything that, uh, in our subdivisions that, that Stewart signed off on it just like everybody else. But to, uh, to get somebody to do everything that Don does is a challenge. I mean, I sent, I've posted it in several newspapers and, uh, in municipal league magazine. And I've got one guy that was qualified and he wanted eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars a year. The other one, they'd seen a half before, you know, that was about it. And so I have got the issue about the electrical inspection thing here, if I can jive that out instead of trying to come up with somebody with, you know, a master electrician. But the other, the building and floodplain and all that are the issues that I'm building out. And plus, just, uh, operating computer, I mean, Don has to deal with a lot of computer work as far as, you know, the new permitting system and, and the things like that. So, uh, it's, it's an issue and, and I'm beginning to look for somebody that, that I can move into that position.
So all I'm asking is if we get everything you're asking for, plus he's gotta be a fire rider. So when I S O comes in, we got one more, a full-time firefighter. And as, as the town grows, we continue that route.
That'd be, that'd be tough.
It's just a thought, you know, I'm, you know, I'm a opponent of making our, having our fire department be the largest volunteer fire department from now on. But it will require at some point having some full-time people. And in a small town, you can wear different hats. I don't think necessarily, if Stewart went and hired a firefighter, that guy's so busy, he couldn't do this other, these other duties. So it's just a thought, it looks like we got time to think about it, unless Sonny hires somebody real quick.
I think it's something worth.
I think it's something worth considering, you know, because are you volunteering for that position?
We have firefighters in department. The problem is you have to pay them full-time. I mean, we've got people on different departments.
Well, this would, this would be a, a full-time guy and yes, you would have the problem after hours of meeting Fair Labor Standards Act. I mean, after hours, this guy is just not going to show up. And I think that's just fine. The rest of the volunteer fire department can handle it. Now during the day, this guy would be, he, he would need to respond to anything that come up during the day. Now after hours, you know, it may be that...
Why wouldn't you consider somebody from the street water or sewer department that's not so, that wouldn't have to be technically, so technically qualified as a building inspector, plumbing, electrical and, uh, floodplain and all that to fill that position? He is a full-time employee.
Right.
And he is a firefighter.
And you're saying that he works for the fire department?
Worker.
I'm asking, I'm asking for an employee that works for the fire department that is also all these other things. That he doesn't work for the street department, doesn't work for the police department.
Yeah, if he works for the, any other department, he's not considered a full-time firefighter. And that's where we get the bonus from, having that full-time firefighter.
I, and I'd say he would be salary. And the reason it'd be salary is so we don't have to worry about Fair Labor Standards Act. At 12 o'clock when the alarm goes off, you have to come in and we'll see you in the morning at work for eight hours too.
I would, I probably should, but I do, I would. Stewart, Chief, I've had some conversations, but I know you're not suggesting going to a full-time fire, fire department, but as you...
It's quite the opposite.
As you, well, no, but you actually said at one time, we could be rolling over, quote unquote, to fire the full-time fire department. I would make sure that, and I know you are, you will, you're not, you're, we'd consider these and I know the fire department, fire department on the council, but please, and you will, you can't not do this. Should I just say, is that you gotta, I mean, where's the money gonna come from to support a full-time fire department?
It's not.
That's why...
This is quite the opposite. I'm saying that we, I want to keep it volunteer as long as we possibly can.
Right.
The money for an additional firefighter would come from the building, what was in the building.
I just wanna, I'm just throwing it out there, it's not even what we're talking about specifically on this, on this inspector. But I think there are some, this, this would be a good discussion, I mean, you talked about this before, you brought it to my attention. But always consider, you can't not consider paying for full-time. And I know what you're saying, that would help, that would keep you away from it for a longer time probably. But I thought I heard you say, we could be looking to roll over...
No. Eventually, eventually later on down, I mean, maybe 20 years from now.
Okay, well, there...
I'm saying that our current path...
And believe me, there's nobody that supports the fire department.
Mayor, I'm saying that the current path is wrong.
Yep.
We're gonna roll into a full-time fire department very, very soon.
Okay, so you did say it and that's not 20 years, very, very soon.
You're having a sidebar conversation, you're just getting pieces.
No, I'm listening to every word you said.
What I'm saying is, my vision would be to have a 300-man volunteer fire department. That's where I want to go. And we can turn this ship with small turns. And it's not like we're doing anything revolutionary. You just look at these large volunteer fire departments in Pittsburgh, in Pennsylvania, in New England.
What is, what is a very, very short time?
Oh, less than 10 years.
What dictates in your mind, uh, what, what says it's time to go full-time?
Zero, I think it'd be, zero, zeros on, yeah, people not showing up. We probably, we've got pretty close to that.
Zeros on calls?
Zeros on fire calls, I'd say right now, we're averaging 80-10 zeros a month on first responder calls. We got Sebastian County EMS right here, we've got Burnout Department.
And are those zeros because they know it's not a fire call?
It's not a fire call, it's a medical call. It's a medical call. So if a medical person's on the push, we don't have 33 medical responders, we have 14 or 15 active. And so if they're not able to respond, then we usually don't have a response, that's partly volunteer. Uh, our luxury is that we have two full-time EMS units in town that hope they're intact. Sometimes like today, uh, they were sending a Southwest EMS unit out of Van Gere in Greenwood because of the person that fell and knows no ambulance on play. Well, when they got Fort Smith on Greenway and says, God, lose at the hospital and then went ahead and took over that call, we still sat there for 15 minutes waiting.
Why, why, why isn't that though, if it's not responding to medical calls, that's an EMS system?
The fire department is EMS and that's what most of y'all don't understand because we've had the luxury that we had a county come in and do our job for us years ago in the 1970s.
You got Sebastian County EMS though, Southern Tier Town. Would, why wouldn't we try to grow that for medical calls?
Because that's not the city of Greenwood, that's the county function. And last year we came a couple hundred votes.
So then what you're saying is, you're trying to turn the fire department into the EMS?
No, I'm saying the fire department is EMS whether you like it or not.
Well, this fire runs on every medical call that Fort Smith did, which runs Fort Smith. There are seven ambulances in the city of Fort Smith that run 20,000 calls a year. The fire department responds to every call.
It's, it's not just Greenwood, that's, that's how they stand out of the department.
We consider that.
The norm nationwide...
You're attracted, but that's where we're...
Our, our volunteer fire department is zero.
Because Daniel, the norm nationwide is that fire departments and ambulances, it's all the same thing. And that's because you don't have redundant services. Now Arkansas is a little funny and things, votes are different ways. Here, we have the advantage as us, the councilman, to keep this as a volunteer fire department for as long as we possibly can. If the citizens would have voted down that, you know, that building of the fire station, I think that if I was just wanting to wash his hands of it, we would have rolled into a full-time fire department very, very quickly. We'd probably be one now. But because that few hundred votes built that, we've got the luxury of having them do work that I prefer not to do. And so we can keep our fire suppression guys volunteer as long as we can. Now as long as we can is like treating them like the National Guard, where nice to them, we find really good equipment, we trim well, and then when everything's over, don't sit, don't go over and watch TV and hump weights and drive a big truck down in Sonic, go home.
Let me ask you this question though, to, I don't know if y'all know this. The fire responding on medical calls with EMS, that's full-time fire departments generally willing to do that, right?
That's...
I mean, like Mansfield, for example.
They still have first on...
Does, does Mansfield Fire Department respond with EMS?
Yes, yes.
We just like, like...
A full volunteer fire department.
We had three calls back-to-back today, three medical calls back-to-back today. Both ambulances were gone, Fort Smith EMS was tied up, seven ambulances tied up Fort Smith. So I had to call ambulance out of Van Gere, Southwest EMS, become to Greenwood. If we hadn't been there...
Think about it, if you're Hartford, that fire department Hartford's got, send somebody out, it might take 20 minutes to get angles, doesn't it?
How many of our people are?
Medical.
What do you call them, EMS?
Yeah, yeah. We, we have, we only have four that don't have first responder quacks, but that doesn't mean that they first respond. We have about 19 that are able to first respond, about 14 to 15 that are active duty.
So you had though, I mean, I, I don't have very good memory about all this, but you had EMT and there was what, EMT 1, 2, 3 or something?
Yeah, just, just well, some EMT, anti-basic, intermediate and paramedic. And there's actually a EMR now that is the responder.
I mean, I remember when nobody was paramedic and then that became a big deal there. Anybody at EMS had to be paramedics and they wanted everybody to be paramedic. We don't have paramedics.
We have one paramedic that doesn't do paramedic duties for the city. Does that make any sense? Marty's on our department, he doesn't, if he ever responds for us, he responds not as a paramedic, first fashion EMS, he just doesn't first respond.
They have first responder, EMT, EMT intermediate.
Intermediate, it's actually called advanced now, but...
And then a paramedic.
And most people are not EMT and...
Most fire drivers are first responder.
Or EMT medical responder, what it's called. We have 12 EMTs.
So I think we have a couple...
You take, you take, you take Rogers and Big, they run, all, all their, all their ambulances run out of fire stations.
And Springdale and, and, uh, Silent Spring get the paramedic before he puts a fire on. And they just do it that way. But we are quite, the change in the fire, in, in, in fire service across the United States, we're, we're not in suppression anymore. We're, we're an all hazards department. We do everything. And when people say, I don't know who to call because this is not someone getting, it's not a criminal issue, who do we call? It's fire departments. So we're, we're taking care of road rescues, floodwater rescue, medical rescue, cardiac arresters, fires, search and rescue, getting a cat out of a tree and, and all that stuff. And so that's, that's what we are. And in fact, we're starting to change names of fire departments to different things. It's just like when you said, community risk reduction, uh, fire departments are changing to, they're putting building departments. Roger in Arkansas, their building department is under the fire marshal's office now. They're building inspectors. Same thing is going that way for Fayetteville and Springdale. Is it something we should do here? I don't, I don't know right now, I don't have anybody else under me. I, I'd like to have a couple of the people there. We had eight zeros last month of people not responding to a level call. What if that was you? How can I change that? I can't force them to go. The vapor says if they have a choice. Now if I want to pay them full-time and get a full-time person here 24/7, then the hour I have this one.
Were those, I mean, are, are those zeros those, they know it's what you would call a police out there?
Partially.
They might go...
I'm just, I'm just saying, you just, when you're volunteered, you, you don't have to do it for...
You can do what I said, if you're not a regular.
I'm just telling you, if, if, those zeros are because we don't have anyone that's able to respond. Now whether choosing to or not, I don't know. But if, uh, if they're not able to respond, they can't. And they're just not wanted. And I'll tell you, a lot of it's burnout because I know there's some guys sitting right here, they're EMTs, that we got burned out a couple of years ago. And we got all these new guys coming in now that are taking the spot. So at, at one point, when we started doing first response, we had six guys show up. That was after the first six of us, everybody's complaining, why you have six guys showing up and paying all that? And then it started, we knew what would happen. After everybody here, it started slowing down, our new other guys started coming in. Now we're lucky to get two per call or one. And we'll have one guy that works in town and this is when it's gonna change, you guys are gonna hire a full-time department. It's when these guys right here retire to have jobs in Greenwood. Because all of our new recruits that are coming in, all the new recruits coming in are Fort Smith. And their bosses aren't letting them off to come fight fire in Greenwood. And we keep trying to find people that have jobs in Greenwood or have their own businesses. We'll get one out of every five recruits we get made. And we're living off that right now. And, and, and so we're right on the edge of having to figure out something else to do. And, and we've been able to do a good job of balancing that. But yeah, we, on the medical side of it, we got real lucky last year when they passed. I voted for it. I voted for them to give a better facility. Uh, I think we've got a good, uh, Sebastian County EMS over there. But it truly hurt my department when we went full-time. And that's what we even want because that's, that's what fire departments are doing now. We're doing EMS. Whether you like it or not, we're required, we're, it's part of, it's part of our DNA and it always has been. It's just fire departments are really positioned.
So Daniel, I think all of our goal should be to keep the fire department volunteer as long as we possibly can. I think that that's our goal. It should be, because it makes our finances better. We don't have another multimillion dollar department in the end. If that's the goal, if you look at places that have large volunteer fire departments, this is how they're structured. They've got building code enforcement, all that is underneath the fire marshal. Those, those guys are full-time, they're getting ISO credit for it and they're kind of dealing with the day-to-day duties of the fire department. And then the suppression guys just come in, do their job and leave. And that, you know, if you look at any organization, you say, well, how do they do it? And you start looking, that's what we need to emulate if we want to go that direction. If not, we're gonna roll into another million dollar department and that's it. And that could happen really quick. If, when Doug retires, and I think Doug will retire, I mean, he won't get beat, we might get a acidic mayor. We had one. He just about run the fire department. He come in and said he was gonna fire all of us and he changed his mind and that just about did it. What are you gonna do when nobody shows up? You're gonna put an ad in the paper saying we're hiring firefighters? And then you just created a million dollar fire department over a mistake. That may be the mistake that the citizens make by putting another acidic mayor in. That could do it really quick. Maybe a mistake that a council does. But I'm just saying, if, if you want to maintain that fire department, look at these large volunteer fire departments that had two, 300, 400 men that worked on them on a volunteer basis and then start looking at that structure, how they're organized. And this is, this is one of those key components, is, is that the building, building inspection and all that that falls right underneath the fire marshal. And those guys are doing a double duty. They're taking care of problems that happen day-to-day in the fire department and they're also inspecting houses and inspecting footings and doing pre, pre-site inspections on commercial buildings or, you know, that.
Are you saying that those guys are paid full-time, will do another city job, that they're also firing?
Yeah.
Or we can let them pay all their other full-time jobs?
Or you're growing, I'm talking about growth.
Okay.
I'm not talking about hiring 15 building inspectors that are also firing, I'm talking about hiring one.
So I'm trying to connect the dots between, I am not anti, anti full-time fire department when the city needs it, we need it and we ought to have it. We ought to, we gotta have a plan to pay for it.
I'm anti-full-time fire department.
Well, you're not. You just said, right, I want to have you listen to the tape tomorrow. But anyway, so if you, I mean, you're right, you, you preached that for years, but you, listen to the tape tomorrow.
Okay, I'm, I'm anti-full-time fire department.
You say that now.
I want...
And then here in a second, you're gonna say we're gonna roll over into full-time fire department.
If we do the wrong thing.
My question is, well, no, you're saying it's gonna end up that way anyway.
It's gonna end up that way if we continue to go the route of law.
Because we don't have the fire, the building inspector under the fire chief?
It's a component, I'm just saying.
Well, I, I'm trying to understand the importance of that component because I don't, I'm not seeing it and maybe I'm just missing it.
I've got a little ready for this.
Are you saying that the money that we would save by having the firemen do the inspecting is gonna allow us to...
As we grow.
Just that one person's salary as a, as a, let's just use Stewart as he's sitting here. If Stewart became the building inspector or all that responsibility came under each other, we saved, what, what's Don make?
Uh, 45.
If we saved 45,000, well, you're gonna pay him to do it. I don't, I don't understand the, well, the catalyst of that, that being the catalyst.
When you, when the building was really going on, you know, 20 years ago, we had two, two more building inspectors.
Not great.
I, I get why not, but that's...
We, we, we had two, isn't it?
People, yes.
And so that's what I'm saying. If as the city grows and probably is bigger, then we might have a room for a, a second line and that one becomes...
Why is it important for that person to be a fireman? I'm not seeing the connection.
Because that way they can do a dual purpose. I mean, for the most...
To his boy, why couldn't that person be a street?
Because he would be considered part-time, he would not be considered full-time.
But he's gotta be a fire department employee, not a street department water park employee.
Right.
That's right.
Right.
Gotta be underneath the fire department structure. Fire person. I get that, that's, but that's still...
And 45,000 is enough to pay the salary, it's a fair labor standard, that doesn't apply to you. Hire, hire a wing.
No, he has to qualify into three categories.
I know, I know personally what...
That's what qualifies you is...
And I'm not, this is not even...
Salary, salary's a component of it.
Yeah, that's right.
But, you said that earlier and I'll correct you.
Can I?
So if Mayor got something to do...
Yeah, but, yeah, let me say something first.
Going around the park.
Yes, hold on a second, wait a second.
Send somebody about a little...
Wait a second, please. I know what Stuart does pretty much, and he's a very busy person. I'm just saying, if you take this person that's standing in front of us, whether you're talking about him or a chief in twenty years from now, if he's not still chief, and- and- and put on him the- the- the job of being this, the- as we grow, and we better be ready for growth because we better be ready. I don't see that working for him or anybody else as the chief of a potentially full-time fire department or even what he's got now.
I'm talking about the chief.
Huh?
He's talking about hiring a building inspector that is a fire-
He's talking about putting it under you.
And putting it under the Fire Marshal's office.
You are the Fire Marshal.
I understand that. That would be another employee, there'd be two people at the fire department. Because the chief doesn't qualify, so never can. So you actually have your first full-time employee for an ISO rated. And so, thought you let Sonny and I work on this this next year and see if there's a way that can be done. Because the reason that they're doing it at the other- at the other fire departments across the nation, they're not doing the floodplain stuff. They're not doing code enforcement that has anything to do with any civil stuff where you got chain leak prevention. All they're doing is the building inspection because they can come back and the Fire Marshal came back, they left on code because the building code is under the fire prevention code. And so they can come back in and say, "Okay, yeah, I'll do this." The Fire Marshal's gonna shut this building project down because in that city, the ordinance says you can't.
Why can't that be done with an employee under him in the planning or whoever, under him? And you- you assist it?
Because then I- but I'm not gonna take responsibility for someone from another department.
If you're- if you're on- on, if you go as a fire chief and- or Fire Marshal to this- to this and say, "Here's what I know," and you're, I mean, give the same stamp of approval, what is it? This guy was working under you? I don't understand that that's involved.
It is. No, it's- it's different.
And that's right, if it is, I just need to-
What is the master, Doug? If you're looking at- I'm not asking you to put this-
I know, because you've said to me-
I said, "We need to look into it."
You have said to me yourself, "I don't want that."
Well, I'm just saying that it's-
That's right.
And I'm not saying we're gonna go, because you can shut the world down with fire prevention code. I mean, you can drop anything in the world with fire prevention.
Absolutely.
Well, Rod's thought process, I do believe it here is, is if you have a guy that you're requiring to be an IFAC certified firefighter, which is, that's- that's the requirement to be a part of it. So you have to be IFAC certified firefighter. Well, in order to do that, you gotta be familiar with the fire department. Well, like Portsmouth, they have, it's broken down, you've got the chief, you've got the assistant chief, you've got the Fire Marshal, you've got the uh, the train chiefs, and it breaks down into the battalion chiefs. Well, Fire Marshal is another department. It's not necessarily a department, it's in the fire department, but it's another division of the fire department. Rod's thought process is, you've got a guy that works for the fire department, he is an IFAC certified firefighter. And to be a full-time firefighter, you have- you have to become that certification within a year if you're a full-time guy.
That's true.
Stuart's not classified as a full-time guy on our ISO. So if we put a guy, because nine percent of your large fire departments, all your building stuff is under the fire code. So what Rod's trying to explain is, if you hire a guy that did just the inspections, it ain't necessarily gotta be the floodplains and all the stuff that Sonny was talking about and just doing the building inspection because like Chief said, they have a lot of stroke of shutting down a project with the Fire Marshal. But now you have a one-time, you have one full-time guy that's considered classified on paper or ISO as a full-time firefighter. Because he's not considered a full-time firefighter. That's one of our deductions that we have now when we have ISO companies because we don't have no full-time guys.
Right.
Because he doesn't count.
I didn't know that he didn't count.
Right. So Rod- Rod's thought is, is that we-
I don't count him.
We're eventually, eventually, if we grow like- like the paper says we're gonna grow, eventually we're gonna probably transition into maybe a full-time fire department. But it ain't gonna happen over that.
Yeah, he's gotta come with the growth.
But this is a place, this is a place that we're not reaching for, like, it's just a common deal because most of your bigger cities and stuff, that's the way they transition.
Is Portsmouth doing what you're suggesting?
No, not right now.
Why not?
Because it is, it is a way, it is progressive. And progressives, there's some progressive fire departments in our state that are doing this. And other cities are asking them, "How are you doing it?"
Who's doing it? I'm just- I'm just asking. I'm not again, I'm- I'm-
I'm just saying, the- the key to the whole deal is, is you know, try and pull somebody to the water department. They have to quit the water department because they have to become- they have to become certified.
I got that for you.
You know, so- so it's just, it's just putting the inspection part of it because of inspection, the fire code has so many teeth in it. You know what I'm saying? And if you go- you go to these, all these duplexes and stuff that are being built, I mean, the Fire Marshal has twice the giddy up to go and- and the shutdown power that you gotta- you gotta go by the letter of the law. Because just like in Visser Lee, we went to that- that one class down there. They wanted to have a trailer park coming in. They couldn't figure out how to stop it. They ended up stopping it with the fire code. The Fire Marshal of that little town was able to stop the whole thing with the fire code. I mean, they weren't breaking no laws. It's just uh, it's just a way to transition in- in, like I said, you've got more- more teeth in the- in the- Like I said, the floodplain and all that stuff's doing a pain in the- I mean, that- that stuff would change. You just basically build inspection part of it.
Then you add another one.
Right.
I get it. I mean, I get that, I know.
So-
There's that floodplain stuff going on with somebody else.
But you said Rogers, Arkansas is- is one-
There's a lot. I have a friend that's come to, sent me a thing called a white paper. He wrote on it. Was he based in Rogers and now he's uh, chief at the P. Gerardo. Um, but he's- he's got information on it. I talked a little bit about that. I was wanting to kind of talk with you and Sonny and sit down and have a conversation and not just pick up a snowball and throw it on the side of the wall and-
Like you were.
And uh, and blab it out there and get everybody mad over it. But I wanted to ease into this.
I don't think it was bad.
It's kind of the, it's- it's what's hap- happening and making it to where there's more teeth in the building code. And the way they're doing it is going through the Fire Marshal's office. So you actually have Portsmouth, or Rogers Fire Department right now is taking retired Fire Marshals from Dittenville and Fayetteville and hiring them to be their building inspectors for another five years. They're no longer on MOPF. Uh, they're already retired on MOPF, but they're coming to get them.
How are they qualified though, Stuart? How- how can you get a retired Fire Marshal to be an electrical inspector? Or a plumbing inspector? Or-
Yeah, that's- that's the deal because they're able to do it. But that's what's safe. Like I said, they're telling me that they have to be a master electrician to do a license inspection. I'm not sure. And that's where I'd like to sit down with you and- and go through some of that. And so, but anyway, uh, Rod- Rogers is doing right now. And uh, and what, as I said, what they're doing is they hire former Fire Marshals to come in and be their building inspectors. And so it has more teeth in it. I think they have five. They have five different buildings or different building inspectors. I think Fayetteville started to do it in Springville. But the reason they're doing it is because it's happening in other parts of the nation. And what Rod's wanting to do is try to figure out some way to get a full-time person and the building, get- get those things meshed, but we would have to have someone to give us some ISO credit in the same- in the same thing. And so, I understand what he's saying because he's mentioning it to me. And uh, uh, but I- I'd really like to ease into this and see if it's something that we need to be doing or not. As in-
It sounds like it'd be easier to hire somebody to uh, uh, mow the lawn and wash the trucks and take a- take care of the fire station over there and be a full-time fire- fireman.
I thought, John, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was-
You're still here?
I eat dinner, Sunday dinner, every Sunday with our building inspector. He starts showing me his cars this last Sunday. He has a car, he's a certified electrical inspector. He's got a car, he's a certified plumber inspector. I think he has a certified floodplain manager while there. And there's like four or five of these things he has. He has to have a lot of training. And he's gonna have a couple more trainings from fireside as well. You're gonna have a guy that's gonna have a lot, it's gonna be very hard to fit him and maintain those certifications. I like that.
Could be. And we talked about that. I do- I do would fill that position if we didn't say that was a position from around here that we can afford. And so that's something else we need to look at. So that's why I'd like to at least look into it.
Yeah, we're not deciding anything. He used to do snowball.
We can- I'm just saying that's wrong because it doesn't mean he's gonna wax it down.
It ain't clear whether you're gonna do it or not.
And he uh, and the same, we don't need that full-time fire department anytime soon, it's crazy. But anyway, I love Rod dead.
You gotta be able to define, we can throw away the- around the term anytime soon, all day long. To you, maybe six months.
Do you remember our fifteen-year plan?
Ten years.
How many years are we looking for that?
I disagree with Stuart. I think we can have a large volunteer fire department twenty years from now.
What you-
If they- I think we can have a combination department.
Well, your combination.
Will it be full- full- full-time? Will those be full?
Combination being-
Combination being-
Fifty dollars. And one?
And it's about four or five.
You have to hire, there'd have to be actual-
Oh, okay, so-
And that's where I go.
Very good conversation. Listen, let me tell you, for those that are still sitting here, I don't know why you're sitting here, buddy. Unless you-
Can I say one more thing?
I have one more thing.
Can I say one more thing, Councilor?
Sure.
Thank you for your vote earlier. As the probably the largest landowner on Houston Street with my three city lots and my whole house. Uh, I'm not sure what I'm gonna do with it, but I can't afford to redo it to be a single-family house. And I'm gonna have to sell it to somebody and no one wants to buy and hold it up. That's a hundred and twenty years old.
Right there, Mr. Brown.
Well, anyway.
Mr. Lloyd, thank you.
To remodel it. I would love for it to be remodeled, but it's not-
Two guys run off on your right shoulder.
Anyway, it uh, I- I would, I wanna die. I've been keeping it for the past ten years to keep it from ever being dimpled on the ground. So I might as well. Anyways, with that-
Your mom is worried.
Thomas County, thanks for uh, at least giving that all. His mom and mom.
Sorry, that's a good one.
Thank you, deserve it. I wanted to address to Sonny about the annexation. Now, are we gonna try to have a- an annexation vote in the uh, general election in March?
No.
And why not?
Uh, we're held up by the judge.
And this- this-
The same judge?
The same judge, this one.
Same judge, it's actually the law.
Well, I think that he's looking for-
Actually, the sheriff's from the law.
What- what can we do to get the judge on House Senator?
I can have a meeting with him. I've had, I've talked to him about it before. And if he looks at me with the, maybe I'm wrong. If he looks at me, "What are you talking about? That's not how that even works." So that's what we're told, that's how it works. So we can't finish. When I dismiss it, I mean, you can leave. I don't think that. You can get out.
There's certain persons.
Yeah, it is. So I- I agree, we need to get back up on-
Which they are.
You gotta get it.
I can't believe the judge is holding aside on- on-
The judge is just relieved. GIS believes this now. His- his agreement, and then they look at it. He looks at me and says, "I don't think that's the way it is."
A judge has to agree for a sentence.
That's a good point.
At least he just-
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Well, he has to release her.
So any county land, he has to release.
Yep. You didn't know that?
That's what I'm hoping for. So Portsmouth, Portsmouth annexing, they have to get the judge to-
Yeah.
Specifically.
I do the new laws.
And it's like, no, we've been in some of those uh, hearings with the judge on annexation and-
The judge recently-
Like that one is annexation.
And he did-
I can't recall it.
Well, he did not release. There was one not long ago that he did not release.
Rudu.
Rudu. He did not release it. Therefore, did we want to annex it?
Didn't he?
Unannexable.
And see, that was one of the deals. That Rudu had gone out and he had gotten, uh, acquired the land that- that he touched, hurt and drank. And so we had said, you know, "If you do that and the judge releases it, we will bring you in." So he goes to the judge and applies to the county to release the land. And the judge says, "No."
I think he got fired from surrounding, I know he did.
Yeah.
From surrounding people. And he didn't resist that. So he did. So we'll wrap up. Thank you, Sonny.
Thank you, Monique, here.
Hold up. Make- make, be aware of it, Mr. or Chief Prime's mom had both of that surgery. One as early as this morning and his mom did today. And both are doing okay. But keep them in your prayers. Officer Joss Morton, who's our police officer, who has cancer, is going for surgery.
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth of this month.
Thursday.
So remember, in your prayers. And as you see what they're doing, they're including these chairs to allow the early voting, more. Please owe insurance. They'll need to be along with it.
We can talk about that.
All right.